To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a joint meeting with the Housing Authority on Tuesday, June 6, 2023. Before we go on, quick programming note: I am not Mayor Constantine Anthony. In his absence tonight, I, as the Vice Mayor, will be presiding as Chair of this meeting. Before we move forward, if you would join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, in person and virtually. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together, with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Present.
And noting the...
Absence or is this going to be late?
Currently absent.
And noting the absence of Mayor Anthony. Thank you.
Before we move on, I would like to advise the community that there will be five, you heard me correctly, five periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and public comment period for hearings. Additional in-person-only public comment will be available after each report to City Council. The first general public comment period is for any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item, except for the public hearings tonight. If you wish to provide a public comment by telephone, please call now at 818-238-3335. The second and third public comment periods are for the public hearings. To comment by phone on those public hearings, please call when the public hearings begin. We have three announcements this evening.
...for June 6, 2023. The Sustainable Burbank Commission invites you to the Go Green Burbank Panel Discussion on Saturday, June 10, at 10:30 in the morning, in the Community Services Building, located at 150 North Third Street. The session's theme is adapting to high heat. Speakers include medical professionals and forestry street experts, who will teach us about the heat island effect, importance of shade treat canopy, and how rising temperatures affect our health and environment. For more information, please email gogreenburbank@gmail.com. Starting June 1, the City of Burbank will begin expanded enforcement of its parking regulations throughout the city. Last Parking will conduct parking enforcement services for the city, with warnings issued from June 1 through June 14, and citations issued starting June 15. All Last Parking personnel will be driving marked white Toyota Corollas and wearing blue polo-style uniforms with City of Burbank Parking Enforcement visible on the shirt sleeves. We kindly remind all residents and visitors to abide the parking laws. There is still time to provide your vision for the City Council District boundaries. Join us for the third public hearing on Wednesday, June 14, at 6:00 p.m. in the Council Chamber, and the second round of public forums, both in person and online, from June 15 through June 29. The forums will focus on reviewing the draft maps that have been submitted by residents thus far and districting process updates. For details, please visit burbancouncildistricting.com. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right, testing. Great, you can hear me. Next up on our agenda, we have two council presentations this evening. First is a presentation of a proclamation declaring June 1 through 30, 2023, as Pride Month in the City of Burbank. Give it up, that's good. Here we go. Now, a very quick programming note. Beginning last Thursday and continuing through June 8, the city lit up City Hall in the six colors of the traditional Pride flag to recognize Pride Month. If you haven't already, please make sure to stop by even as you exit tonight and see it for yourself. It's really quite a treat. And now, yes, give it up. And here to accept the proclamation recognizing Pride Month tonight, I would welcome Tracy Tab, President, and Isabel Omero, Sponsorship Chair of the Burbank Pride Committee. Welcome to both of you. And all the other members of Burbank Pride who are present, please come on up. So I'm going to read the proclamation first, and then we'll turn it over for a few words. Whereas Pride Month began in June of 1970 in New York City, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, asexual, and intersex LGBTQIA individuals and their allies rose up and fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas LGBTQIA individuals have had an immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country, our state, and our city, and continue to make great and lasting contributions that strengthen the fabric of our society. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has dignity, and worth, and equal rights, and the City of Burbank is committed to supporting visibly and with equality for all LGBTQIA individuals in our community. And whereas the City of Burbank prides itself on its close neighborhoods and community-oriented ethic, and wants all residents to feel welcome and safe, especially LGBTQIA youth, families, and seniors, who should be able to learn, live, and thrive without fear of harassment and discrimination. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQIA equality, continued education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas celebrating Pride Month promotes awareness and provides support and advocacy for our LGBTQIA community, and serves as an opportunity to take action and engage in a dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights, now therefore I, Vice Mayor Nick Schultz, standing in for Mayor Constantine Anthony, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Pride Month, and I and the council in total urge residents to recognize the lasting contributions of our LGBTQIA family, friends, colleagues, and neighbors, who help make Burbank a vibrant community in which to live, grow, and thrive. Congratulations, Tab, Tracy.
Okay, I'm going to say I'm nervous because there's a lot of you. But I'm really honored and choked up. Thank you so much, the Burbank City Council, for honoring us, and the community and the City of Burbank. We can't thank you enough for the support. And I always say that the allies and the people that stand with us are most important, because we couldn't have gotten here without our allies. And no matter how many alphabet letters are in it and are added as it comes, it really just is about the community and family. And that's the amazing part of Burbank, because Burbank literally is family. We did find a lot of stride when they first tried to do Burbank Pride several years ago, and they hit COVID happened, so that stopped it. And when they brought it back, it was still being fought with barriers, and people said Burbank wasn't ready for the change. And Isabel came to Magnolia Park Merchants Association, which I was on that board as treasurer, and said, "I want to bring something different and new," and wanted to bring something called Family Pride, which was Burbank and its heart. And it wasn't just like everything else, and it was very different, and it was about community and acceptance and accepting all of our diversities. So we said, "Oh, yeah." And as we moved forward, we did Family Pride in the Park, we took over Magnolia Park. We were so large, we thought we'd have 500, 600 people. We had over 2,500 people show up to our first event. And I have to say, the police department said to us, "Next year, you close down the street." So we are. We are going to have it actually in the end of September, because we're going to... Family Pride Month? Just saying. At the end of September, we are going to be closing down some of the streets in Magnolia Park for our second Family Pride in the Park event. I just really want to thank you for everything and the support. If you want to join us, burbankpride.org. Come and check us out, sign up, be a part of the future. Thank you so much. And thank you to the team. I always forget. Without them, we'd be nothing.
Do you have any introductions?
Oh, yeah. Oh, me? Oh, we have Mel down there. She's, I'm like vendors and booths and stuff. I'm like, I'll just say, and Andre, and Cheryl, and then Isabel, and then Velvet, my wife, she just wanted to be a first lady.
I'm the first lady.
We'll take a quick photo, everybody. Scoot on in.
Yes.
Yep. And before you all go, I just wanted to take a point of personal privilege to say that two years ago, a lot of people don't know this, but two years ago, Burbank celebrated Pride Month for the very first time. And since that time, we've had Family Pride in the Park. We're going to have it come back again. And I'm really honored to say that we not only have members of the LGBTQIA community who are part of our council, and folks that have been advocates and allies in this space, but I can tell you, I think the message that we're sending is really loud and really clear. No matter how you identify or who you love, you are loved in this community, and you are respected. And I look forward to what we're going to do in the next two years and beyond. So thank you all for being And next, we have one more presentation. We have a presentation by the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association. I would like to welcome Ms. Linda Kazakos, President of the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association. Welcome, and thank you so much for being here. I'll turn the microphone to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I am pleased and honored to present to you on behalf of the Mayor of Burbank, since Constantine Anthony is not here tonight, City Council members, and for the city, the members of the City of Burbank. If you'd come over here, I'd like to present to you our award for the 2023 parade. We won the Queen's Award, which is Most Outstanding Presentation of Roses. And if you'd like the other side?
Absolutely. Okay, we count three. Oh, there we go.
Yay! And here we are. And it simply says, Burbank Tournament of Roses Association, adventure awaits. Queen's Trophy, January 2, 2023.
Can you tell us a little bit about the design?
Sure. This particular float was designed by two people, two members, Robin Hanna from the City of Burbank, and Richard Burrow from the City of Mission Viejo. And what it is, is pretty much that seniors, or people that are 55 and older, they go on different adventures. So when you get to retire, you know, there's adventures in your life. You grow up, you move away from home, you go to college, you get married, you have children, your children move away, you retire, and you're sitting home alone going, "Well, what now?" I've always...
The float!
I've always wanted to do this, 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 this. Do I, can I still do this? Do I have time? So this depicts various seniors doing different things of their life that, before their time is called, that they can do. So we had a world traveler, which was me. We had a bicycle rider. We had a mountain climber. We had a kayaker. This is one of the designers, Robin Hanna. We had a scooter rider in the street, a backpacker, another scooter rider, and a runner. This runner is from Florida, and she's one of our members, and she is 84 years old.
Wow.
And walked the entire parade route. We also have back here, we have an artist. We have, this is Richard Burrow. He is a hiker, and he is the other designer. And we have another hiker on the other side. And then we have this guy up here, Steve, who's a hang glider, and he's also here. That guy there. And we have a fisherman and a camper in the back. We have a bird watcher back there. And on the other side, we also have somebody in a, on the other side of the water, in inner tube. So we had 12 different riders and five different outwalkers, and we had the time of our life. So...
That's amazing.
Yeah. And some of the things that we did, like our hang glider, Steve, he actually took hang gliding lessons. He went hang gliding, actually went hang gliding to make sure he could do this. Yeah. So we really had fun doing this. We are working on our 2024 float.
And how can people help out?
How can people... Thank you for asking. We're at www.burbankrosefloat.com. We do take volunteers, seven and up. We are there every Wednesday and every Saturday. Our times right now are a little limited. We ask you just, you can go online, again, www.burbankrosefloat.com. We have release forms to fill out. And come on down and help us. The main thing you need to remember is, wear clothes that you can get dirty, painted, ripped, torn, and closed-toed shoes. Okay?
All right.
And before we...
Come play.
And yeah, come play with us. And I, and, you know, most of us, most of the people that have been on the float have been doing this for so many years. You know, we have Janet, and Ginny, and John, my construction chair, my Vice President, Steve. But before we go, Janet, my city liaison, would like to give some posters for the 2024 parade. Thank you.
I can hold the microphone, because I can speak. I think loud enough that everybody down the block can hear me. I wanted to make sure...
For the folks at home.
Okay, for the folks at home. Can you hold that? You're a very good holder. That's very good.
I have one admirable quality. There we go.
There you go. Celebrating a world of music is the theme for the 2024 parade. And all the members of the council will now have posters to put up in their offices to remind them, number one, put on your grubby clothes and come down and help, of course. Number two, come down on the last day, which will be the 31st, and they will each put a rose on the float to finish it. And number three, to show everybody who comes to visit their offices, that we support our float, and that it is the whole community's project, not just one person or two or three, it's everybody. So thank you very much. Enjoy your poster. Enjoy the framed one that goes in your office. Well, actually, in Constantine's. Sorry. But you can, anyway, enjoy it and visit it.
Thank you.
So that's it. And if we can take a picture with you?
Yeah, with all the members who are here. Let's do it.
Oh, you know what?
I can go behind.
You did Pride Month, and just a quick... Is it on? Show everybody our shirts here. Now it's on. Okay. Just to remind people that Transparent, the musical, which celebrates people being their authentic selves, and is an amazing show, it's showing at the Mark Taper Forum. I was there on opening night. My golly, loved it. And the cupcakes were good, too. And to let you know that we also have PFLAG in Burbank, and anyone who is interested in joining, please contact Pride, and they'll help you get to us as well.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
You got it.
So big smiles right here.
By all means. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that. City Manager Justin Hess, do you have anything to report tonight?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know we have a busy night, so I do not have anything to report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving along to Joint General Public Comment. Now is the time for Joint General Public Comment. For members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please present a completed yellow General Public Comment card and hand it to the City Clerk. Any person speaking during General Public Comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business, except for the public hearings. If you speak to the public hearing item, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendaised report, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. A timer is available on the front of the podium. Please state your name for the record. For those wishing to call in during the General Public Comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The first comment card that I have is from Chris White, and that will be followed by
Good evening, Vice Mayor Stoltz and council members. I am Chris White, BMA President. I'm here to support the constant calendar item number four, which is a three-year MOU between City of Burbank and the BMA Association. Our board began negotiating with Management Services over 12 months ago. We worked very hard to reach an MOU which brings our members to a market. Our board members overwhelmingly approved our MOU, and I'd like to thank Betsy Clinton, Brady Griffin, Julie Chides, and our City Manager, Justin Hess. It was a privilege working with Betsy again, and we look forward to hopefully getting this approved and keeping everybody happy and here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, I have Jack, followed by Joel Schlossman.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. I am Jack Arton, on behalf of the State Senator Anthony Portantino, and I'm here to provide some comments on the city's continuing efforts to address the overconcentration of firearm retailers in your neighborhoods. A leader in the gun control movement in California, the senator is supportive of Burbank's... Oh, is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like I was too far away. A leader in the gun control movement in California, the senator is supportive of the city's emergency moratorium decisions last year, and reiterates his support for the ordinances being discussed tonight that would establish a robust local program for licensing and regulating the sale, lease, and transfer of firearms or ammunition in the city. The senator is supportive of the city's efforts to address long-term, additional long-term concerns through the Zone Text Amendment process that we'll be monitoring the progress as it goes forward. As you are aware, the senator and Burbank resident Linda Besen had the opportunity to share Burbank's overconcentration of gun stores directly with Attorney General Bonta and Governor Newsom. He is working on two related measures in Sacramento. SB 2, California's answer to the Supreme Court Buren decision on concealed carry weapons, and SB 368, which prohibits firearm stores and dealers from raffling off inventory items, accessories, and firearms to anybody, whether it be a purchase raffle ticket or not. The latter issue came to light directly from conversations with Burbank residents. Thank you for your opportunity to share with you tonight. I would like to reiterate that our office is always at your service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Next, I have Joel Schlossman, followed by Liz Radley.
Good evening, everybody. I want to call your attention to the City Clerk. I asked a question about something that happened 32 years ago, and I got a response almost instantaneously. And I thought that was fantastic. You know, not... More time. You know, item number eight on the agenda, which has to do with raising everybody's water and power rates. Think about this for a second. You got an employee over at the animal shelter, and a couple of times a week, they take home two or three pounds of dog food for their personal pet. Would that be acceptable, or would that be considered stealing? And would they be terminated? Over at the Water and Power Department, there is a bunch of waste and mismanagement. Ms. Lindell is not doing a good job. She is not acceptable as a leader, and she is, in fact, double-dipping or triple-dipping. You've heard me talk about her line item of $5,000 per year to feed her staff and our seven appointed representatives. And they're supposed to be serving without compensation. And, you know, I've talked to the city manager about it. He doesn't care. I talked to the city attorney. He doesn't care. These folks don't even live in Burbank. Okay? I'm going to get back to that. If you look at their travel, the top people over there are doing all kinds of seminars all over the country, and sometimes they go to Anaheim and spend the night... Is that me? No. And spend the night, and we get to pay for... It is me. And we get to, we get to pay their food, their rental car, their hotel. They need some oversight over there. And I've called for an independent audit of somebody to come in and see, you know, is there ways to save money? And they don't even respond to me over there. And before you raise my utility rates, and everybody else is here, you should do an independent audit and see where the waste is. Now, Ms. Lindell has a electric car, and guess what? Everybody over there gets free electricity for their electric cars. How is that appropriate? Now, cross-reference that with the people taking home dog food for their pets. We are subsidizing those employees citywide, but the majority over at the BWP, and I conservatively estimate it at over a quarter of a million dollars. How is this fair? Why? That's the question. Why are they entitled to free electricity for their electric cars? All of us don't get free electricity for our electric cars.
Thank you, Joel. That's time. Thank you.
I'm going to go home and see if my electricity is still working.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have Liz Radley, followed by Ron Backs. We'll wait for you to get there. We won't start the timer early. Don't worry.
Good evening. You'll take a look here at, oh, good evening, Vice Mayor and council members, so as not to be discourteous. Here's a typical Saturday by the Mariposa Equestrian Bridge. We shut for three hours, and about, almost 170 horses came through, way more horses than cars. And it's surprisingly busy during the weekdays as well, because you have a lot of tourists riding up to the Hollywood sign area. It's just amazing how many more horses there are there than we realize. It's just amazing how many more horses there are there than we realize. As it's the crossroads for our equestrian world from all three cities, I'm again coming back and talking about the safety of building at 910 South Mariposa, that of course we call Circle K, which is now closed, and all the horses have sadly been evicted. There are going to be considerable and continuing public safety risks. And Vice Mayor Schultz, I look forward to meeting you later in the week to talk about those. And maybe Mr. McDougal will join us at some stage also. We have, of course, reached out to... I mean, we understand, of course, the difficulty of SB 35. We have reached out to our elected officials. And we're especially grateful to Senators Caroline Menjivar and Anthony Portantino. Mindful of both the safety hazards and the unique equestrian neighborhood, Senator Portantino was actually able to bring together state resources and offered to purchase Circle K. But the developers were asking twice as much. So we're really hoping that if Circle K does not meet all of the requirements that are necessary for the SB 35 conditions, that in fact the developers might reevaluate and reconsider selling the property through that means. So I'm just bringing this forward to you to know that that opportunity is available if in fact it doesn't meet all the SB 35 conditions. So that's really it. Thank you. I know it's still playing. But I think I've finished talking. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ron Backs, followed by Jamie Keizer.
Vice Mayor, members. Last meeting, I spoke about AB 1482. And I agreed on the city attorney's comments, previous comments, that there's not much the city can do about renovation evictions. But, and I then have gone on to talk about what your actions could cause in the future. What I should have talked about also, didn't have time, would be the current situation. I think tenants have a lot of power. Because if you look at AB 1482, as incorporated in California Civil Code 1946-2, subsection B, which is just cause evictions, section 2, which is no fault, and then D, which is the infamous renovation evictions. If you look at little I, it says intent to demolish or substantially remodel the residential real property. Everybody stops at intent, says, what does that mean? If you go on to double I, okay? It says for the purpose of this sub-paragraph, substantial remodel means the replacement or substantial modification of any structure, electrical, plumbing, or mechanical system that requires a permit from a government agency or abatement of hazardous material, including lead-based paint, mold, or asbestos in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. Now, here's what you need to listen to for the tenants, too. This is a few. But cannot be accomplished in a safe manner with the tenant in place. And that requires the tenant to vacate the residential real property for at least 30 days. Then it goes on about telling how you can't do minor painting, et cetera, et cetera, as justification for that. So this indicates to me that there should be a plan and that the landlord of the owner should be able to present that plan. So I think the tenants should seek an audience with their owners. And if the owner engages, that'll be an interesting conversation. If he doesn't, then you have two options. One is to allow it to go to unlawful detainer or secure an attorney with batting together to take that $2,500 retainer that somebody mentioned. If you get 40 or 50 people together, that's not much. And attack the... I'm sorry. Go after the owner. Because I think if it goes to unlawful detainer, that the judge would rule in the tenant's favor, citing the landlord's acting in bad faith. If you go with approaching it from being proactive, then you can abate probably the renovation evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie Keizer, followed by Julio Jeremio. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's names. Please correct me when you come up.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schultz, city council members Mullins, Perez, and Takahashi, city staff, and housing authority. I am Jamie Keizer, the CEO of the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, and here this evening to address Agenda Item Nine regarding a resolution to amend permit parking hours on South Reese that directly affects the Talleyrand Restaurant and Residence. Currently, the city has posted permit parking daily, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM on South Reese, to prohibit Raising Canes customers from parking in that neighborhood, which is a street away from their restaurant. The Burbank Police Department brought in third-party parking enforcement, which began on June 1st. Their role is to enforce and cite any cars idling on Reese, prohibit customers from eating in their cars, dumping trash, and the ongoing issues Raising Canes has brought to the neighborhood. The parking permit restrictions have greatly impacted Talleyrand and no longer allow them to offer overflow parking, which has been available to their restaurant for 64 years. I'm here tonight to ask you for a simple solution which will allow both Talleyrand and the restaurants to mitigate the parking issues caused by Canes without sending away Talleyrand's longstanding customers due to parking constraints. Talleyrand is a small, family restaurant who has brought a significant amount of tax dollars to the city for over six decades. This request is to change the parking permit hours to 2:00 to 10:00 PM daily, which allows Talleyrand's breakfast and lunch crowds to access overflow parking while the residents are typically at work and their kids are in school a good part of the year. They are good neighbors. And when a resident comes to them with a complaint, owner Karen Ross addresses it immediately. This includes a recent complaint about a trash pickup and a leaf blower incident, which she addressed right away. The Talleyrand is a staple in this community, and they have adapted to their new neighbors, Raising Canes. But when their parking lot gets full and there's no other options available close to the restaurant, they are losing business at a time where they cannot afford to lose customers. Karen has spent countless hours fighting these issues with Canes customers for close to a year. Now that they are looking at city council to show their support, make sure that the Talleyrand Restaurant can continue to provide services required for their customers, including easy access to parking. Thank you to David Criski and Chris... Sorry, Bunomo, from the Community Development Department, and Maris De Pasquale, who represents Raising Canes, for your ongoing support to this neighborhood. And on a personal note, I just wanted to give a shout out to the chamber neighbors, our good friends at Burbank Water and Power under the inspiring leadership of Dawn Lindell. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jamie. Next, we have Julio, followed by John Fisher.
Thank you. Wanted to ask you, before you start my time, you mentioned, are the water rates part of the public hearing portion?
If you wanted to speak to the water rates, you can speak now, or you can separately comment when we get to that agenda.
No, I'll go ahead and speak now.
Okay.
So, good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Julio Jaramillo. I spoke here before on rent control. And I wanted to speak tonight just to expose the hypocrisy of the city in this council. So I made a little graph, hopefully so our constituents can see it. And we talked tonight here about equality. And I want the constituents to know that the owners, landlords, and people who have succeeded or held on to their property in Burbank are being proposed, and they're working on a rent control of 5%. Limited us here at 5%. Which California already has an 8%, which we know, limit on rents. But when the city, Burbank Water and Power, and Comrade Constantine, straight out of his socialist playbook, when they need their money, they're going to give you a 20% increase over two years. Approximately 20% increase. And they're not considering the riders that are on strike and not making any money. They're not considering tightening their belt because they don't have to, because it's not their money. But when the owners, who no longer have insurance companies... I hope you heard State Farm and, I believe it's Allied or Allstate, have stopped writing policies in California. Well, guess what? In your four-page pamphlet that you have hidden in here, it said, "Well, the water department needs it because of rising operating expenses." Ay dios mio! Like, the owners didn't have those same rising operating expenses. But you want to limit what they can charge to, again, hurt the renters. Because now, you're actually going directly into the renters' pockets. Because they're going to pay the same 20% increase over two years that the owners have paid. So it's just hypocritical. And I think the residents of Burbank that got bamboozled into voting for this socialist agenda need to know that you're driving this bus right down the same path, absent Mayor Constantine from Oakland, same path that San Francisco's going, Comandante Perez, same path to Central America, Colombia, Venezuela, Cuba. You want me to remind you? And why don't you ask our neighbors from Russian Armenia, who've lived under Soviet socialism, where this leads? So you're doing that right now. There's one set of rules for you guys and another set of rules for the owners. We're going to cap you. I don't care if your operating expenses are going up. If you've got to pay your electrician, your roofer, your janitor more to come do the job, you're only getting a 5% cap. But we got to eat. And you guys get the scraps. We got to eat our steak and get our 20% increase over two years. So let it be known, it's a disgrace. It's hypocritical. And it's, as we say in Colombia, sin vergüenzas. Thank you. And again, God bless Burbank, United States of America. And quit trying to turn this into a socialist republic. Thank you very much.
Next. Next up, we have John Fisher, followed by Roger Aldy.
Hello, my name is John Fisher. I want to start by saying, God, I love the Talleyrand. I can't imagine what Burbank would be without that place. I can't... 64 years? I thought it was 50 last year. I had some remarks that I had prepared, but because we have such a full house, I'm going to keep my comments shorter and abandon what I was going to say. But $8,000. Before I buy a box, before I hire a truck, without hiring people to help, on my own, $8,000 is what I need to be prepared to put down in cash to find my new apartment. If you're lucky enough to find a place that's only $2,000, which seems to be the low end of the rate spectrum... I mean, I've looked at a studio for $1,800, and hopefully I can get that. $8,000, out of nowhere, with very little warning, we're expected to just have on hand to cough up for this move for a renovation that is only being done because 1482 says it's a reason that tenants can be thrown out. If we're talking about... Sorry, I didn't want to go into the whole thing. I don't want to take the council's time. And everybody here has comments. But that's a ridiculous amount of money for renters who've been in their units for 10, 20, 30 years to suddenly come up with, again, before the cost of actually moving. We don't need to talk about having complete moratoriums. We're not talking about making evictions illegal 100%. Just maybe it shouldn't be so easy to throw us out of our homes. That's all we're asking for.
Thank you. Next, we have Roger Aldy, followed by Isabel Omero.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to take a minute to ask us all to remember for a moment. Remember why people institute governments in the first place. And one of the reasons is to promote the general welfare. Some will call that socialism. The Constitution disagrees. It's no secret, many people in this community are hurting today. For evidence, I suspect you could just go to the market, gas station, or try to find an apartment. We have been battered, badly battered, by inflation, by corporate greed. The middle class is slowly disappearing as the wealth gap widens every day. And the rich just get richer. We're entering a second gilded age, which is not good. There are 25-year-old and 30-year-old college graduates who are working, who are still living at home with their parents because they can't afford to move out on their own. It's time for the council to promote the general welfare. You're asking for rate increases for water and power. Rate increases that exceed the rate of inflation. And of course, you cite the reason as rising costs for you. And the people that you give your money to are citing rising costs for them. And their suppliers are citing rising costs for them. And somewhere along the line, someone has to say, hold it. Stop, enough. We're not going to meet your demands. Let's pass that on instead of the costs. While the major corporations are reporting record profits, we, the people, are still hurting. Now, with said, I could give up my Starbucks Mocha Latte to pay for your water and power increases. But I can't do that because I already gave up the Starbucks to pay for the rent. Again, I've been in the same place for 16 years. I started out paying $1,300 a month. Today, that same apartment is going for $3,000. My pension did not go up a nickel. Social Security did go up that nickel, but not a whole lot more. And I'm not the Lone Ranger. People are hurting. And those approved or those proposed increases don't help. So while we remember...
Thank you, Roger. I'm sorry, that's time.
You have to descend for 20 seconds?
I'll give you 10.
Okay. Robert Kennedy was killed in 1968 on this date. His brother asked, "Will you remember?" That he saw wrong and tried to right it. He saw suffering and tried to heal it. I pray this council will do the same with the rent control and the water.
Thank you, Roger. Next, we have Isabel Omero, followed by Annie.
Hi, council. Hi, staff. Hi, people. I'm completely unprepared. I have nothing in front of me. It's difficult tonight because, on the one hand, I'm overjoyed. I have just watched my city say how much... They love us. And that's wonderful. It's so good. And I thought about what this evening might be like. Day before yesterday, as my girlfriend and I took a long, long walk down Magnolia Boulevard. And it's a long street. You get a lot of steps in. And Magnolia Boulevard is a great place to walk because it reminds you of everything that's great about Burbank. With the shops and the cafes and the parking lot where we had the first Burbank Pride. But every so often, as you walk down Magnolia Boulevard, I get a chill. And I get a chill, and I start thinking, which is not a lot of fun when you're out having a nice walk. And I wonder how close this gun store is to a school or a church or a bar. Especially a bar. And that happens so many times when I walk down what is the heart of Burbank. It happens so many times. And I really don't like worrying about who might be affected by what comes out of these stores. It's really tough to be in a place which brings you such joy. And it's really tough to wonder where a weapon might end up when you're not like everyone else. I'm sorry to be so down on such a joyful night because it's such a joyful night. on such a joyful night because it's such a joyful night. Thank you.
Next, we have Annie, followed by Lisa.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Vice Mayor, my name is Annie and I've been a Burbank resident for 30 years. My family immigrated to California and settled in Burbank when I was in middle school. I left for a short time to pursue my education and career. When I was ready to set my own roots, I came back because Burbank has always been the place I call home. It is with that background that I say Burbank Unified School District should maintain their focus and resources on educating our youth, not diverting their focus by developing and managing high-density subsidized housing. That is not their scope nor their charter, but that is what they intend to do at Scott Road and Keystone Street at the Horace Mann School site. You may not know about this because they've hid it from the community by having less than transparent agendas and bootstrapping the assessment to an already existing contract with a different scope of work. I invite you to review the Board Agenda Item 120 from last Thursday's Board of Education meeting. The item reflects amendments to existing facility's master plan for the school district, but in fact, it is an engagement of a design and architecture firm to assess Horace Mann site on Keystone and Scott Road for subsidized housing. This was not agendized as a housing evaluation, nor was the procurement bid as a housing assessment at Horace Mann. Yet a review of the proposal, which I have a copy here for you, has now been approved and clearly reflects that that is Burbank Unified School District's intent. Now, when I first saw this, I chuckled and I thought, good luck getting that through Burbank's permit process. But the joke's on us. For those of you who don't know, Assembly Bill 2295 permits school districts to bypass zoning requirements and build high-density affordable housing on properties they own. They can build as high as 35 feet and must have at least 30 units per acre for jurisdictions within a metropolitan county. They will be exempt from property taxes provided they allocate 30% of the units to low-income housing. City Council, esteemed Vice Mayor, we know that Burbank Unified School District is an independent entity, but that does not absolve you from acting on behalf of your constituents. We're asking you to exert your influence and goodwill to stop this assessment of high-density subsidized housing at Horace Mann. We're asking you to speak up now and let us know that you support the community and oppose the direction Burbank Unified School District is going. Support us as we have supported you and the city for many, many years.
Thank you, Annie. Next, we have Lisa, followed by Arpanay.
Good evening, City Council and Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm here today along other residents in the 91504 to express our opposition for the development of subsidized high-density housing at the Horace Mann site. We made this known to the school board last week and the president responded as follows. He said that he's trying to think outside the box to attract educators so that they don't have long commutes to work. Teachers don't want to be, don't want to have their employers be their landlords. Somehow, we can find millions upon millions of dollars for housing development, but we can't pay teachers a competitive wage? Pay teachers a competitive wage so that they have the freedom to choose where they want to live. Teachers want what all employees want: work-life balance, sense of prosperity, time with their families. What does that mean for them? Flexible schedules, perhaps, hybrid remote opportunities? This plan is being proposed before even collaborating with their brand-new HR director. Have President Ferguson and Superintendent Hill collaborate with her for more robust recruitment strategies instead of entering into this ill-conceived housing plan and disrupting this neighborhood. Why are all these ideas always okay when it disrupts someone else? The tax-paying, voting middle class. We have small business owners, young families, social workers, police, county employees, elderly retirees from industries that found a home in Burbank and are opposed to this. School Board President Ferguson also said that his payroll budget is shrinking annually and he's looking to build housing to attract teachers. While we recognize that compensation and inflation is an issue impacting the entire country's workforce, high-density housing is not the answer. Finally, he said something along the lines of Horace Mann being in a fire zone, so he'd rather have housing rather than a recreation facility at that site, which didn't even make sense. Please hear me. 91504 residents are mobilizing. We're not gonna sit idly by and watch this happen without resistance. We will not wait until the assessment is complete, as it was clear from President Ferguson's comments during Thursday's meeting that this is a passion project and the assessment is simply a formality, with his speech sounding more like a jumping-off point for a political career rather than someone who's making common sense decisions. You might think that's an unreasonable conclusion to be drawn, but ask yourself, why is a housing assessment being done by a school district? Why was a design and architecture firm awarded $550,000 in their contract to do a facility's assessment? Why didn't the school board invite Planning Commission or Infrastructure Board to conduct or oversee assessment? If it was truly intended to be neutral, why was this hidden in an amendment to a contract that was not set forth in the original scope of work? City Council, please hear your constituents and support our request to stop the assessment of subsidized housing at Horace Mann. Please hold the Board of Educators accountable for maintaining transparency with the residents of the city. Please focus the school board's agenda on safe schools and education. Based on several previous school board meetings this year, that kind of attention is seriously needed by our students. Let us hear you say you support us and oppose the development of high-subsidized housing at the Horace Mann site.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Arpanay, followed by Jonathan Peterson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arpanay and I am 75 years old. And I live right at the Horace Mann School in the backyard. And I have many significant health and mobility issues. My health cannot sustain having a large construction project in my backyard for years to come, possibly decades to come. We already have cars speeding through stop signs. Adding 30 units per acre is going to create a significant safety issue for me and there are others in the area with the same concerns. This will prevent me from being able to live independently. We live in Burbank for a reason. We seek the pace of the town, the peace and quiet, the safety of knowing our neighbors. But I am here today opposing the development of high-speed density housing at the Horace Mann site. We hope you hear us and support us. Developing high-density housing will completely change the makeup and the character of our neighborhood and our beloved communities will be changed. So I would like everyone to understand and look into these issues because we just heard this on Thursday, two days ago, and we were able to come and speak here after like three, four days. But this is not right. If Burbank wants to make it right, let's all of us stand up and be against this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Peterson, followed by Jose Pimienta.
Is this a timer?
Yes, timer is right there on the podium.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Peterson. I'm a resident for 23 years. I grew up, like a lot of kids, being a geek, loving comic books. And I loved it so much because I became a comic book professional. I guess that's because I believed in heroes and justice, right and wrong, evil. I've lived in Burbank for 23 years. I need you to be my heroes now. I live around the corner at 525 East Magnolia Boulevard. On April 1st, I received a termination of tenancy letter that said to comply, to do a remodeling, to comply with a government order. It wasn't just a remodeling job, it was actually to comply with a government order. It was an amazing experience. My landlady left it on my door. She was so determined to leave it on my door that I heard her at the door and she ran to her car to try and get away from me and get away before I could ask any questions. The leasing company refuses to take my calls and has actually ghosted me. The receptionist will not even connect me to other people. Because it said in compliance with a government order, I came to City Hall to see if I could find some answers. All of you deserve commending, especially Kimberly. I have talked to the city clerk's office. I have talked to building and housing. I have talked to the Water Department and Power. You know what I ultimately discovered? I talked to Mr. Juan Marillo, who is the city building inspector. You know what it turned out? There were hidden documents that I did not have access to, that nobody told me. There are two sets of documents dated 2019, 2022. It turned out my apartment building more than 20 years ago had illegally subdivided the apartments, dropped fake walls, put in fake wiring, put in new plumbing, which would explain why my walls almost catch on fire when I plug in something. It would explain the sewage that backs up into my bathtub. It would explain the sludge that comes out of my sink. And when I asked Mr. Marillo, I said, why did nobody know this? Why were the tenants not notified? I guess it's some sort of laws or whatever and everything. But I asked him, could you give me a statement that would stand up in court? And he said, yeah, your company, RW Selby, knowingly rented you an apartment that they knew was completely illegal and totally unsafe and they did it for 23 years. And now I'm being evicted. I'm being kicked out. And I'm the only one being kicked out because the company tried to move other people to other suites, but they told me I'm getting kicked out because I'm paying the least amount of rent and I'm therefore the least profit. I called Adam Schiff's office looking for help. They put me on hold while they brought in more people because they said, Jesus, is this actually happening in Burbank? I need you to put on your capes. I cannot believe the city attorney is not interested in the fact that this building is dangerous, there are people in danger, this thing is a disaster. I need you to put on your capes. I need you to be my hero, the way I tried to be a hero to children. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next, I have Jose Pimienta, followed by Lisa Baca.
Good evening, council members, Vice Mayor. Well, you just heard it. So yeah, I'm basically here just to continue and bring in the subject to hand. Time keeps ticking on. People that keep getting those notices, keep wondering what are they gonna do. People keep wondering what their options are and keep wondering what are their, because everything that gets handed to them is a dead end. House Again, Housing Rights Center, Keep LA Housed, Stay Housed LA, you name it. They're all capped out. So they don't know what to do. They don't know, and we don't have anything else to tell them. They always ask the same question. Can you recommend an attorney? Yeah, the attorneys that we know are also maxed out because they're also dealing with other evictions throughout the entire LA County because of the end of the moratorium. So they're left without choices and they keep looking to City Council to see what can Burbank do. A lot of other cities in the LA area have done it. I repeated that last time. Claremont, South Pasadena, Pasadena, Alhambra, what was the other one? Not the point. Anyways, on top of that, yesterday I went to the Tenant Landlord Commission. Great meeting, really awesome. Everything went very well. And I've come to learn that the new CPI is coming into order on August 1st. It's gonna be capped at 3.8%. That means that the maximum that they can raise your rent a year is still 8.8% by California law. So hooray, it went down. But that being said, I just kind of like have a bit of a rhetorical question of like, what job out there is, what job is out there that will give you an 8.8 raise every year? And what do you do then? Until then, because unless that is solved, you're dealing with basically a ticking time bomb or something that is unsustainable. And that eventually just means that the people that are like, well, I can kind of tighten on my belt. I can figure out where to cut. I can probably take another job. I can probably, but it's just a ticking time bomb before they cannot afford to live here. So again, we keep asking for solutions. We keep proposing ideas and people are desperate, which is why we keep saying we need an emergency ordinance. Emergency meaning as soon as possible, meaning right now. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. Next up, I have Lisa Baca, followed by Jim Lane.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lisa Baca. I'm with the Los Angeles Equestrian Coalition. I'm here today to speak on the Circle K SB 35 designation. I am also the owner of Monteverde Ranch Equestrian Center in the city of Los Angeles. The only business license I can get is as a commercial business. The LA Equestrian Center was used as your commercial business, but in fact, it is a concessionaire of the Griffith Park. It's, lease is currently under litigation right now and it's a big thing in the equestrian community. I'm here to follow up the video that Liz Radley showed. In a three-hour period, there were over 176 horses using the equestrian path, which is part of Griffith Park that is directly next to the proposed development of 24 townhouses, which is not affordable housing. There's only two that are set aside out of the 24. The Mariposa Bridge is the only access for equestrians and people who enjoy going to Griffith Park. We are very concerned because there is no budget item in the city of Los Angeles or in the wrecked parks of Los Angeles to cover any mitigation or safety. And there has been catastrophic injury to a woman rider that was very well televised and in the newspaper who literally smashed her entire body falling over into the LA River. We are very concerned that this whole process has been done without the correct guidelines followed for SB 35, infringing upon the LA Master Plan, the LA River Master Plan, and equal access for everybody, including equestrians, to the Griffith Park area, which this is a huge development that is not in keeping with the community neighborhood. I don't even know how three stories next to the LA River by Griffith Park with open fire pits and barbecue in a high-fire zone, which is Griffith Park, was even allowed to get out of your development department. So I am asking, please, that you consider the potential danger. Hundreds of people ride from all over Southern California, people from Silmar, people from Glendale, people, tourists that come to rent horses. We use the park to offload and we all use the Mariposa Bridge to get into Griffith Park. It needs to be a safe haven for everybody with equal access, especially equestrians, given the history of Jean Autry and Betty Davis and the Rancho. It's called the Burbank Rancho for a reason. For hundreds of years before the movie studios, this was equestrian property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Lane, followed by Burton Topher.
Jim Lane, Burbank resident, 23 years. After five times asking Mr. Hess, our city manager, whether or not he accepted a courtesy membership at Lakeside Golf Club, he finally responded in email, "Mr. Lane," me, "as you are aware, Burbank city managers have been offered a courtesy membership for decades to Lakeside Golf Club, and I too have accepted this longstanding tradition. In the event any conflict were to arise, the city is structured appropriately so the city manager could recuse themselves for any involvement." Thank you, Justin. It took me about five or six times to get a straight answer. And for those of you who aren't aware, this courtesy membership is worth tens of thousands of dollars. So just reading Mr. Hess's email, this means that anytime we, my neighborhood, the city in general, might have an issue with Lakeside, we are structurally impaired, right? We won't have the full resources of a city helping us. And he seems to be okay with that. I would go on, but I have a lot more to talk about. I want to talk about another Burbank tradition. Let's talk about Talaria for a second. Talaria Project, about eight or nine years ago, when the council voted on it, I remember Ms. Gable Luddy saying, we should really look into relocation services for evicted tenants. Few years went by, Mr. Kreske came up here and gave a presentation. I have no idea where that is. That's a long time ago. That's a Burbank tradition, not caring about its tenants. I'm not saying you folks, none of you folks were here at the council when any of this happened. I feel a sea change happening here and I need you folks to take part in that sea change. I just want to comment very briefly, sorry, let's talk about Talaria just two more seconds. We were told that people who lived in Talaria would be working at the studios, right? The traffic would be minimal. The developers who donated $500 to each council member's reelection campaign, the developers were given a city street. They were also considered a traffic or a transportation hub, and none of the council members even knew why it was the case. and none of the council members even knew why it was the case. So any follow-up on any of that, right? How about those relocation services that were suggested eight or nine years ago? And finally, somebody here referred to Mr. Constantine Anthony as a socialist, okay? Is this the 1950s, folks? Are we red-baiting people here? I lived in Miami. I lived in Slovakia, worked in Slovakia for a long time. Yeah, stop it.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Madam City Clerk, please note that I'm finally here. I got off my butt and got over here. Happy Pride, everybody. Next up, we have Burton Topher, followed by Armin Kachidorian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. I'm here from the firing line, the shooting range in Burbank. You're working on a new draft that I have in hand on a new ordinance to more restrict firearms in the state that restricts them more than anywhere else in the country. You have in this draft signage that we have to put up on top of nine signs we already have to put up from the California Department of Justice and from the ATF. You know what happens when people see more signs and they really have the ability to read in one day? They don't look at them. They don't read them. They don't follow them. You have language in here about restricting anyone under the age of 21 if we have handguns for sale. Rifles are able to be purchased by members of the public under 21, who you would now restrict from entering those businesses at all unless they were there with a parent. We have handguns for rent along with rifles for rent. We have a range that exists without rentals at all. But if somebody were to come in with a legally purchased rifle and at 18, could not shoot unless they're with their parents. If you restrict all of these places where they can possibly practice legally and safely, what else are they going to do? Would you rather them fire off into the public or operate their firearms in a parking lot somewhere or near a school? We provide a place where people that are of all the walks of life of Burbank, including the Pink Pistols organizations and places that are, organizations that are in effect only in existence to help people that are in any of those pride organizations to be able to defend themselves against all of the horrendous things that have happened to them in the past. They can't come and practice if we get litigated out of existence. You have so many things in here that are left open. You're going to leave it to the chief of police to tell us how many cameras we need to have and how much of those cameras are going to cost us for one year of video storage. What other business exists like that in this city? You talk about in here that we cost you money from selling firearms in this city. What costs this city more, DUIs or firearm sales? You don't have any bars getting shut down. And as a longtime employee in this city, I've seen plenty of over-service lead to all kinds of problems. That's been left to go without any issue whatsoever. One of the things that I've seen just today in the handout in the foyer, on the very last page here, we see that anytime that the business is open for business, we need to have all firearms unloaded. What about CCW holders? All firearms in a building. What about law enforcement that comes into practice? Are they supposed to have all their guns unloaded? We have a range. How do you do that with an unloaded gun? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Armin Kachidorian, followed by Shant Nourhadian.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and respectful council members. I am less eloquent of my neighbors who were here just a couple of minutes ago raising their concerns about the development on Horace Mann, the school that is the cross of Keystone and Scott Road. That neighborhood is already a speed zone. There are several incidents per week. Just about a month ago, my car was spiked there, and I had to call the police department to write a report because it was hit and run. And my neighbors very eloquently stated, this is a hidden plan. The reason is not going through normal channels and soliciting inputs from the neighbors. It's not sitting well with the neighborhood. It's a foreign plan, and it will change the makeup of the neighborhood. I've been a resident in that neighborhood for 15 years, and I am an active member of the community. Several of the council members know me, and my family also owns businesses in Burbank. What is being done by Horace Mann and the school district is not correct, and it's not fair, and it should not proceed. Thank you.
Shant Nourhadian, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, members of the city council, Mr. City Attorney and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you again tonight. My name is Shant Nourhadian. I'm a proud resident of Burbank, and I work for a local, family-owned housing provider. I am here before you tonight to express my opposition to rent stabilization, rent control, and any eviction moratoriums in the City of Burbank. These are broad tools that have historically been implemented as a knee-jerk reaction by public officials. And economic studies, such as those done by Stanford University, have shown that the institution of rent control law actually resulted in citywide increases in market rents in the long run due to a decrease in housing supply, which undermines the ultimate intended goal of such an ordinance. So as elected officials, I believe that you have a responsibility to all of Burbank's residents, including those who are housing providers and those who work for housing providers, to invest the time and effort necessary to understand and identify the source of the problem that is in front of us tonight, to craft a targeted solution in a fair and transparent manner with support and input from all stakeholders, not just some stakeholders, and then to monitor and evaluate whether the targeted solution is implemented correctly and that it's working, and to make subsequent adjustments as necessary. Blindly and hastily instituting a rent control or rent stabilization ordinance or eviction moratorium is just a knee-jerk reaction, and it bypasses a fair and due process. And so it also adversely impacts small business owners, such as my employer, and it also contradicts the 63% vote against Measure RC in the 2020 general election. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
David Donahue, followed by Terry Davis.
Honorable Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, council members, and talented staff. It's nice to see you this evening. A few things I want to cover because I'm going to try not to be here till 12:45 like last time to lead you guys to it. First of all, I'm going to start off with the district maps. I would like to thank city staff for participating in the city attorney's office, for making the person available. We did a conference call Zoom meeting, and we discussed some of the difficulties, and they were able to walk me through the district mapping process. And so one of the things I want everybody to understand is that there's no name or identification from anybody that is required to go on a map that is submitted with the city, and I think that that's not right. I think that if you are going to be representing a map to the city for consideration for districting that's going to represent us and our neighborhoods, it should be somebody from the city, whether they're a business owner or a resident. Because I could go outside and gather up hundreds and just put somebody's name on them and put them in, and there is nothing that the demographer or the city clerk is going to be able to do to delineate a differentiation of where they come from. The next item I want to talk about is Item 1. It's very interesting and encouraging to hear that all the people from Horace Mann are showing up in numbers. Thank you. This is directly related to my issue with SB 35, which is Item 1, which allows for the hyper densification of neighborhoods in Empire and Buena Vista, where we have no less than 262 apartments that have already been approved, and there are two other large skyscrapers that are on their way to be built. If it is a concern in Horace Mann, think about what's happening to other places in Burbank. The item number 8, BWP's rates. First of all, I want to commend Dawn Lindell and her staff. They are absolutely fantastic. They are approachable. They'll get back to you. They are super responsive. The unfortunate thing that's getting lost in the rate issue is what's the driving force behind it. It's not them saying that, okay, well, we need to do something. It's the Sacramento. It's been the policy of Sacramento, the legislator, and the Assembly and the Senate that have been putting things in front of us, in front of BWP, that they have to do, that there's no recourse not to, or they will be penalized. So there's a lot of factors. It's very, very dense information. It's highly complex. If you have a chance to attend an IRP presentation, I highly recommend that you do. Item number 7, I'm not going to go into the issues of it too much, except for the fact that everybody is really afraid of all the guns that they're out there, and they're proliferating, and things have to be permitted. But ask yourself, what is the biggest concern? It is the criminals that are not locked up. It is the criminals that are arrested by the wonderful police department that are then re-released because the L.A. County District Attorney, George Gascon, is letting them back out. There's no gun enhancement. There's nothing there. So I would ask the city council to consider a no-confidence vote, if you would, against George Gascon and his horrible policies. Thank you.
Terry Davis, followed by Simon Hamel.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to talk on behalf of Horace Mann. I've been a resident of Burbank for over 20 years, and I am also a Realtor in Burbank. And I was really surprised when my neighbor came up to me and said, hey, what's going on with Horace Mann? Did you hear about what's happening? And I'm like, no, I have no idea what's going on. And at first, I'm thinking, oh, maybe it's just me because I don't read the news enough, and I don't know what's going on. And I called my colleagues. One of colleagues said, no, some of the representatives here, Karen Volpe, you know that she's very involved. And she had no idea what was happening with Horace Mann, and she only lives a few blocks away, which I do too. So my concern is, why are we not being told what is being proposed? As a resident, if I'm going to be making some changes, improvements to my house, I need to post something up and say, this is the things I'm going to do. This is what I'm changing. And I'm required by the city to do that. So if this is true, if this is really happening, at first, I thought it was a rumor. No, this is not true. But if it is true, why is it not being told to the neighbors? Why is it being hidden? And why is the school caring about housing? Shouldn't they be caring about school students? It makes no sense. Please, look into it. It's not in the agenda. I thought it was going to be in the agenda today, but I guess it's not. So I just, I'm here to find out, is this true? Is this really going to happen? Can you please look into it? Thank you.
Simon Hamel, followed by Jared Cavanjolo.
Good evening, council. I'm Simon Hamel, and I'm glad I got a chance to experience living in Burbank for 15 years, while it was at least a semi-affordable family town with its own government in both name and power. I'm here tonight because I finally got a chance to listen to the full ZTA hearing about the ordinance that you will forcibly impose upon current and new resident working families tonight, changing miles of zoning without regard to the quality of life of tens of thousands of residents, who I'm sure didn't get a yellow card, and we're counting on you to balance the need for housing with real planning that includes accounting for real-world transit options, of which we have none compared to the Chicago area, Boston, or, say, New York City. You're about to give away one of our biggest bargaining chips to get Sacramento to do the job only they can do and bring us serious, meaningful, light-rail transit before the class sizes and the commute times grow to get people out of their cars because that transit means more time with their families. We shouldn't have to go to other cities' attorneys to learn about Huntington Beach's new lawsuit from March of this year with as-yet-untested novel claims when our own city attorney omits that information where it was his duty to provide it. Other people's lawyers shouldn't have to explain to us that if these laws were passed on both false data and unconstitutionally, that Burbank would get its right to govern back and could carefully put this needed mixed-use development where it would benefit all parties, not primarily politicians, unions, and line the pockets of out-of-town interests ahead of your constituents. You didn't even try to seek an injunction to withhold enacting the ordinance until Huntington's case is heard, even though you still could agendize that tonight after you pass the ordinance. I'm here so that there is a video recording, and no way for any of you to say you didn't know or you never heard it. Shame on you if they exploit the loopholes you know are in the ordinances, causing the voters who came to Burbank to spend time with their families or forced by you to spend that time looking for parking or looking at the back of a stranger's head on a slow bus when they used to be able to look at their children instead, before you gave up without a fight for democratic governance. You know that I am fond of and respect many of you who have been kind to me and reached out to me. And I am not here to insult you, but to appeal to you to seek an injunction. I'm here to keep Burbank a place where people want to bring their families. And just, I have a few seconds left. I'll say, I read an article, I don't know if it's true, that says Burbank and Glendale and Los Angeles are among the most house-poor cities in the country. That means that people who already have a house are having a hard time keeping it. And it should also know that people who are almost there are about to get 20% further away if you pass these rules. Thanks for your time.
Jared Cavanjolo, followed by Karen Ross, and that's my last card.
Good evening, members of council. So at the April 25th council meeting, where many tenants first spoke about the rent eviction crisis going on in the city, I believe the amount of affected buildings was three or four. It's now gone up to seven. So the problem's clearly getting worse. And word from this chamber is that nothing can be done for the tenants who are currently affected. My question is, what about those who have just gotten notices of eviction, who may not be served with an unlawful detainer until August? And so I have a few questions just on that note, and I'm going to start by apologizing or asking you to forgive my ignorance if some of these have already been answered. I tried looking back through past minutes and videos of council meetings, but I may have missed some stuff. So just that on the front end. First of all, do we have a timeline on the AB 1482 study session? Because I know the budget and districting take precedence, but we're at a point where many current Burbank residents are not going to be here to feel the effects of the budget or districting if we don't do something to act on the eviction issues. Also, this was brought up earlier, I think, by Mr. Pimienta, but why is it that other cities in the area have been able to enact either eviction moratoriums or emergency ordinances fighting rent evictions, but Burbank cannot? I'm not saying that that's an inaccurate assessment of the situation. I would just like a clear answer as to why that is. And again, if one has already been provided and I missed it, I apologize, but I think that would be worth hearing. As also mentioned, a lot of the resources As also mentioned, a lot of the resources that this chamber and the landlord-tenant commission have put tenants onto are either maxed out or cannot help. You know, the city attorney has mentioned that the way that tenants need to fight this is through eviction court. Obviously, again, I've said it before, not every tenant can afford a lawyer, so along with that recommendation, are you providing access to attorneys? Not just a, hey, look at these places that are already maxed out, but actually I can do a warm handoff of, here is an attorney, or, you know, Mr. City Attorney, can you or are you going to be offering your services pro bono for some of these tenants? Because just to say, fight this in court, when we've got thousands of evictions happening in LA County and approximately only 50 lawyers who specialize in tenant defense, that's going to be difficult, just mathematically, to work out. So again, if some of those questions could be answered here tonight, that'd be great for the public to hear. If not, I'd love to get an email, you know, from anyone at staff or council explaining them, but I just would ask for greater transparency on these issues so that even if nothing can be done, we know why that is, and we can start planning other solutions. Thank you.
Karen Ross, and then I got one more final card. Cheryl Williams-Cory is next, and that's my last one.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Nick Schultz, council members Zette Mullins, Nikki Perez, Tom LaTakahashi, and city staff. My name is Karen Ross, owner of Tally Rand, and we are the oldest family-operated restaurant in Burbank. When Raising Canes opened 12 months ago, we faced an enormous amount of challenges, and some continue today. We have been asked to make concessions during this past year, yet it is not us who made the impact in the neighborhood. Just this past Sunday afternoon, our building was tagged with graffiti by a customer of Raising Canes. Our business was decimated the past three years due to the pandemic. We can't afford to have customers go elsewhere because they can't find a parking space. The current parking permit regulations of 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily on South Reis are a significant hardship to us. We have 34 parking spaces in our lot, and when we have a rush, along with additions to a few larger parties, we run out of parking spaces, and customers drive through our lot a couple times and then leave the area, and that pains me deeply. But in the past, they would simply have parked on Reis. For 64 years, Tally Rand customers have been able to park on South Reis, enjoy a meal at Tally, and leave the area. We feel very strongly about keeping Tally Rand easily accessible to all of our guests. This change in permit hours will not impact the neighbors because Canes rushes later in the evenings, and city staff supports it. We've been on the corner of all of Inreis for 64 years. All the homeowners on South Reis moved in knowing there was a restaurant on the corner and a major thoroughfare that leads directly to the 5 freeway at the end of their street. We are a good neighbor. Just this past month, our neighbor approached me about early trash pickup, and that our gardener was using a leaf blower way too early in the lot. Both of these complaints were handled immediately and corrected. We have and will always do our best to do right by our neighbors, and Tally Rand is not the cause of the recent issues that we are now paying the price for. We brought a lot of tax dollars to City Burbank in our 64 years and employ 58 crew members, many of who have been with us over 30 years. On June 1st, a lazy parking was hired by the city to enforce cars illegally parked and idling on South Reis, as well as other areas in the city, as I understand that they will patrol daily and will cite any car in violation of parking regulations. I am confident this measure will eliminate the neighbors' concerns of patrons parking in front of their houses while they eat their fast food. Please remember, Tally Rand has not impacted the neighborhood. In fact, post-pandemic, we are operating 35 hours less per week, and we close nightly at 9:00 PM. City staff agrees with this change. Several of our longtime customers and business owners have written letters on our behalf, which are in your packets tonight. Please vote yes to change permit parking to begin daily at 2:00 PM on South Reis. We really need your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have Cheryl Williams-Cory, followed by Alessandra Valdez.
Good evening, city council, staff members, and everybody that's attended this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Cheryl Williams-Cory. I've lived in Burbank for 39 years with my husband. We raised our sons here. They attended Horace Mann, went to St. Francis Xavier. We had two businesses in Burbank for the last 35 years and have enjoyed the time that we've spent here. Actually, came here tonight to express my concern about the increase for the water, sewer, and trash removal that's taking place on July 1st of 2023, and then, I'm sorry, June 1st, and then another increase on July 1st of 2024. I don't think that those fees have been substantiated to us. I think we already have water restriction based on the suppliers that Burbank has in place, and I think it's another thing that makes Burbank unaffordable in many ways. But changing subjects, I actually got ambushed tonight because I just learned about the Horace Mann project, and I live five blocks from there. The thing about it is, many people refer to the fact that there is drag racing and all of that goes on there, but if you think about that area, it'll change the fabric of that neighborhood. We have Brace Canyon Park there, where kids go and do lots of things and activities, and families go, and racing goes on, and partying goes on. And we have St. Francis Xavier, which has nine grades. They're having the fair this coming weekend. It is a very diversified, great neighborhood. I walk 35 to 40 miles a week in that neighborhood, and trust me, it'll change the fabric of it. So no, we don't want that project to go up there. We want to have a say-so in it, and we would appreciate that. In closing, what got us to stay in Burbank? What got us to stay in Burbank is it's been a charming, diversified city with safe streets, friendly environment for business and family. It had the ability for people to feel comfortable and be a part of the overall process. At this stage of the game, when we're close to retiring, the question is, can we stay? Will we stay? Please don't allow Burbank to have an erosion city where we no longer want to be here. Thank you so much for your time.
Alessandra Valdez, and that's my last speaker card.
Hi, my name's Ally. I'm a member of the Burbank Tenants Union. I've lived in Burbank for four years. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to kind of give an update on what's been going on. We now, in the past two weeks, there are two more properties that are being affected by the rent eviction crisis that is happening in this city. That is two properties with families who have been here for decades, who have lived here and raised their children here and are a part of the community, who are being pushed out of their homes. I just, this is a crisis. When I said we would be here at every single meeting, I wasn't kidding. We are going to be here at every single meeting, raising our voices and speaking out for the majority of the city. Because I want to push back against this disingenuous framing that, you know, only a small voice of us are being heard, and that everyone needs to be heard. Well, we're the majority. Tenants are the majority of this city. So if anything, we should be hearing from more and more tenants, as opposed to my landlord who lives in Santa Monica, who isn't a part of this community, these housing providers who, you know, are apparently providing these affordable, fair-market-rate housing, $2,000 for a studio apartment that no one can afford. I mean, tenants, I guess we're the income providers, because the majority of my paycheck goes to providing their housing. Without them, I guess without us, how would they be able to pay their mortgage? It's very frustrating to be framed as these small, small groups of people, as opposed to the 60% of people who live and work here and can no longer afford to live here and have to move to Sun Valley, to cities outside of Burbank, because they can't afford to match with the rising housing costs and increases that are happening and that are being exacerbated by LA County protections expiring. It's incredibly frustrating. We're here to raise noise. We're here to make hell. We're here to get shit done. Pardon my language, but it's time to take action for tenants. It's time to put protections. It's time to get rent stabilization here, and we will be here every single meeting until that happens.
Madam City Clerk, can we move to?
That was our last speaker, but we do have telephone speakers.
Excellent, thank you.
At the moment, we have nine.
The first caller is Tom Khan.
Hello. Hi, I'm here to express my opposition to rent control. Rent control does not be the answer. There's already a statewide rent control. Rent control does not work in the long run. It does not motivate owners to invest back into the properties and maintain them. I've been a 50-year resident of Burbank. I'd like to challenge the council to subsidize the rent and set aside funds to do that themselves, as opposed to passing on the burden on to landlords which are providing the service. Thank you.
The next caller is Jorge Rivera.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Jorge Rivera with the Healing and Justice Center. We're a nonprofit-based organization advocating on behalf of tenants and affordable housing. Vice Mayor, in your opening comments, you mentioned words like "better together" or "the betterment of the community." So we're here asking you tonight to hold true to those statements and to take an immediate steps necessary to pass an urgent moratorium on renovation-based evictions, and allow yourself the time to draft a more permanent ordinance. With every day that you wait, more and more residents of Burbank are being put at risk of losing their homes and community, and yet, as you say, you're better together, and therefore, the betterment of the community. So what about the tenants? The city of Alhambra, who we addressed, we actually got them to pass an urgency ordinance within two weeks of taking tenants to their city council meeting. I don't hear them being sued. What about all the other cities that are passing rent stabilization ordinance, anti-harassment ordinance, renovation-based eviction ordinances, and relocation assistance programs? I don't hear of any of those cities being sued either. We were there at city council about a month and a half ago, asking you to do the same. And since then, two tenants with a combined 40-years experience in the community lost their homes and their very community. Weren't they also part of the betterment of the community? So as the city leaders in a tenant-majority city, we can only hope that tenants are included when you speak of being better together. Please do not succumb to the fear-mongering. Do not bend to the idea of a lawsuit when cities all across LA County are doing the same. Is Burbank much different than any of those other cities? We certainly don't hear any of them being sued. So if you're about the betterment of the community, then it behooves you to act and pass an emergency ordinance protecting tenants against rental-based evictions. And to address a previous speaker on substantial remodeling, if you've been to eviction court or if you've talked to any tenant attorneys that do eviction defense, you'll know that AB 1482 does not do much for them at court. So even if the city attorney is saying that they have to fight it out at court, well then, you know, it's not going to help them because court is not in their favor. So if you haven't been to eviction court, I invite you to go sit there and to see how it actually sways. This is something that you need to do for the majority of the community. So we ask you for the betterment of the community, so that you can be better together, protect the majority of your city. Thank you so very much.
The next caller is John.
Hello.
Yes, council members, mayor, and city attorney, city manager. I was watching the government channel last night on City Goals, and it was talking about transitioning to the future. Now, rent control's been around the United States since World War II, approximately 80 years. It has been an inefficient, long-term program that has not solved the housing shortage. Implementing rent control means going backwards, backwards to the past. It has proven that rent control does not work, and in fact, it has contributed to the housing shortage we now face. So let's focus on the future. Let's promote more affordable housing. Let's encourage better business climate. Let's enhance more productive development. Initiate less controls and restrictions, because RC means less economic vesting in our town. Rent control means money that will not be invested in Burbank. Rent control means that businesses will not locate in our town. Rent control means that fewer investors will build apartments and housing. We see that already happening. Rent control means that no one will leave a unit that is ultimately with low rent, which means housing will not be available for anyone else or workers to move into this town. Rent control is contrary to the future, and that means for the tenants too. Tenants need protection, but this is not the answer. Rent control will result in more dilapidated housing. Landlords will be less inclined to do major upgrades. Rent control will result in more homelessness and crime in our town. All residents, including tenants, will be adversely and economically impacted. So let's take it easy, sit back, and look for the broad picture. What is best for our town, for residents, tenants, and everyone for the future? We could do it. Next week, we'll come up with some solutions. Look forward to speaking with you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is Adam Goldberg.
Hello.
Adam Goldberg here. First, hello, as a part of it. First, I'd like to offer my congratulations to the DGA for their tentative new deal. I hope they take it, because it's a big walk from base camp to the picket line, and I don't know how to organize their literally dozens of members. My public comment is going to focus on a recent weekend event here in Burbank, another well-intentioned move by our leader Kay Anthony. Some say that Anthony is deep in the saddlebag of the Burbine, Burbine, that's the name of the city, Burbine Equestrian Lobby, and if he wasn't, why would he call himself mayor? But it was last weekend's citywide scavenger hunt that originated so many of our sorrows. I believe list-making was to blame. Some of the tasks were impossible. Number three on the list was a moment of someone's time outside Ralph's. Worse was a surviving restaurant across the street from Portos, and who has a notarized friendship between landlord and tenant? Some of the list was weird. Number five was the fifth element, specifically love, not boron. With atomic number five, I still think my trislyland powder should have qualified. Worse than this moronic/boronic oversight was the items that were clearly from another list on the mayor's phone. That's the likely explanation for pickup dry cleaning, Roku City Based on Real Place, and caffeine pills for council meetings. But we shouldn't blame Mr. Mayor for the last subject, find out what someone values most. Unfortunately, many Burbians had the same idea. The safe deposit boxes at B&amp;B Peribus, what started as a fun family activity, ended in an international bank run, as creditors mistook lines of people entering the banks as proof of contagion from the Coinbase scandal. In the end, the scavenger hunter has become the scavenger hunted. Eight, I wish the mayor the best of luck in his goal of moving up the political ladder. Perhaps he should focus on our community's Karens, because they all want to speak to a supervisor. Thank you if necessary.
The next caller is Maruka Van.
Hello.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak and to hear everyone speak. It's been quite interesting. I'm an almost 50-year resident of Burbank, California, and the daughter of Los Angeles. I was able to get more than 20 signatures for people asking you, please do not increase the rates or charges for water, sewer, and refuge. And also, it's been, you know, in the month of May, my utilities were almost $764. That doesn't include cable, doesn't include food. We cannot have an increase. That set me back completely, and as it is, I haven't even had cable for more than a year. And we really need to focus on, if you need to find, if you need an increase, get the increase from the state, from the government, from Sacramento, find it there. More than 90% of the people that I asked to sign this petition for the non-increase, signed it right away, and it's been really something. It was interesting, I didn't know all these other issues of tenancy and so forth were up, because as a landlord and homeowner, I had had someone in the guest home that hasn't paid me rent in 13 years. I never approved for them to be there, so, you know, I'm like on the other side of the spectrum on that. And most important, and this issue that we were dealing with right now, that I was sent to, was the, consider the increases. Please do not consider any increases. We cannot afford to pay any more utilities than we have already. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and to hear everyone out. It was very interesting.
The next caller is Mary.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Mary, and I'm a renter and a property manager. I've been in Burbank for over 50 years, and I'm calling to oppose the approval of an increase in rate to the water and power, and I am calling especially to oppose not only the water and power, but the rent control, any kind of rent control in Burbank. Everything has already increased, inflation is off the charts, and people are already struggling, and the city wants to now increase the utility rates on top of it. It's just unacceptable. The landlords have already seen an unprecedented increase in their costs, because landlords have bills too. You're pushing out small landlords who just want to keep rents low, keep their tenants, and be able to maintain their buildings. We're not trying to make slums here. But with the pushing of costs and the pushing of rent control, you're pushing the little landlords out and making it impossible for them to keep their rents low. I'm a renter, like I said, and I'm a property manager, and I've seen so much in the last 50 years. And again, I'm just opposed to any form of rent control, because you, the city, are pushing out tenants. It's not everything else. It's you, the city, who's imposing ridiculous restrictions when there's already state restrictions in place. And that's all I have to say. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
The next caller is Todd Campbell.
Hello.
Good evening, Burbank, and good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and honorable members of the city council. I would just have to say the speaker before me just took the cake. He said exactly what I would say in a very concise way. I want to ask that you consider the impact of a rent control policy and what such results would have on our city, particularly from a holistic perspective. We need to find policies that do not pit landlords against tenants and vice versa. I worry that failure to do so will lead to a great divide and promote creative renting. What is creative renting? It means wealthier applicants may gain favor when they can offer new carpet, painting, or other upgrades to the unit. They get priority. It's not the people that deserve the housing, it's those who can promote and actually help the landlord make ends meet. I heard someone testify that entering a lease today requires an $8,000 security deposit. I will tell you, my family has more than twenty-five Burbank units, and I have never heard of such a thing. We recently put a unit on the market, I think last week, for $2,600, for a two-bedroom, one-bath. We don't ask for more than one month's rent or security deposit. An $8,000 deposit sounds like it's a luxury apartment because I don't know how I would be able to pull that off as a mom-and-pop owner of an existing rental stock. So my question is this: Are small mom-and-pops about to pay for the rights of new developers or not subject to the new policies you develop, especially when landlords like my parents are not implementing rate hikes and other terms that are purportedly harming Burbank residents? When I talked to my dad, he talked about three to four percent raises in rent, but the new development landlords are soaking a ten percent increase because of the state policies that are requiring rent control. We need to be careful about forming rental policy moving forward. Don't punish those who are not creating the issue. Please implement a study group that identifies real solutions that prevent abusive behavior but does not apply the broad punishment to good actors. We should support good landlords who dutifully serve our Burbank tenants. And with that, I thank you, and I look forward to this discourse next week.
Thank you.
The next caller is A. Kelly.
Hello, you're on.
Hi, thanks for hearing me. I am calling in tonight about the proposed housing development at 910 South Mariposa in Burbank, formerly known as the Circle K Stables. I'm going to refer to it as Circle K going forward. I'm a local equestrian, and I am very concerned about the development on two levels. First, because of the dangers that construction poses to the many horses and riders who travel across the Mariposa Bridge on a daily basis. You got to look at that in the video that Liz Radley showed just a short while ago this evening. That bridge is right next to the development construction site. Horses are flight and prey animals, and loud noises and commotion from construction would pose a very real danger to riders, especially those coming around the blind corner between the Circle K property and the L.A. Equestrian Center on their way to the bridge. This is the only safe local access for equestrians to access the park, the bridge. I'm also a homeowner who lives by the designated very high fire severity zone of Griffith Park. In addition to my concerns about the risk to horses and riders, I'm deeply concerned about the development plans because they include a proposed fire pit and a barbecue station close to the bridge. That development is a stone's throw from Griffith Park. The only thing standing between Circle K and the park are the river, which is only a couple dozen feet across, and the 134 freeway. In other words, the park is only a hundred yards at most from where the fire pit and the barbecue station would be. Griffith Park is designated by the city of L.A. as a very high fire severity zone. And yes, while Griffith Park is technically in the city of L.A., not Burbank, Circle K is a literal stone's throw from the border of the park. There's also shrubbery on both sides of the river, including between Circle K and the L.A. Equestrian Center, that is flammable as well, including on the Burbank side. During a fire, live embers can travel up to twenty-five miles ahead of the fire front, and fire speeds can reach over fifteen miles per hour. In other words, nature, wind, fires, and live embers don't care where the city borders are. I bought my home at the end of 2006, and only a few months later, in May 2007, the park caught fire. I spent over a week sleeping in my clothes with my car packed and my dog carrier in the front seat, ready to evacuate at a moment's notice. It was absolutely terrifying. Everybody on my street was watering their roofs, keeping an eye out. Every night was stressful and sleepless. Thankfully, our firefighters managed to put it out, but we might not be so lucky next time. This year, we've had unprecedented levels of rain, and in a few months, that park is going to be full of more dry brush than we've had in living memory. The whole park will be a tinderbox. It's been widely reported that L.A. experiences more wildfires than any other American city. Another wildfire in the park would be catastrophic, which we just saw in 2007. Again, live embers can travel up to twenty-five miles on the wind, and fire speeds can reach over fifteen miles an hour. It's irresponsible, not only to Burbank residents, but to the surrounding communities at large, to allow ignition sources so close to a massive and replenishing source of dry brush. I ask that the city of Burbank, please, take into account the severe risk to public safety that would be created by allowing the development at Circle K to have a fire pit and a barbecue so very close to the park. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next caller is George.
Hello, you're on.
Good evening, council, city attorney, city manager, staff, and everyone in the audience today. I'm calling regarding the housing market and housing economics in the city of Burbank. Because something that's conspicuously missing from our discussion about the housing issue is a discussion about macroeconomics, meaning the economy and the market as a whole. You know, in medicine, they have the Hippocratic Oath, which says, first, do no harm. And the idea is that a doctor is supposed to, first and foremost, prevent unintended consequences by doing the least amount possible to accomplish their goals, and also to avoid invasive, conflicting, or destructive maneuvers. In economics, there's a similar concept called a Pareto improvement. A Pareto improvement is a change that benefits an economic actor without harming anyone else, meaning that you can help people without hurting others, okay? Now, I think that there's one idea that I've heard recently that I like a lot, which is Council Member Schultz's idea to allocate money from the general fund in order to help people that are being displaced pursuant to lawful processes, okay? I think that's a good idea, and the reason why is because you're helping people without imposing or burdening upon other people, and I think that that's a good idea. We should be cooperative. I don't think that we should be creating division, creating strife, creating a conflict. You know, it's not good for people to tell them, you are a victim, you have no choices, there's nowhere you can move, and to allow them to rely on legislative action, which may or may not help them out, that's not good, okay? So I want us to just imagine real quick, imagine if we wanted to cap gas prices, and we said, gas sellers can no longer increase the prices for a gallon of gas, what would happen? Well, what would happen is that when the price of gas goes up, we would stop having gasoline in Burbank. And would we really be better off? Because the price is serving a very important function. And once you start intervening in the market, you're creating unintended consequences and creating harm. You have to be very careful. It's better to do non-invasive maneuvers and have the cooperation of the people that can help solve the housing crisis, the builders, the owners, the investors. Don't alienate them. They can help. Be creative and come up with a cooperative solution whereby everyone can benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next caller is Carissa Oldenberg.
Hi, you're on with council.
Good evening, council, mayor, and staff. I wanted to provide a few benefits to those landlords out there listening, some benefits of keeping your units just a little bit below the average price that's in your surrounding zip code. For one, you'll attract tenants that will really value where they live with a competitive price that's not skyrocketed. I'm a manager, and I've done this before, where we've priced our units just a little bit below the median range, and it keeps our tenants, they value where they live, they don't want to be kicked out, they want to stay, and it decreases your probability of having to evict someone for not being able to pay the high-priced rent. That saves you money in attorney fees, eviction fees, and all that. And your overall is just going to have a less turnover rate of units that are vacant and open on the market for days and days while you're trying to get that high-dollar-priced unit as high as possible. There's also other things that you can do to keep the prices down, but just investing in valuable things when you do your unit turns, like, you know, spot-free, rust-resistant appliances. I know it sounds ridiculous, but those things last forever, and they don't need to be replaced every time someone moves out. Yeah, they might cost a little bit more, but there's just so many ways you can save on money instead of just trying to collect more money from these tenants that are really struggling to pay $2,000, $2,700 for a two-bedroom. It's kind of ridiculous, but just wanted to give some benefits to the landlords out there that really just charge way too much, and also wanted to suggest putting in a speed bump on Keystone. I used to live right across from Horseman on Keystone, and when that accident happened with the tree in, I think it was summer of 2004, that was horrific, and a speed bump would really benefit the people in saving lives up there. A few speed bumps are needed. But that was all, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The next caller is Alex Arsenega.
Hello, Alex.
Hi, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council members and staff. I'm glad to see that so many Nepo babies are calling in to discuss how unfair life is, and that the California Tenants Association organized the entire West Side to call in. I wanted to talk about reasonable rates. When we're looking at these mass evictions, and I think that there's some anxiety from the landlords, we're not saying no price increase ever. The problem right now is that swift action has not been taken, so these landlords are raising ten percent increases. We need to put pressure on the city staff to really make a swift and decisive action. City council needs to direct that, and the city attorney needs to follow through. A lot of our folks that are being kicked out are being targeted by landlords. It's not just the sixty-day rent evictions, but it's also the lack of action from city staff. We need an enforcement arm to really process these renovations, to see that substantial permits have been pulled. I'm not talking over the counter. We need an anti-harassment policy so landlords don't bully the tenants. And we need to do something about deposits, so these junk fees aren't nickel-and-diming folks, meaning a thorough description of what can and cannot be called for. California already does this, but the city really needs to enforce and let the landlords know what is allowable and what is not. I'm concerned about the private meetings between landlords and city employees. I'm concerned about the pro-landlord bias, and I really think that we need to check that. Again, we call for an emergency ordinance, anti-harassment ordinance, long-term rent control. The longer we wait, the more nervous the landlords will get, and the more pricing will increase. We have not had substantial housing built since the 1970s. It's time. It's a problem of not enough housing, and free-market capitalism for the poor, and socialism for the rich. Let's vote on a reasonable rent control ordinance. Thank you.
The next caller is Debbie.
Hello, Debbie, you're on.
Hi, I'm Debbie. I'm a landlord in Burbank, and I'm totally against any kind of rent control. The mess that we're all in at this time, and that's both landlords and tenants, comes from the rent control, AB 1482, which the state implemented. That changed everything for all of us, for the landlords and the tenants, and made it worse. And putting more restrictions and controls in at the city level isn't going to help anything. Maybe instead of arguing back and forth between the landlord and tenants, we should all work together to try to repeal AB 1482 on the state level. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is David.
Hi, David, you're on.
Good evening. I am calling tonight in favor of rent control. Tenants are not a commodity, and we are not here to pay your bills. I'm a human fucking being. If landlords were as good at saving money as tenants, then they wouldn't be fucking terrified of rent stabilization. One day, you're going to fucking die. Are you going to-
That's it, please end the call.
-spend that time making-
Is that the call?
...harder or better for the working class?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's not. That is very inappropriate. I have discretion here. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Eric Fletcher.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Hello.
You're on.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, city council members. It's good to chat with you today. I'm here once again speaking about opposition to any type of additional regulation that the city is proposing in relation to firearms and ammunition vendors. I also want to take a quick second to thank the individual from Senator Portantino's office. It's so great that he came out and actually spelled out exactly what he is doing. It's not gun control, excuse me, it's not gun safety that he's proposing, it is gun control that he is proposing, not safety. There are some 20,000 gun control regulations already on the books, both at the federal and the state level, California being one of the most regulated in relations to firearms and ammunition. In fact, I have to tell people personally that these firearm laws are changing constantly, and it is very difficult already to keep up with them. In fact, one prominent Second Amendment advocate, who's also an attorney, actually writes a book and updates it yearly, simply because of how often it changes. If you actually take a moment to listen to those businesses directly affected by this, you'll actually see that they aren't really opposing the idea of it, but rather just pointing out the absurdity of it. One more regulation on the books. One more regulation is either just another attempt to implement your own level of control or to simply fund some other means by way of charging businesses. We will comply with the rules. That's what lawful businesses do. But we aren't talking about safety. If you want to talk about safety, actually talk to me about that. I sell firearms within Burbank, and I do it very well. I am the one that is certified by the California Department of Justice to do so. But no one's asked me what to do about safety when it comes to firearms. So again, I am heavily opposing any type of idea of new regulations on the city level, not because we will defy them, not because we will oppose them, but rather because it is a waste of the city's resources. We are already complying with all regulations in place. But if you have a question about safety, I urge you to find me, not hard to find, and let's talk safety. I know Vice Mayor Schultz and I have had some heated words exchanged, but not really a discussion, and I do apologize to him for that. But I would rather like to have an actual discussion about legitimate safety of firearms, either in the public or in the home. So please, let's talk about safety and not control. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for not using heated words on the call. I appreciate that. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Chris Verkellis.
Hello, you're on.
Yes, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for taking my call. I own the firing line indoor shooting range located in the beautiful city of Burbank since 1994. We are only a shooting range, and I believe we're the only shooting range in Burbank. And a couple of things, we do not sell firearms, and we do not sell ammunition, to leave the premise. We basically conduct safety classes in a safe environment for the public to practice. We feel our business saves lives and accidents by offering the public this kind of environment to learn safety procedures with a firearm. So we'd like to ask the city to consider our business to be an exemption to this onsite security requirement, since it would be impossible for us to, you know, have- security requirement since it would be impossible for us to, uh, you know, have firearms and teach people how to shoot, uh, under the existing restrictions. I want to thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me and look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last caller.
Oh, okay. All right, uh, that being our final caller, I will end public comment. Uh, now is the time for a brief response from city council, the city manager and/or the city attorney. Uh, first off, um, we do have some children in the audience, so I use the discretion of the mayor to cut off public comment if it is inappropriate. I will do that every time. Mr. City Manager?
Sure. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a, a few things. Uh, 910 Mariposa just wanted to provide an update. I know there was some speakers. Uh, just to let everybody know, we're in the middle of a SB 35 process for that location. Uh, so, uh, we do not have an exact date, uh, that it's coming to council, but it will be coming back to council later this year. And as soon as we know a date, we'll, we'll lock that in and let you guys know. Um, to respond to Mr. Lane, uh, similar to city managers prior to me, I have been extended courtesy privileges. And again, there is no cost to the city. Just want to reiterate that. Any expenses incurred are my responsibility and I just wanted to clarify that. And then, um, as far as Horseman, so, uh, that is something that we currently have not been involved with, so that, that is new to us as far as, uh, from the city. However, um, uh, with the different call, with the various callers, uh, we could certainly reach out to the school district and at least provide information. What our jurisdiction is, I, I do not know. I'm, I'm not familiar with the, uh, the project, but we could certainly at least provide, uh, the council with the information upload.
Um, just as a follow-up, are you aware of any state law that would allow a school district to, to circumvent permitting or planning? They would have to still come through us for all of that stuff.
No, there is, there is a state law that allows schools and, uh, religious organizations to provide housing onsite.
And, and is it by right then?
Uh, I can't go into the details of it with you, but there is a separate law for those two institutional uses.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, any response to callers? Mr. Vice Mayor, yeah?
Uh, thank you very much to everybody, uh, who came out to speak and those participated virtually. Um, I just have a couple of very quick comments. Uh, to Mr. Fletcher, um, I'm not going to address the merits of your item, but no need to apologize. Uh, sometimes we might have strong disagreements of opinion and that's perfectly okay. I look forward to continuing the conversation. Um, on the topic of BUSD, I would just know, I, I have been tracking this issue. I won't get into too much depth, but my understanding for public benefit is that, um, the school district is looking at the development of a facilities master plan. And they've asked, uh, Perkins Eastman, I believe is the, the firm that they're utilizing to evaluate the pros, the cons, the opportunities and the constraints of housing. So what, the point I'm trying to make is my understanding is that it is an exploratory discussion that I believe is supposed to be completed by the end of the calendar year. Um, that is a process that is really separate and apart from the city council's purview, but we are going to have a joint meeting with them and there'll be plenty of opportunity to explore that together. But I did want to just give that information to the public that this is something that is going to take time and I think there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input, uh, over the next six-plus months. Um, and then lastly, uh, Mr. City Attorney, we had several comments about rent control. I won't get into the merits because I understand they're not on the agenda. My question is procedural. I know that we have a housing study session coming up in which a lot of these topics will be discussed. Can you give us any sense of timeline for when that will happen?
Uh, the city manager's office is coordinating timeline. Uh, city council did approve, uh, the, a budget amendment in this budget year for us to proceed and prepare for that study session. Uh, we have, um, there's complicated schedules in, in finding a meeting when all the council's available, so I don't know the status of that. But we're having a kickoff meeting tomorrow to get the ball rolling so that we're prepared. Uh, we've been receiving comments from the public as well as the, the comments that have come in from the public during these meetings and all of that will be considered in the, um, tenant protection material that we present to council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Mullins?
Yes, thank you. Um, want to thank also everyone who came in tonight and also called in. Um, and I just do want to highlight a couple of things here. Uh, Mr. Chris White, um, I want to acknowledge the city employees for doing an outstanding job for the city of Burbank and we applaud you for everything you do. So, um, we will be taking action on the item coming up, so thank you for that. Uh, I do have a quick question in regard, uh, in regards to something that was mentioned early about, uh, electric cars being taken home, uh, or getting free electricity. I, I'm not sure what, if we can provide a quick update. I do apologize. I know we have a full agenda, but just to see, uh, what that is all about.
Sure. Uh, Councilmember, we could have our, uh, general manager come up and provide a brief response.
Good evening, Council. Dawn Rothlindell, Burbank Water and Power. Um, so we do provide as, um, we do provide some of our, uh, senior leaders have a company car, uh, provided to them. And then we also have, um, mini vehicles that do use, uh, electric power. And so we have charging, uh, onsite for that. We do offer our employees the ability to charge their vehicle while, while they are at work. Um, many of us use our vehicles, our personal vehicles for, um, work all around town and drive those as well. So, um, that is, that is correct.
Thank you. Um, if I also may, I want to address, um, Mr. Lane. Um, I, I know you have been coming in here in the last, um, maybe four or five meetings, uh, in mentioning the city manager's contract and the agreement that we have in his contract regarding the golf course. And I know that the vice mayor has addressed that once before. It's in his agreement. It's an employment agreement. And as the city manager indicated, that this is at no cost to the city. Uh, I have been in the city here for 12 years and I've, uh, heard you on several occasions, even with former city managers, uh, bringing this issue up. Uh, I, I think this matter has been heard by all of us here and it is an employment agreement. It's not costing the city any money. And I just want to let you know that if there, at any given time, there's going to be a conflict from the city manager making any type of decision in regards to the golf course, I know this council will not stand here and see that the city manager would actually have any type of conflict. So I wish this issue would, uh, rest and we move forward, uh, in hearing from you about any other items or any other issues that we have in the city. So I just wanted to address you, uh, in regards to that matter. And also, um, the other items for the gun control will be addressed as we're moving on with the agenda. Um, yep, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Press?
Um, thank you to everybody who spoke. Thank you to everybody who is here and on the phone and for everyone for sitting through all of that public comment. Um, thank you. My colleagues have addressed some of the concerns, questions that I had, so I'll be brief. Um, I will address those of you who shared concerns about the rate hikes and about item nine when we get there. And thank you to those of you who, although it's not on the agenda, continue to express your support on the housing issues and the, um, landlord-tenant situations that we're facing in the city. Please know that we are continuing to take a look, and that's all I say, because it's not an agenda item. Um, and finally, thank you to those of you who are respectful and come in here and speak in a respectful tone. It's very much appreciated and it allows us to have dialogue. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, yes, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you all for coming out. It's always important for us to hear your concerns and tonight, there were a lot of important ones. Uh, we will cover a number of the items during our, uh, agenda items later on tonight and my colleagues have already addressed a number of the questions I had as well. So thank you. A couple additional comments. I just wanted to, uh, uh, reiterate, at least from my perspective, um, the, the importance of the, the safety of the horses and the rancher. So when I, we hear you, we hear you loud and clear and that safety is number one priority. Um, also I wanted to ask just, I, we kind of touched on it when we talked about BUSD, but I'm wondering if I can get a formal request for a brief memo to council about that situation just so we can be updated. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was the plan to provide you information.
Okay, it wasn't articulated, so I wanted to just make sure it was official. Thanks. And then also, uh, Ms. Ross from Tallyrun, I think she might have left, but she mentioned that her building was tagged with graffiti. I just want to make sure that that's gotten addressed and taken care of.
Uh, real quick, please, are, 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 are all over that and, uh, working that, uh, right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and I, I would like to also, um, just mention briefly about the proclamations tonight. I, I appreciate the two proclamations tonight. I want to thank Tracy Tabb and Isabel Romero. I know they're not here anymore, but hopefully they're watching later, uh, at home for accepting the proclamation for Pride Month. I'm so happy with our city and our community. For the first time in our city's history, we have lit up City Hall in BWP and pride colors to lift up our LGBTQIA+ neighbors, friends, family. And as long as, uh, uh, as a longtime advocate and with my personal experience in the space, I am thrilled to see this show of support in Burbank. We are openly and fully a proud city and I love, love Burbank. And I also wanted to, um, really lift up the Rose Float group because I did that when I was a Girl Scout and my kids also did it in Scouts and it's just really fun. So I hope you all do, uh, join them for volunteering if you haven't already. So thank you for allowing me to say that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, um, have one more question if possible. I know, Mr. Donna, you mentioned earlier, um, in regards to the maps for the districts. And I don't know if we can answer just really quick and brief in regards to if we're not, uh, if we're not allowing or it's not a requirement that individuals who are submitting the map, that they have to indicate whether they live in Burbank or not. Um, and I know we have a study session, I mean, a public hearing coming up, but if we can answer that quickly.
They do not. They do not have to.
Okay, so we can discuss that at the study, at the hearing?
Yeah, he'll be here.
All right.
On the 14th.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, yes, thank you all for, uh, coming out. Um, I missed the first part of the meeting, but I was listening to public comment on YouTube live. I love that we do that. That's really great. Very, very easy to pay attention. Um, yeah, and, uh, thanks all for, uh, uh, the call-ins and, and, and showing up in person. Uh, personally, I, I, uh, I want to apologize, uh, to Mr. Adam Goldberg. I, um, wasted everyone's time with that scavenger hunt and I promise I'll try to stay awake for this meeting. Uh, moving on, um, the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have six items tonight. The first item is adoption of an ordinance to amend the streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for development projects submitted under the streamlined ministerial approval process pursuant to state law, including Government Code Section 65913.4. That's Senate Bill 35. And 65912.100. That's Assembly Bill 2011. Item two is adoption of an ordinance to amend the city zoning regulations to establish objective design and development standards for mixed-use and residential projects in non-residential zones. Item three is approval of the city council minutes of the joint meeting of May 23rd, 2023, and the dark meeting of May 30th, 2023. Item four is adoption of a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Burbank and the Burbank Management Association from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, and adoption of a resolution to approve a citywide salary schedule. Item five is adoption of a resolution authorizing the city treasurer to establish housing authority bank accounts and to sign for checks. Item six is approval of a parking permit agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Burbank and Greater East Valley to provide three months of discounted staff parking at the courthouse city public parking structure. Thank you.
All right. Yes?
Uh, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I just want to quickly on item two, I know we all received, um, an updated report. And I just want staff to, um, to make sure that we are clear to the public. Was there any additional changes or was just a strictly omission of the attachment, um, that was sent to us? So if-
Yes, um, I think Mr. Ramirez is, or someone from planning is going to answer.
Uh, good evening. Greg Mrazavakian, Planning Division. Uh, the, um, the memorandum that you, uh, received, uh, merely states that the attachments A and B, uh, which were already, um, included in, in the May 23rd, uh, item, were also included in, uh, were omitted in the, uh, staff report by accident and they were just, um, added back in with this memorandum.
But, but no substantive changes, correct?
That's correct. There are no changes whatsoever.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, thank you. From my end, real quick, I'd like to ask our, uh, elected city treasurer on number five to quickly explain the consolidation of these two bank accounts. And if it's saving money, if it's easy, what's the purpose here?
So, uh, good, good evening, uh, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Crystal Palmer. I'm your city treasurer. Um, so the reason for the consolidation of the accounts is that, as, as a brief background, um, this was established back in, uh, 1990 under, uh, Treasurer Donna Andersons. That was even before, uh, Debbie Cookta. Um, at that time, when they established, uh, two separate housing, uh, the housing accounts separate from the institution of our general fund account, it was believed that it was just, um, you know, better and it's better for diversification, it's safer, et cetera. Um, but recently, um, I don't know, uh, as mentioned in the staff report, our, uh, Housing Authority Bank, um, Union Bank was recently acquired by US Bank. And we've already successfully done the transition. But that, uh, started a conversation between our department as well as the, uh, Financial Services Department about potentially, uh, consolidating all the bank accounts, uh, in Bank of America. Um, so the reason for that is, uh, twofold. One is you would save on the banking fees because now all your accounts would be in just one institution. And the second is it would save us some, um, time and effort, especially in terms of, uh, reconciliation as well as other, uh, processes by the Financial Services Department. Um, we also checked with other cities such as Glendale and, um, they confirmed that they also have, uh, both accounts under, uh, Bank of America. So at that point, we decided to, uh, consolidate and, and take the gains for the city of Burbank.
Okay, great. Thanks for saving us money.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'll take, oh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a comment on the item two, not pulling it. Um, I don't think Mr. Hamel's here still, but I just wanted to briefly supplement the record from last week, uh, or two weeks ago, I should mention. Um, look, I understand the desire by some to, uh, engage in a lawsuit for the sake of thumbing your nose at the state. Um, I can tell you with absolute confidence based on my training and my experience that this community is better protected and is safer by the passage of this ordinance. We have a responsibility to follow the law and also to put in place measures to protect the future growth and development of this community in accordance with the law. And I believe that this ordinance, uh, does that. The other thing that I would just also add is I am very familiar with the lawsuit, uh, that Mr. Hamel refers to. And I would note just again, for public benefit, that the city of Huntington Beach actually did seek an injunction against the state, against these housing laws. And that injunction was denied. And I would, uh, encourage Mr. Hamel or anyone who's interested in reading more to review the order denying the temporary restraining order. This is on the Office of Attorney General website. It is publicly available. And if you start looking at page nine, it starts halfway through the paragraph, "In this case, the court finds that the plaintiffs have not adequately established a likelihood of success on the merits for each of the 11 causes of action alleging constitutional violation." I won't go any further, but the analysis is right there. And I think it would be irresponsible of this council to engage in a battle that cannot be won. Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Schultz, seconded by Mullins.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Uh, yes, on one through five. And, uh, with a possible conflict of interest, I will abstain from six.
Thank you.
Um, all right, then now is the time and place for the hearing for a project number 23-0002300 concerning introduction of an ordinance to amend Title III, Businesses and Licenses, Chapter IV, Business and Occupations, to establish administrative business license requirements for firearms and ammunition businesses. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing from council?
No.
Okay. Uh, Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given? Okay. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have.
Thank you. And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. And has the city received any written communications on this matter? And have they been provided to all city council members?
Yes, we have, and you have.
Excellent. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us? Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and members of the city council. My name is Xavier Thomas, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. May I please have the presentation? Thank you. Tonight, you are being asked to consider amendments to the administrative business license requirements and regulations for firearms and ammunition businesses in the city. This item is the most recent effort by the working group that consists of CDD, the Police Department, and the City Attorney's Office. To provide some background, on July 26, 2022, city council approved a moratorium on the establishment of new or replacement retail uses that sell firearms or ammunitions. An extension was granted in August 2022, and the moratorium will now expire on July 24 of this year. In addition, city council directed staff to consider the City of Culver City's recent firearm retail business license ordinance that was adopted in November 2022 as a pathway to creating a Burbank-specific ordinance that could be implemented immediately. During this moratorium period, city council asked staff to explore the following four topics. First, creating buffer zones that would prohibit future firearm retailers from being located around sensitive uses. Second, looking into the potential of limiting the number of overall firearm retailers and adding a discretionary review process for these uses. Third, review the Gifford Law Center Model Ordinance to identify best practices that could address local concerns. And finally, amend the business license provisions for firearm retail uses. Tonight, we will not be discussing the first two topics. However, we will discuss the last two. Staff reviewed the existing regulations to obtain a local license by a firearm retailer, which are located in Title III, Chapter IV, Article I of the Burbank Municipal Code. The Municipal Code lacks specific language pertaining to procedures, and thus, staff decided to create a new article within this chapter to fulfill city council's request. There are other provisions, other portions of the Burbank Municipal Code that mention firearms or firearm retail uses, however, none of which have provisions that cover the same topics as the proposed ordinance. As discussed earlier, when creating this ordinance, the working group took into consideration Culver City's 2022 License and Security Requirements for Retail Establishments Selling Firearms and Ammunition Ordinance, the Gifford Law Center Model Ordinance, and other best practices from throughout the state. The proposed ordinance before you will maintain the existing language in BMC Title III, Business and License, Chapter IV, Business and Occupations, and add a new article that would outline the provisions. Some of the requirements in this ordinance are existing procedures that are already required by the Business License Division for an existing retailer to receive a local license. This ordinance would codify those procedures and add new regulations on top of those. In addition, some of these new regulations are supported by recent additions to state law. Here's a summary of the recommended amendments. Establishes a local program for licensed regulations of firearms and ammunition retail sales. Introduces new relevant definitions. States that a local business permit is required to engage in the sale, lease, or transfer of a firearm or ammunition within the city. Outlines the application and submittal requirements for a local firearm retail business license. Establishes a requirement for a non-refundable fee that will be collected at the time a completed application is submitted. Establishes that the Burbank Police Department will conduct a background check on the applicant. Outlines grounds for denial or revocation of a business license. Establishes onsite security requirements for firearms or ammunition retail businesses. Establishes a requirement that firearm retail businesses obtain liability insurance. Establishes restrictions on admittance to firearm retail businesses. Establishes a requirement that the local business license permit be displayed on the business premises. Establishes that a local business license is effective for one year, at which point the license would need to be renewed. Makes the local license unassignable. Establishes that existing firearm or ammunition retail businesses have 180 days to comply with these regulations. Establishes periodic inspections of firearm retailers by the Police Department to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal laws. Identifies warning signs that must be posted on the premises. Establishes that if the permit is denied or revoked, the Bureau of Firearms and the California Department of Justice and Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives within the United States Department of Justice will be notified. And finally, establishes that the city manager or their designee is authorized to establish any additional regulations or standards regarding the local license requirements for a firearms or ammunition retail business. The working group, along with the consultant, will continue to work on completing the Zone Text Amendment process that will include zoning and land use regulations, buffer maps, a discretionary review process, and all other considerations outlined by city council. The working group used this time to evaluate the business license administrative procedures and worked directly with Gifford's Law Center and representatives from Culver City to establish what regulations could be brought before city council that were feasible, practical, and defensible. Staff may bring additional business license provisions for city council's consideration in the future. These additional provisions include inventory reporting, prohibiting gun shows, prohibiting firearm sales on public property, and additional onsite security requirements. Here is a tentative schedule for completion of the full Zone Text Amendment and completion of the first two directives that were mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. Staff will be coming back soon to request an extension of the existing moratorium. Any and all additional provisions that the city council recommends can be added to this broader Zone Text Amendment effort. The proposed ordinance is consistent with Burbank 2035 General Plan in two specific areas. First, with Goal 1, Policy 1.5 of the land use element, carefully review and consider non-residential uses with the potential to degrade quality of life. And second, safety element, Goal 3, Policy 3.1, adapt to the changing safety needs of the community. The proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Sections 15060(c)(2), (c)(3), and 15061(b)(3. In conclusion, the working group has prepared the proposed ordinance to codify existing procedures practiced by the Business License Administration staff and creates a comprehensive local program for obtaining a local license applicable to a business wanting to engage in the sale, lease, or transfer of a firearm or ammunition. Staff reached out to the existing firearm retailers about the potential changes to the local license procedures and informed them these proposed changes would be brought before city council for consideration. Staff continues to work on identifying additional requirements that could be incorporated into the Municipal Code that address firearms or ammunition retail businesses, including additional zoning and land use regulations. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go to public comment for now. I have Linda Besen, followed by M. Corbin. Hello, Linda, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Anthony and council members. One year ago, our community spoke with a loud, clear voice and said to the council and to everyone, "Protect kids, not guns." We were alarmed to realize that our city contained 14 gun stores, and our municipal laws made it easier to open a gun store than open a restaurant. We said the time for excuses was over, and we wanted action. Council did take action and established a moratorium to prevent more gun stores from opening. But as you know, more action was needed. The hundreds of people who protested and walked the bike path one year ago demanded solutions. And now tonight, you have the opportunity to take action and take that first step to fix a system that allowed Burbank to get to this point. Staff has provided a roadmap to needed solutions. The fixes are reasonable, court-tested, and allow all of us to feel safer. The changes to our ordinances regarding the business license requirements for firearm and ammo stores are needed and do not prevent anyone from buying a gun. We appreciate the work that was done to get to this step, but we all know more work needs to be done. We encourage council and staff to continue to review the zoning, land use, and development regulations. I'm encouraged that staff specifically states they are concerned about having sustainable and economically diverse retail areas in the city. Those 14 gun stores are not kept in business by the population of Burbank, like our local restaurants and other retail. Their gun customers come here from outside of Burbank. Yet, the website, Visit Burbank, makes no mention of our gun stores. The Burbank Chamber, which just did a TV interview about stores in Burbank, makes no mention of our gun stores. The city's economic development website makes no mention of the gun stores. I have to wonder, just how much do these gun stores contribute to our economic health of our city if no one wants to talk about them? Thank you for recognizing that our community's economic health is also affected by this situation. The timeline presented on part, as part of this agenda for completion of the ZTA review is reasonable, and it is meaningful, and has been shared with the community at this time. And it shows that it is not, we have not been forgotten or ignored. It shows that you value our concerns and our voices. And I just want to add, I have been a member at Firing Line. I've gone through training and used that shooting range. I think they provide a valuable community resource because they have a culture that promotes and teaches gun safety. So if they do not sell ammunition and do not sell firearms, I would believe that these, they shouldn't be concerned about what we are promoting here tonight. So I just want to say my support for that community and that for that business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Besen. M. Corbin, followed by Megan Odson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for showing up in time for blatant exhibit, exhibit number to be determined later. The, there was a person that spoke earlier about a feeling that they get when they walk past a piece of sidewalk in, on Magnolia. I'm really curious, and, and please answer later, what they and what you think happens inside of a gun store in Burbank. The delusions and the propaganda of what happens inside of this, these lawfully permitted, state and federally permitted, background-checked establishments. Who knows what goes on in your imagination? But, but there are people, reach out to that Eric Fletcher guy. He'll, he'll educate you for sure. I have, I do have questions about, while I can answer some questions about what, what these establishments bring to the city of Burbank. They're one of the rare, they're one of the only businesses that, that collect, that, that remit a, a gross receipt sales tax to the city. And in the last five years, that's, that's been for a total of about a quarter million dollars. There are some other issues with, with the city's plan. The additional requirements for inspections in addition to the existing statutory DOJ ATF regulations, these, these agencies constantly examine the paperwork that is submitted to them. Red flags and 4473s and the other forms that happen when you conduct firearms business. Bring those people to those places. Burbank PD, as awesome as they are, they're actually statutorily prohibited from reviewing both 4473s and, and bound books of a firearms dealer. The only people that can review that is, is the ATF. So, so their, so their effectiveness will be slightly, slightly limited there. I also have questions regarding the city manager's report. On page four, as part of the ZTA, the working group is collaborating with a consultant to develop a regulatory framework. I would like to know who that consultant is, if there's a financial arrangement there, if there's a legal arrangement there, and if there's a financial arrangement, if that, if that consultancy was sent out to bid. My last question is, also for city manager, city attorney, I would like you to intervene in regards to the business license renewals, which need to be completed by June 30. As new fees have not been approved, and since Burbank Municipal Code states in more than one place, the fees shall take effect no sooner than 60 days following the final action by the city, the final action by the city having not happened yet. All eligible licenses should be renewed at the 2022/2023 schedule rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Odson, followed by Melody Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and members of the council. My name is Megan Odson, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Women Against Gun Violence, a 30-year-old nonprofit organization focused on preventing gun violence in Los Angeles County and across the state of California. I want to thank you, as well as the city's staff, for responding to the, to the concerns of your community and prioritizing the regulation of your gun and ammunition dealers following the last report on March 28. The City of Burbank is housing a high inventory of guns, incomparable in volume to any other cities in the county. So it's completely reasonable to require additional oversight and security of that inventory for the safety of your community, including the patrons and workers of the gun stores, as well as greater LA. I encourage you to move forward with the ordinance as introduced tonight, knowing that there is precedence for it in nearby Culver City, and that this is merely one step in your journey to best protect your city from the threat of gun violence. I'd also encourage you to continue pursuing zoning changes that would prohibit sales of firearms within close proximity to sensitive receptors, such as schools, parks, and playgrounds. There is precedence for this as well in Culver City and many other jurisdictions. In 2023, where there have been more than 14,000 gun deaths in this country so far this year, and 279 mass shootings, actually 280, because there was one tonight in Richmond, Virginia, I ask you to please be uncompromising in your commitment to public safety and continue to explore all known possible firearm regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Hanson, followed by Saman Pendikar.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Melody Hanson, and I'm from Culver City and a part of Culver 878, a Culver City parent and community organized group advocating for common sense gun laws. I'm here tonight to thank you for moving forward with these common sense gun regulations for a safer Burbank and, as a result, a safer greater Los Angeles. Considering Burbank has such a high volume of gun stores and considering the current epidemic of gun violence and gun deaths in our country, it is completely reasonable to closely examine and tighten up laws around firearm sales to aid in protecting our communities. Further, I would encourage you to, to explore and implement zoning changes for safe distances of gun stores from sensitive locations such as schools, parks, and playgrounds, and places of worship. In January of this year, in Culver City, we had a smash-and-grab theft at our Big Five store where one gun was stolen, only blocks from one of our elementary schools, our middle school, our high school, and a Culver City Unified School District preschool, where my younger son happens to attend. Our gun safety ordinances had passed only one month prior, so were not in effect yet. They will go into effect in July of this year. Had they been in effect, it would have prevented the theft of the firearms stolen at this Big Five store due to the increased security storage requirements for guns, for gun retailers. The close proximity to our schools is what makes this a particularly scary event, and continues to remind us of why we are fighting this fight and pushing for more safety measures around sales of firearms. Again, I want to thank you for this work you have, for the work you've put into this. We are proud to stand alongside Burbank in this important effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Saman Pendikar, followed by Joel Schlossman.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and council members. My name is Dr. Saman Pendikar, and I'm here on behalf of myself, my daughter Shama, my son Shashi, my husband Sunil Malhotra, because, because this is critically important to all of us, and I just want to point out, my son is with me tonight because it's so important to him. He just finished fourth grade, and I want him to be safe in the town that we call home. And I'm here to speak about item K7, and I'll also add, there are no worries about any of the heated language earlier. My son equally understands that people who are experiencing pain and are feeling things deeply will speak strongly and that their intention matters. I'm a Burbank mother of two. I'm heartbroken and angry that our country seems to be content watching children and so many others be butchered by gun violence while the gun lobby and gun businesses rake in blood-soaked profits. I feel particularly queasy and frightened about the fact that Burbank has the largest number of gun stores per capita in the entire nation. Therefore, I'm here to speak for myself and all those who can no longer do so in support of the ordinance creating new requirements for firearms and ammunition retail businesses. I'm sincerely grateful to city staff and council for moving forward as speedily as possible with all of the requirements in the ordinance, and I implore you to continue to explore necessary zoning changes that would prohibit- to explore necessary zoning changes that would prohibit stores from being in close proximity to schools, temples, churches, and other sensitive areas. We have an opportunity to make our community safe, to make true when we say things like Burbank is a family. A true family protects and cares for its most vulnerable. This is the time for Burbank's leadership to step up and do the right thing for all of our children and all those on the margins, not big business and not the status quo. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening. You know, I'm going to talk about the Second Amendment, but first, the First Amendment. I think you opened the city up to liability by cutting off that speaker. I think it was fucked up. Now, if you have a problem with that, here's the policeman, here's the city attorney, handcuff me right now and arrest me for whatever. But these words, these colorful words, if you were truly listening to YouTube or whatever you said it was, you would have heard some other speaker use some colorful words. And these words that are offensive to you have been adjudicated already. Have you read the case of Cohen v. California? He has. He has. You can say these words. And the Chief Justice put it like this. One man's vulgarity is another man's lyric. And it's very eloquent, the way he said that. And it's not for you to decide. It's just not. It's, it's free speech. And it's not free if the mayor can say, hang up on him. And I'm not only defending that caller, I'm defending everybody here who might say a word that you disagree with. That's the slippery slope. So I think you should apologize to that fella, and I hope he gets a lawyer and goes after you, because he'll win. I hope he's still listening. Now, regarding item seven, I want to go on the record. I oppose any encroachment into the weakening of the Second Amendment. And you, Mr. Mayor, should recuse yourself from this vote, because I have pictures of you going far beyond. I have pictures of you dressed up in a costume, holding a sign that says repeal the Second Amendment. So you're clearly biased before this hearing. You've made up your mind, and you made up your mind years ago, according to those photographs that I have. And I've displayed those photographs at this podium. You can't deny they exist. So we need firearms more than ever. There's a saying that when seconds count, the police are only minutes away. We need to be able to defend ourselves from the people you are inviting into this city, the mentally ill, the drug addicted. These are serious issues.
I have one more card. Jared Cavanilla.
So as I mentioned, last week, couple weeks ago, when I accepted a proclamation in behalf of Moms Demand Action, I am a member. I think by my shirt, you can kind of tell what side of this issue I am on. However, want to address a couple of things, because I actually had a really good conversation with Mr. Topher from the Firing Line, who I'm sure we are on opposite sides of this issue. But I think there is a lot of common ground in terms of what we can do as a city to prevent gun violence and to promote gun safety. I'm actually wondering what kind of input the city or staff got from owners of the firearms retailers, as they are the ones who, I think, do know best the requirements that they have to fulfill in order to be law-abiding. I hope they're included in the conversation. I know that may seem odd as somebody wearing a shirt that I'm wearing to come out and say, but again, I do feel like there's more cause for common ground here than there is for division. So I'd hope when it comes to implementing these added regulations, that there's some conversation with them about what that will actually look like for their business, and how specifically it will help them keep us safe, because that's obviously everybody's goal here. I'd also just briefly, with the time I have, like to address, you know, comment that was just made regarding, again, a conflation of the mentally ill with firearms deaths. There are no empirical studies showing that people who have mental illness are any more likely to commit acts of firearm violence than anyone else. The only time that you can really put those two things in the same conversation is when you are talking about suicide, and then there absolutely is a correlation between people who deal with depression, other forms of mental illness, and firearm suicide, which is considerably more deadly than any other form of suicide. The best of the very scant literature out there on kind of, you know, looking at mass shooters and the mentally ill puts the number at somewhere around twenty-five percent of mass shooters have a diagnosed mental illness. That's on par with the prevalence of mental illness in the general population. So just want to put some facts out there, so that we're not letting fear, again, dictate some of our decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last comment card. It is a public hearing, so we are going to go to the phones, if you want to call in now. Eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five.
We currently have one caller, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Send him through. Hello, yeah, you're on.
I started talking. Did I get nothing?
Go ahead.
All right. So my name is Christo, and I want to bring up just a couple things about my experience here, living in the city of Burbank. So we do have many gun stores around. There are many rules in order to obtain guns, ammunition, all of that. I have a story where, on my block, there was a, got to talk quick, I've got three minutes. There was a strong-arm robbery right next door to my house. I heard about it. I went. Burbank PD was absolutely amazing, but I was on the phone with the wife, saying, do not open the door for anybody. Make sure that everything is okay. Spoke to Burbank PD, walked down, everything was okay. That was a great thing, but I felt that my wife was safe in everything that it was on that. We also had a, the last couple of weeks, we had a crazy chase on people that were stealing catalytic converters from Avon in Burbank all the way around. They ended up around my area here, and I am thankful that we were able to have firearms to make sure nobody came in. Nobody ever wants to use them, but we have them. So having those within the city of Burbank, which, again, we have to register with State of California with all of our stuff, I think it is a great thing to make us safe here. That's all.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
No more callers on this item.
Okay. All right, I will be closing the public comment period now. Does the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address one of the comments in regards to who the consultant is that we have been working with. The consultant is Dudek Consulting. I have mentioned them at prior city council meetings, and they have worked with, not just the working group, but staff in terms of doing the analysis and research.
Sorry, could you spell the name real quick?
D U D E K, Dudek Consulting.
Thank you.
So, yeah, they have been working with us, not just on this specific project, but other projects. And yes, there was an RFP, or Request for Proposal, that was filed for Dudek in terms of taking on that work. The next thing is the comment in regards to the outreach that was done. Yes, staff did mail out individual mailers and also emailed directly to the existing firearm retailers in regards to what this city council item would be for tonight. A few of those firearm retailers did actually reach out to me individually, and I did speak to them about what the actual ordinance would be, what some of those changes are. I also then did email them, the ones that did request it, email them the actual draft ordinance when it was available to the public, so they did have that on hand. Going forward for the full ZTA process, we will be having a community meeting, where we will be open to any of the existing firearm retailers to come in and have a conversation about any regulations going forward, including staff is open to meeting with them individually to also discuss any state or federal requirements that they have to go through that they may feel are redundant. We're open to any of those conversations. No further comments.
Okay.
I would, maybe staff can help answer the question about renewals and rates. So this is, tonight is the sixth of June. This ordinance, if it is adopted at the next meeting, it still wouldn't be effective for thirty-one days. And so there's two different timeframes. One, the ordinance wouldn't even be in effect until mid to late July. And then if the renewals happen before that, then they would occur before the provisions would be in effect.
That is correct. So the renewal cycle for firearm retailers, in order for them to submit their local license is June thirtieth or July first, in order for them to actually receive their FFL or their federal firearms license. If this ordinance is adopted, it would happen essentially in the middle or after that renewal cycle. So included in that, all new regulations, as stated in the ordinance, would take place one hundred and eighty days afterwards. So that would be in the middle of the new renewal cycle. So any new increases in fees would not occur for them until the next year.
And that gives them almost six months to put stuff in place and adopt.
Correct. Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. And now we move to questions. Let's try to stick to questions. We'll, we'll do comments afterwards. So does council have any questions of staff?
Okay, I'll start it off. I'll start it off. Great. All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to all who came out and spoke, both before and during this public speaking period. I have several questions about the proposed ordinance, as well just some general questions that came up during the comments. So a couple of the commenters did mention the shooting range, so I'm curious about how does this, how would this apply to the shooting range, and could you speak to that?
So because a shooting range also does apply for an FFL, they would be, and every single year, they are subject to having to require for a local license, they get lumped into those existing procedures that already essentially would be applied to all the other retailers. So in essence, they would be subject to these requirements. If it's to sound council's discretion, we could look into how we could create different standards or requirements for firing ranges, specifically for Firing Line in this instance. But as far as staff's concerned, all these proposed ordinance regulations would also apply to them as well. But again, we can look into whether or not we can exempt them, or look into a carve-out for them specifically.
Okay. I do have some comments on that later, but I'll just.
So, so I would just like to say it's not entirely clear, because many of, so many of these provisions absolutely apply to everyone with an FFL. Several of them apply only to businesses, quote, primarily engaged in the business of selling, leasing, or otherwise transferring firearms or ammunition. So without knowing the details of their business model, if they do not, if their primary business is not the selling, leasing, or otherwise transferring firearms, they may not fall under some of those provisions, but we would have to look at what they actually do, because we primarily regulate them based upon their FFL. So there is another business, for instance, Big Five is actually a general sporting goods store, that appears to have a relatively small portion of their square footage dedicated to firearm sales. So they may also not be subject to provisions that apply to a business primarily engaged in the selling, leasing, or otherwise transferring. So we would have to look case by case at each business. Again, we don't necessarily know the detailed operations of each business, whether they would do primarily training, whether they do exclusively sales or transferring. So there's, there is some flexibility in the language, depending upon the nature of their operations.
I'm sorry, where did you say that language was in the, in the text of the ordinance?
So Attachment One, page eight, there are the definitions in Exhibit A to the ordinance. And so the definition, there, there is a term that's used that is primary business engaged in the business of selling, leasing, or otherwise transferring. And so if you go to, that term is not used under the regulatory permit requirement. It's not used under the provision, for instance, the investigation of applicants would apply equally, but for instance, the restricted admittance on page Attachment One-dash-eleven, where firearm sales activity is the primary business performed, so that's where the age restrictions fall in.
And that's three, four, seven, ten, on page eleven?
Correct. But for instance, the security, onsite security requirements, three, four, seven, oh, eight, that applies uniformly under the penal code, and likewise, we apply it locally. So, so that would apply to them. They did raise a good point in public comment about whether people receiving safety training should be on video, and, you know, that's a, it's a, it's a good question, and it's worth discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I also am curious whether any of these provisions would prevent them from being able to do their regular business, also make sure that that would not prevent them from doing that. And that's my discussion for later that I have. And then, so speaking of the range, the shooting range again, I'm wondering, moving forward, if it's possible to engage the owners of the range for safety, education, and bringing them into the circle, because I think that their opinion would be really worthwhile. So I'm wondering if that has already been done, or if that's been considered, or maybe it's something that you can have as a regular face-to-face with them?
It is something that has not been done. It is something that is being considered, and it sounds like it's something that you would like us to do, so we will do it.
Because it sounds like they have the safety training already, and they're well-versed in that, and of course, safety is the number one priority, so want to have a safety focus. For the proposals, some of the comments have been about maybe the, the laws are proposing are being too, too much in addition to the laws that already exist. And my question is, for the existing laws without this ordinance, what do we currently have locally to enforce laws that are at the state level? Do we have anything locally that we can do, or is that only at the state level that, or the county level, that that's enforced currently now?
So any laws that are state laws are capable of being enforced, but we don't have an enforcement program. So currently, our permit that we require is a business license, and it's renewed primarily for licensing of the business, not regulation of the activity. As staff indicated in, in prior, every prior report on this subject, to date, we still treat this use as a retail use. So we don't have any need to go into retail uses and conduct inspections. And aside from special licensing for cigarettes and alcohol, we don't prevent people from certain ages from going into general retail. So, so these provisions are unique, and they are, this program is needed to provide the direction and structure to both licensing code and the police department, to give them direction that this is an activity council wants them to perform.
Okay. So in addition, excuse me, in addition to potentially our own city-level requirements we're putting on to licensing, this also provides, sounds like it provides us, and please correct me if I'm wrong, provides us a way locally to also attend to the state level, potentially state-level rules that we would incorporate in this as well, so that we can have it all kind of together in one package for our own enforcement here?
I'd say yes. Currently, the state laws are enforced by the state agencies, the federal laws are enforced by the federal agencies, and we And we don't have any local laws that we specifically attend to, aside from the initial background screening. And this, uh, definitely provides more emphasis.
Just a brief comment, this, this situation kind of reminds me of, um, during the pandemic, there were a number of LA county level or things that we had to try to enforce locally and it did cause confusion, confusion. So I wanted to clarify that to say that it's not necessarily, some of these things are not necessarily adding, but they're just clarifying our ability to be able to reinforce them, is what I understand. And to the, to the, to the, uh, item of enforcement, do we have the resources in our city to enforce this if this were to go into effect? How would it be enforced?
So as of right now, we did discuss what enforcement would look like as we went through each individual provision. And right now, in the hypothetical scenario, someone was not in compliance with any of the new regulations, we would result to, or we would revolt, or we would actually look to our administrative citation, um, that is outlined within our, um, municipal code right now. And so we would just go through those actual steps, which include citations, fines, ensuring that they do have a adequate time period to actually be in compliance. Um, if that is the case, and let's say they still refuse to do so, they're then in jeopardy of not being able to either renew their actual local license, um, and/or it being revoked, which then we have the authority as outlined here to relay that information to Cal DOJ and ATF, the federal government.
Okay, great.
If I could, I, I think you were, you're, were kind of going towards more staffing resources.
Yeah.
So, um, and I know that a lot of the enforcement falls on, uh, police department. So I, I don't know if somebody from police could provide kind of, uh, what we outlined in the report.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Welcome.
Union Council, Captain Dennis Cramens from the Police Department. So we're in the process right now of, uh, doing a survey. We're talking to several other cities in California where their municipal police agency does do some type of regulatory oversight. So looking at San Diego, Culver City, City of Los Angeles, and San Jose. So right now we do inspections and it's still, this is the 30,000 foot view. We haven't got down to the, the, uh, details yet. We've got several scenarios and we're trying to, you know, get the best practices and consolidate them without re, uh, reinventing the wheel. So it would be us looking at those federal laws, the state laws, and anything that you would introduce as well. And then we have a mechanism for maybe, you know, notifying the ATF, California DOJ, uh, our partners at, uh, CDD, and they could take the administrative action, uh, attendant to whatever violations that we, uh, we see. And that could be for inventory, it could be for processes, it could be for signage, security, all the things that have been, uh, identified by the working group.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, in re- respect to the signage, one of the commenters, um, mentioned a lot of signs. I would, I, I went back and looked at all the signage that was in the ordinance. And, um, there are a number of sentences that we are asking them to put in there when, or in display, which I understand that looks like a lot. And I'm wondering, can all of those warnings, let's see, I'm gonna go back to where it was. It's on, uh, section three, four, seven, one, six, page 12, um, of attachment one. There's, uh, four, five, six, seven, eight, potentially up to eight. Um, in addition to their, whatever they already have signage, could, could these all be put into one, one sign in being compliant so that they're not putting a lot of different signs up? But sometimes you have in the, like in the work, workforce break room, you have all the different laws that have to be shown in the, on the billboard. Can this be done? It has to be a certain size, one inch it looks like, but can they all be in one, one sign consolidated?
Looks like just with simple math, one inch per line, you could do it in a, yeah, 12 by 24 or something like that. Um, and, and it's worth noting, these are duplicative of the penal code. That section's actually referenced, penal code section two, six, eight, three, five.
Okay.
Uh, so likely these businesses already have those signs up. But again, in order for us to make it, uh, a condition of their regulatory permit, we would need to incorporate that. And then it can be grounds for enforcement against our permit if we have the requirement. So.
Okay. So this first section, they're already required to put up these signs and it's again, it's a.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd also like to add one additional thing. Um, while crafting that actual section, staff made a determination that we will actually create the templates for what the signs will look like.
Great.
Um, we will create the templates, um, and with any assistance from the consultant. And then we will actually distribute them to, um, the firearm retailers, um, just to make sure that they are going to be in compliance with this.
Great. Thank you. I do have a comment on that later, but I'll do that during the discussion and I have two more questions. Um, one of the commenters talked about, um, that, uh, gun retail stores are the only businesses to remit a gross receipt to the city? Do, do, can you speak to that? Does anyone know what that was referring to or off the top?
We do have members from business license who are here. They can probably speak to exactly how our fees collected, um, for those specific retailers.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I, that's interesting. And then also, um, there was also that same commenter mentioned that the chief is prohibited by the state to look at the books. Is there anything in our ordinance that we're looking at here that would potentially be prohibited in other, in state or federal laws that for our chief of police to do?
Our provision does not compel them to look at specific records. It talks about areas.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so in the staff report on page five of the staff report, it identifies a number of issues that, once we dug into them with the working group, were more complicated than we could deliver, you know, in 2023 fiscal year. Um, the inventories is one of those. So, uh, we're still working with, with several issues that relate to licensing that we're not yet prepared to make a recommendation. But the, um, inspection provision, uh, does not require them. It requires that books and records be, uh, made available, but it does not specify specifically, uh, certain records. So if some, uh, are limited access documents to DOJ or ATF, uh, then that's something that will come out as we assemble the program.
Okay, great. That's my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can we just get a quick response on the, uh, gross receipts?
Oh, yes. That'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, Mario Suna, Assistant Community Development Director with the Building Division. And, uh, that is kind of correct. We also, um, do gross receipts on vending machines and, um, car washes. So if you think about it like, uh, businesses that have cash transactions, uh, for other businesses, we have different mechanisms to, um, to get the business license, uh, fees.
Just a follow up, that wouldn't change at all with this ordinance, so that whole, uh, process would be the same?
It would not change, no.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, want to piggyback on what Councilmember Takahashi mentioned, uh, also in regarding to the shooting range. Uh, I know the speaker earlier talked also about, um, allowing minors, when I don't say minors, I think 21 years of age, uh, to be correct. Uh, being there without a guardian and, uh, I think it was mentioned earlier that impacts the shooting range. Uh, so is this something that in looking, if we do carving out, um, the section for the shooting range later on, uh, in our discussion, whether council agrees to it or not, would that something also be included along with security and everything else that Councilmember Takahashi mentioned?
Um, as, uh, Mr. Madugle outlined, if we can identify that the firing range, if their primary business is not the sale of firearms, then they would not be impacted, um, by that specific admittance requirement. Um, again, we would have to have a conversation with them to actually see what is the actual nature of their, um, firing line. I've never been there, so I don't know. Um, but if it is not, and that's kind of how it's outlined here in terms of if their primary business is the sale of firearms, then they would be, but it sounds as if they are not. So therefore their current business structure would not be impacted by this.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other question I have in regard to the signage, it's great that staff will prepare actually the signage and, um, you know, provide those for the businesses. If they have duplicate language, would they be allowed to remove that language from, uh, posting those signs since we will provide them with the, our own requirement in this ordinance?
I would say yes.
Excuse me. I would say yes. If it comes to find out that when we create our template for signs, that when we actually distribute them to the existing firearm retailers, they say, hey, I'm already required based upon this California penal code to already have this sign up. We don't want them to have redundant signs. Um, we just want them to actually add signs that maybe add additional, um, warnings based upon what the ordinance states. But if they, if it comes to find out they are redundant, we will just remove one of them and just let them meet what the state requirements are.
Thank you. I, I think the speaker mentioned that earlier. After a while, when you start seeing multiple signs, you lose the content of what you're really trying to, to do in education. So that will be great. Um, I do want to mention, um, in, in the ordinance on attachment one, section three dash four, seven, oh, nine, liability insurance. Um, the SBE 1384 in attachment eight dash one does indicate that they have to have a liability insurance of $1 million. However, our ordinance does not reflect the language, uh, to, to, it, to actually reflect the 1384. It does under three, four, dash, seven, oh, eight. It says that, uh, consists of all requirements stated in Senate Bill 1384. Would it be possible to have the same language under the liability insurance? So it's not misleading that we require a separate liability insurance?
Yes, that, that is possible, just to provide clarification that the requirements for liability insurance are kind of mirrored after what is in 1384. Um, the reason as to why we had left it, uh, kind of more vague and just left up to, as the ordinance identifies, just left to the city's approval, is because in the event that that does change and that actual amount goes up, then that means we would have to continuously change what the actual state bill would be and continue to change that amount going forward. This kind of would fall back on whatever the state suggests as the liability insurance. We as a city would verify that that is what the liability insurance would be for those firearm retailers. And every single year for a renewal period, they have to submit proof of liability insurance itself.
So I think it would be beneficial to, to do indicate that it's the same requirement as Senate Bill 1384. So if it does change, we just need to refer to Senate Bill 1384?
We could, um, or we could just make it reflect simply whatever is required by state law at the current time.
Okay.
Or just state law in general.
I, I kind of like the council member's idea only because originally we left it vague because it says requirements by the city and that, uh, it can be increased at the city attorney's, uh, direction if we need higher levels. Uh, and I was looking at our customary levels and they are a million, but they're in different provisions. So one of them's in towing, um, it, it wasn't where I thought it was. One of them's in right of way permits, which we deal with a lot, neither of which apply to this activity. There wasn't a, a generally applicable one unless, um, Mr. Osuna, uh, has a, a precise reference. Um, I didn't see one. But either the, the, the cross-reference from seven, oh, eight can be transferred over. Um, what we also want is certainty for the businesses that they're not guessing.
Right.
So, uh, we're in favor of whatever gives the council and the businesses certainty that they can comply.
And that's my intent is to really make sure it's clear for them that we're following the state law and we're mentioning in here, so it's clear to everybody. So thank you for clarification.
Can I, can I interrupt for just a second? Uh, uh, Mr. City Attorney, if for whatever reason, uh, SBE 1382 gets amended for a new state law, how easy would it be to come back and update our code? Is that just something we can do on consent?
Yes, this is Title III. It takes, uh, two trips to council, uh, probably three, because we'd probably come with, well, staff can initiate and bring a, a draft ordinance if we believe it's necessary for us to be able to comply. And this doesn't necessarily require a noticed public hearing, although council is usually, uh, much more favorable for outreach. But it's, it's simply bringing an ordinance, uh, it couldn't be introduced on, uh, well, it could technically, I guess, be introduced on consent and then it would be adopted at a second meeting. It would take us about 45 days of actual council time and staff time before that.
And that's only if the state initiated a change to this law for the insurance.
We could also change our code because the state law says nothing prevents the city from creating an increased requirement. Right now, generally, our requirements are a million dollars. We haven't taken a separate risk assessment and we don't have any experience that would tell us it needed to be a different level at this time.
Okay, okay. Great.
Thank you. Um, moving forward to, again, attachment one, page 13, under, um, three dash four, seven, one, eight, which is regulation standards. Um, under A says the city manager, it talks about city manager, um, sets additional rules and regulations, and it repeats in B and C. And I went to check with the city attorney and, and the city manager, usually our, our normal procedures, the city manager set the process, not the regulations, uh, because council set the regulations as an ordinance. So with, um, the city attorney would be okay to look at this section and actually look at changing words of regulations to process and policies as the city manager would set that?
So we could do that. Uh, this was a provision that was similar to Culver City. And I liked it because it was a little bit more comprehensive than our normal wrapper provision. But now that you mention it, the city manager, regulations are the code and the city manager doesn't amend the code. So that word is, is probably not appropriate there. What they do, what the city manager and, and his designees, like the Community Development Director and the police chief, they adopt, uh, or, or develop rules, procedures, and processes. So we've talked about many of, what's the application? Sometimes there's interpretations that need to be made. Like we think the rule applies one way and then a business comes in and says, well, I don't do that. And they have to render an interpretation that doesn't change the rule. So maybe we could bring back, and it is within the scope of the charter, to, to revise this between introduction and, and adoption, if the council so introduces tonight. We could change the language from regulations to maybe procedures and processes and interpretations or something that furthers this ordinance, because we're going to have forms that don't yet exist. We're going to have methods of submittal, which right now might be on paper. They might be on computer, but the forms don't even exist. So that process hasn't been ironed out, um, whether we use e-signature or not. Uh, so inspection forms, all of that doesn't come to council. That is implemented, uh, at the city manager level and then as delegated to department heads. So we do want these provisions, but we can change the words so they're more appropriate to our process.
Thank you. And I think council will talk about it later to make sure. But I felt it was necessary to look at the words regulations here. Um, my, I think, almost last question. So I know we're going to come back and, and discuss the, um, zone text amendment. And something that, uh, either I, I want to kind of ask about now in preparation of coming back, with the, uh, recent changes of AB 2011 and, um, having, anyone can come in on the corner of a commercial lot, uh, and build a, a housing unit in there, uh, multiple family housing. Um, how is that going to impact the, um, zone for allowing a firearm business to be open? And then later having at a corner down the street from that business having multi-family units will all of a sudden erect because of 2011? How is that gonna, how are we going to anticipate this? How are we going to look at this in the future? Because the first thing you're going to hear, there's, uh, a firearm business down the street from my house. And that's what we're trying to create is a buffer zone to protect our families, to protect the children. So I'm not sure how this.
So the buffer zones are not agendized for tonight, but you raise a good example as to why it's not before you this evening is that there's a lot of good questions about how buffer zones would be implemented. Uh, what we generally do is they only measure at the time of the application. They don't measure and create a permanent zone typically, but we haven't ironed that out. So they have in the schedule, uh, which was in the slide deck and is also on the last page of the agenda item. Um, uh, they have a schedule, uh, and I know, um.
Paid, uh, attachment nine, dash, one?
Yes, attachment nine, dash, one.
Yes, I see it. The schedule's coming back.
So August, September.
Yeah.
And they will develop standards and they're going to consider things like what happens as development pattern shift. And we have a hard buffer zone and how those would be implemented.
Okay. Well, it's something that, um, we definitely need to think about in advance because 2011 just came to all of us as a surprise. So it's something for our future, looking at previous reports, of course. previous reports, of course, we were not foreseeing 2011, so it did not mention a lot of these, the zone tax amendment and buffer. And I'm totally aware it's not on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to throw it out there just for some thoughts. I can't be the only one not sleeping about it, so I had to pass this on. I'm going to stop right now, and then we'll give opportunities for others here.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
Very, very nice throwing that in there. My, you know, first, I want to thank staff for putting this together. I know it's an easy lift, but I know it was not. And it was an effort amongst, you know, multiple departments. Thank you to our police department, to folks at CDD, and folks at the city attorney's office for working together to put all of this together. I also want to thank you for including that schedule in there. I know that was my ask. So thank you for putting that out there and giving a lot of our community members, retailers, folks, an idea of when things are coming down the pipeline. I think it's helpful to know and to start thinking about how they get involved in the process. I had a lot of similar questions to those that Councilwoman Mullins and Takahashi asked, but in addition to that, I have one question, just for myself. I'm not an expert in this. Can you define an antique gun? I don't know what that is. It was in there. Antique firearm. It was in the very first page. Attachment 1, 7?
So not include antique.
Yeah, in the definitions. It says, "An antique firearm, a term defined in Title 18 of United States Code." So.
We, I, just based on looking at that section, there's a specific state provision and/or it looks like even a federal provision that defines what an antique weapon is. I don't have that on hand, but I can get that answer for you.
I have it.
There you go.
If you'd like. This is Penal Code Section 16170. Let me just grab it here. An antique firearm has further defined in Sections 16531 and 17700. It means, number one, any firearm not designed or redesigned for using rimfire or conventional center-fire ignition with fixed ammunition and manufactured in or before the year 1898.
Which is like a black powder, but the key term here, it references but shall not include blank cartridges or ammunition. And so those are generally not, they don't fire a projectile.
Gotcha. Thank you. I was very curious.
Which is why they would carve it out from ammunition, because it shouldn't be harmful.
Great. Thank you. And then, I mean, I had the question, I'm no expert in this, so when I saw antique firearm as defined by U.S. Code, whatever, I had no idea what that meant.
Penal Code Section 16170.
Thank you. My other question was, we talked about, you know, the regulatory permanent application listing proof of compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local licensing laws. Can you go through, what is the proof that is required?
At the beginning, the proof will just be, start off as an application process, or it'll be a self-certification that'll identify that they are indeed in compliance with not just the local ordinance that we have forward, assuming it gets adopted, but also the state and federal requirements. In order for them to actually, in order for an existing firearm retailer to receive their FFL, they actually do have to be in compliance with their state and federal requirements. So they'll have to self-certify and identify, as they currently do right now, that they are indeed in compliance with all those requirements. It's a self-certification process.
Thank you for that. And I know we're still, of course, in the early stages, and this all pertains and depends on whether or not we adopt this. But we talked about, you know, adding a fee here. Are there any waivers, exclusions, anything that has been carved out or considered?
As of right now, no. There have not been considerations for exemptions or waivers. Any local license here in the city of Burbank has to pay a fee in order to receive said license, similar to any business that happens, regardless of retail or any other type of use. So we have not looked into exemptions for any, either this use or any other use, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you for that. Those are all my questions. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you to the gentleman from the firing range for being here and adding a lot to the discussion. I look forward to talking about that piece. And last thing, I will say, brief comment, to the point of Councilwoman Mullins and adding in that portion about the licensing requirement matching the state regulations, I really urge my colleagues to keep it a state and maybe not focus on one bill, as was illustrated by many folks here. There are a lot of, there's a lot of legislation around firearms. I have worked on some of it myself in the past, and it is constantly changing and ongoing. So for the sake of our retailers, I would say we keep it at state. It's two cents.
Do you mean, so in the reference for the insurance, to simply state that is whatever state law requires?
Yes, because adding the legislation specifically, as Councilwoman Mullins said, that could go away. We could have new provisions, et cetera.
So I'm wondering with that, do we then change 3-4708 onsite security requirements instead of having Senate Bill, instead of spelling out Senate Bill 1384, do we say according to the state?
But let's, you know what? Let's do this for the discussion, because this is important. I want to get into this. Let's finish our questions real quick. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, picking up off of that, Mr. City Attorney, Senate Bill 1384, I believe that amends California Penal Code Section 26806. Is that right?
Correct.
So I would, I'll save that comment for later, but I think that answers it. Two questions. Great report. Great job. First of all, I wanted to talk about, going back to proposed Burbank Municipal Code Section 3-4-710. It talks about where firearm sales activity is the primary business. I'm going to pose a hypothetical to our staff. I'm really more trying to get your thought process and how you're going to conduct the analysis in determining whether firearm sales is the primary business or is an ancillary business. So assuming hypothetically that you do have a firing range in the city of Burbank, that, you know, for a fee, you can use their range. They offer firearms training classes. There's membership baked in there. And perhaps assume hypothetically, they have a pro shop where they carry basic gun necessities, gun cases, gun cleaners, lubricants, handgun magazines, targets, and more. How would you go about analyzing whether that is firearm sale? Because it doesn't sound like it to me.
Based on the hypothetical that you've laid out, it does not sound like it would be to me either. However, what we are also requiring in this is a submittal of a floor plan. So within that actual floor plan, you would outline and show how your actual business is laid out. If there is a firing lane, and you do have a location where there is going to be retail sales as a component of that, then we would see how large and how big of an impact it would be in terms of your overall broad scope of your business. And also with the submittal, you would, and this is when we do create the application, you'd be listing out every single activity that would occur on said business site. So we would match what the description is of your scope versus what is on your floor plan as well, to try to, as best as we could, identify what is your primary purpose.
So you'd look at floor plans, and then would you also look at revenue streams? What is the business's largest share of revenue, or is that beyond the scope of the analysis?
That would be something that probably business license would have to look at in terms of, they do collect that for gross receipts in terms of the business fee itself. That's not something that we in planning necessarily look at. Again, we just look at what the scope is of what the actual business itself would be, along with the floor plan, and analyzing what is the business doing onsite. If I were to show up as a participant of it, what would I see? Would I see individuals just doing training? Would I actually see individuals on a firing line? Or would I see a lot of business transactions that would occur where people are trying to purchase firearms on said site? It kind of comes down to, it just, what would I physically see onsite based on the floor plan?
Okay.
And just to add to that, Scott Plumb, planning manager, this is not an uncommon exercise that planning staff has to do for businesses. Often, we will ask for a floor plan, we'll ask for a written description of the primary purpose of the business in order to make the determination as to what your business is under the zoning code, what the definition of business is, say, in this section of the code as well. So we do, and then we'll follow up with the business owner if there's questions as to, what is the primary purpose of your business? Are you primarily selling guns? How much? So on and so forth. And to Mr. Thomas's point, we do look at the floor plan. We may go do a site visit, and we may ask for written documentation as well.
Thank you. Final question I had was, I think I gave you guys a pretty hard time last time you were here, saying that we needed to move a lot quicker, and it looks like you have. So I was wondering, just for the community's benefit, if you could speak to the efforts that were made to move this item so that it's prepared tonight for introduction and discussion?
Over the past couple of months, since we last met March 28th, I believe, we have met routinely, if not several times a week. And what the exercise entailed was outlining every single provision in the Gifford Law Center model ordinance, along with every single provision that was in Culver City's. And we went through each individual provision, and we outlined whether or not, it was through a specific criteria, whether or not it was something that would address a local concern, whether or not it would be something that would be defensible, and whether or not it could actually be implemented by the city. By going through each individual, one, we ran each provision through that criteria to see whether or not it would be possible or not. And then that's why there are some provisions that are not directly from Culver City but are in ours. So we spent several weeks just doing that. And then we had follow-up meetings on top of the ones that we maybe were questioning. And that's when we actually did get in contact with representatives from Culver City and representatives from the Gifford Law Center, in order to have those conversations as to why in your city or in your organization, you believe this would be the best practice. And then from there, we decide, okay, this is the best form possible, but we still left it to city council, if they do want to have additional provisions, that this is also the other items that you could essentially let us know that you want going forward.
Just to add to, I think the answer is, other things were set aside.
Introduction?
Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director in Planning, sorry, the other guy. Just wanted to touch on the fact that the planners that we have don't specialize just in code amendments. So Xavier's work on this project has basically meant that other things have not, we haven't gotten to those. And that includes, as you guys get many complaints on hillside development projects or additions, it's because they're focusing on that. So the time and effort has been significant, not just for Xavier, Mr. Planbeck, and the police department and city attorneys. It's been a pretty extensive effort. I mean, we just had a similar discussion a few weeks ago. And so we've basically compressed a significant amount of time into a short window. But like before, we understand the significance to the council and the community that the NMB brought forth, but other things are deferred as a result of it.
Okay. I have a quick follow-up question to the, the primary use. When the, who would make the determination of what the primary use is? Is that planning? Is it the inspection team? How does that work? And then what's the timeline? Because you said you wanted to get maybe a response from the owner.
So because there is a window by which the existing firearm retailers have to actually submit their local license to the federal government to receive their FFL, we do send out, or business license does send out that packet, or what would be a packet, saying this is the thing that you need to submit in order to meet all these requirements. At that time, we would be asking for that floor plan, and then it would be a combination of not just CDD or business license, but also the planners, and if we need to, the police department, who would do that check and identify what the primary purpose or primary business, or if the primary purpose of the business would be firearm retail sales, or if it would be something other than that. So it would be a combination of everyone that is already within the working group to make that determination. And we would have roughly about, I'd say, maybe about 60 days or so to make that determination, or to make sure that the existing firearm retailers do receive their local business license, if they are in compliance, therefore they can receive their FFL.
And that happens when a local business submits for the first time, and every six months?
It would be every year. So every year, it's an annual license that they'll have to get. So every single year, we have to do the same exact exercise.
Okay. And then just through my understanding of how the city works, the very first inspection would probably be very arduous and thorough. And my guess is, if there's no fundamental change in the following year, no floor plan change, no drastic change in their sales or gross receipts tax, or any of that other submission, this would probably move much faster in consequential years.
That would be correct. I will leave all answers about inspections to the police department. I can only speak on what would be submitted to us and what we would look at. We would try to, every single year, we would just match up floor plans. If it is like a, how sometimes it would occur, if the floor plan does not change, then they may just submit the same exact floor plan, just with an updated date, and identify that no changes have been made from the prior year. However, we would ask for those submittals just to verify and make sure that nothing has changed. But in terms of inspections and the level of detail of the inspections going forward, I leave that to the police department.
Got you. Okay. Yeah, I think that covers all of my questions, actually. You guys answered a bunch of them already. Any other further questions? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Thank you. I will be closing the public hearing at this point and moving into deliberation. Thank you, staff. This was a wonderful, thorough report, and obviously, it's not final. So I wanted to first go back to something that we got into just a little bit. Councilwoman Mullins, you pointed out that there was another provision in here with the, I believe, the storage that was also referencing state law. Is that right?
Yes, it's under Attachment 1, page 10, 3-4708. It does indicate that consists with a requirement stated in Senate Bill 1384, which is Attachment 8 to our report. So whether we agree to keep, as you have suggested, Councilmember Perez, to keep it as just the state requirement versus the Senate bill, maybe the city attorney can weigh in on this?
So my preference is that this aren't onsite security requirements and video surveillance in particular. And then...
So just 34708 is the one you want?
Correct, because in other contexts, if you just take SB 35, for instance, that was a law, I believe enacted in 2017, effective 2018. And those provisions have been amended like five more times.
Right.
And when we say SB 35, it's really the statute 65913.4, which has grown. And so we once gave this council a copy of SB 35, but that was a relic. The statute itself had changed. So...
An antique, you would say?
Yes, a blank antique. So what I would recommend is, because this relates to a new specific requirement, which is not yet operative, you're actually going to beat the statute, we should refer to the statute and then say, and other state requirements as amended from time to time.
Okay.
So that we maintain the requirement, even if it becomes a 26806.1 or .5, or somehow grows, that we're, our language is flexible enough that it doesn't become outdated.
Okay. But then, in reference to the, the insurance, sorry, thank you. In reference to the insurance, would you also recommend the same? Because SBE 1384 also does the insurance component as well, and I forget what the...
Yeah, it's a different section. It's actually 26811. It is effective July 1st. So that code provision will be effective before our provision is effective.
But that's not new insurance requirements. That's just updating other state.
It's not yet in effect.
Oh, okay.
Right. It's part of 1384.
Just a different, it's a different section.
Right.
Enacted by that same bill.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yeah.
So is staff's preference to include the provision the reference to 1384? Then, because if so, I would just at least put the year of passage in there, because as you know, there's a 1384 every year in the legislature, and that could also be...
A completely different subject.
It could be.
No, so my preference is not to refer to
Okay, good.
The bill, but to refer to the code section.
Good.
It's a little too vague to say as provided in state law, because it doesn't point, if we're all moving toward objective standards, it doesn't tell the regulated business exactly what they have to comply with. So your choice is to say, provide insurance as required by penal by Penal Code Section 26811, or provide not less than $1 million insurance as may be, as required by 26811, and as may be increased from time to time, or something like that.
I think so. I think the section should satisfy, just to be clear where we're getting that information from.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah.
All right.
If everybody's okay with-
Yeah.
Mr. City Attorney, you got the correct section for us.
I am writing, yes.
And then, I guess the other one we were talking about is the age requirements. Let's see what's exempt, when that comes back. We wanted to-
I believe that was only for the firing range in particular.
Oh, that's right. And Big Five.
The fire range, well, Big Five, I believe, the city attorney, because this, it's not directed only for sales of firearm.
Well, that, so that was my layperson's assumption, but Vice Mayor has asked staff how they determine the primary use. And so that's my guess, but they'll come up with a process and a procedure, and they'll make that determination. That's one, to me, that seems kind of obvious. The other stores that I'm familiar with, some of them are so small you drive by, and you can kind of see the whole thing, and it looks like a gun store. It doesn't look like a sporting goods store. So I imagine some of them will be obvious. Big Five is the one that comes to mind.
Just for my own sake, obviously, you know, teenagers, high schoolers go to Big Five all the time for sporting goods stuff. Is there a separate, like, state or federal age limit on firing ranges? Like, can people under 18 go in there and just not participate? Or like, what is, do we know the rules on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. But they just can't participate if they're under the age of the, okay?
Well, no, there are youth that engage in marksmen's sports, and there are youth that own their own firearms that engage in marksmen's sports. The Supreme Court protects firing ranges as part of the Second Amendment. Two cases in Chicago where they tried to ban firing ranges. So they are important to acquiring the skills, the safety, and maintaining proficiency. So if someone has a legal right, it's an Olympic sport. The biathlon is cross-country skiing and shooting. And there are others. The Boy Scouts have marksmanship training, and many others, that they should have a place where they can become proficient. But they should do so in compliance with the law. I can't break down for you at the moment what the laws are applicable to youth ownership of firearms, but certainly, it is allowed in some context.
Okay. All right. Okay, great.
Mayor, are we all in agreement in regards to 3-4718, which we talked about earlier in regards to the city manager changing the word regulations-
Yes, the language, yes.
To process, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we gave directions.
You got all that.
Well, so let me just summarize for purposes of any motion that may come. My understanding is, we can keep the general concepts, but they'll be rephrased to say something to the effect of, the city manager or city managers designate is authorized to establish any additional rules, procedures, or processes concerning or related to the application issuance or denial of permits. Not regulations, because regulations are this very code, and only the council amends the code.
I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Any other, yes?
Yeah, I have an additional item with the signage.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. So for the signage, the number four, where if you or someone you know is contemplating suicide, I'm, that's part of the state law as well, right? That the signage would require that, which is great. But I feel, like, that's such an important part of this, this information, that if it's not brought out, it might get lost and all that information. So I'm just wondering if council might consider, for that one, number four, and this is the reason why I asked if they could all be on the same sign, if that one, number four, actually is separated out, is really clear about how to contact for suicide prevention, so it doesn't get lost. Just because if there's so many things on a sign, and then there's like a little number in the middle, and no one's going to read the whole sign to get to that provision, number four, of this is where you go to get your hotline information.
Well, I guess my question is, under state law, is that included in all the other thing? Like, what does it look like now? Is it not separated currently? Do we have a picture of this?
I'm unaware of a model signage. Staff is recommending to prepare model signage that meets our requirements.
Okay.
And that simplifies the process. If you're providing model signage, and you wish to accentuate the risk of suicide, somehow highlight that, you're free to do so. However, they could throw our free sign away, and otherwise simply meet our code by putting it up with letters that are one inch. So, yes, we can have our own preference, but as long as they comply with literally the black letter of the law, that is, that they have these words in minimum one inch, then that's okay. My sense is, when we did the smoking regulations 15 years ago, the businesses were happy to take what the city prepared at their expense, the uniform signage program, which we will be doing in some other areas as well, working on uniform signage. So we're free, we're free to help them comply, and if you want to accentuate something, that's, you could give that direction.
Yeah, I would really like to accentuate number four, if that's okay. And in addition to that, this number 1-800-2732, there's also 9-88, which is the same, it goes to the same place. And you can not only call 9-88, but you can text 9-88. So I think that would be great. I don't know if we want to put it in the actual ordinance, but certainly in any, any literature that we give folks, I think it's really important to add that little bit at the end, so it's easy to just text 9-88, rather than doing the whole, trying to remember the whole number.
I'm comfortable changing it to call or text 9-88.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think if you wanted to add it, that would be fine, but if you were to change the number, that would violate-
Right.
Penal Code Section 26835, subsection B, which this language is directly from.
Exactly.
So you really, you can't eliminate the, that number.
And if we add it, then it may, it will basically force them to take our sign, which I don't want necessarily them to have to take our sign with the added 9-88, just because we added it to the ordinance.
I see. So you're saying, don't change the ordinance.
Yeah.
But when we send our signs, we include call or text 9-88.
Yeah.
So provide a sign that includes the current, you know, provisions provided by the National Suicide Hotline, which is their general number, the 9-88, and says you can call or text this hotline.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
I'll just very quickly say, I really appreciate staff doing the heavy lift on this. I know it took a year to get here, but I definitely want to thank all of the community members on both sides of this issue that have reached out to council. And I think it's the beginning of a dialogue. And I'll just say this, I think if there is any common ground, and I think, Mr. Cavaniolo, you had the quote of the night, in my opinion, I think there is a lot of common ground to be had here. And I think we all want a safe community, and we want to keep firearms out of the hands of those, of those who have no business having them. And to that end, responsible gun store owners and operators are key to the frontline defense. So I think we are in this together, and I think this is a great first step. And in my view, I don't find it controversial. I think it's common sense.
I second that, totally agree. And I actually want to applaud you, Mr., I call him Jared, I'm sorry.
Cavaniolo, did I say that right?
I cannot pronounce your last name, so-
I've been practicing.
Yeah, well, thank you. You said it really well, even though you're wearing this shirt that you're wearing, but I applaud you for engaging in a conversation and seeing that this is really an effort that has to be made by everyone involved. I often have engaged in conversations where, you know, members of the community ask me, well, we need to get rid of those firearm shops here in Burbank. And my answer is, they're part of our business community, they're part of our fabric of the community. Unfortunately, yes, we have 14 stores, we can't really do anything about it right now. However, we're taking measures to trying to work with them, and trying to work to make sure our community feels safe, our children feeling safe. And we still have a lot of work to do. Staff did an amazing job coming back really fast to us, to give us a little bit more of what this would look like in the future. I do want to make sure that we do engage our business owners in this conversation. It's really important, like we do with everything else. It's very important to put the stakeholders at the same table, to have a dialogue, because it's important for them to buy into what we're doing. We don't want to create, you know, enemies out of our business community. We don't want to create any enemies out of our community at large, just so that we're, we're not listening to them. So I do appreciate, when you're moving forward, that you bring them to the table and hear them out, because if we haven't heard tonight from Mr. Johnson, I believe his name, yeah, Peterson, really, I would have not thought about the, these questions or these comments that were made tonight. So I do appreciate any feedback that we can get. I think this is a great step moving forward, and I look forward to seeing what else will be coming to us. So thank you.
And to piggyback on the excellent comments by my colleagues, I think this is an excellent step in the right direction, not only in the intention of safety of our community, but also being on par and consistent with our surrounding communities. So I think this process has been thoughtful and deliberate, which I so much appreciate. And I want to just recognize all of the people that have been involved with this process from beginning to end, in our community, in our staff, the comments we've received, the meetings we've had. This has been a long process, and I appreciate all the effort and hours and time and consideration that's been put into it. I think that this is a good first step.
Echo the comments. And also, you know, I want to point out something that I think is important to, to all the commenters here, especially the folks from, from the stores and from the range. We're looking at this at a local level. Yes, there are plenty of existing laws in the state of California. It's a state with the most gun laws, it's over 100. However, as the letter we received from the Gifford Law Center outlines, the ATF and the DOJ, with all due respect, do not have the resources to properly oversee all of the gun dealers in the US. And there really isn't that compliance check at the level that I think some community members would like, and at the level that a city with 14 gun stores should have. So we are just taking that point to have that mechanism there. A lot of, as a lot of you heard today, and I hope this quells some of the concerns, a lot of what we're putting into our code is a lot of what already exists. And the reason we're doing that is so that we can provide that compliance, and so that we have, like I've said many times, a system that is by Burbank for Burbank, and our mechanisms work locally. So I'm really excited to keep that conversation going. I invite you to continue to engage with us and point out some of the things like what you did today. And I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, last thing I would say is, I know it's only seven pages of code, but crafting an entire article under Title III, Chapter IV, from scratch, there was nothing there before. This article didn't exist. I, you know, it's been years since I've seen that happen in the city. We'd have to go all the way back to the Single Family Housing Design Plan six years ago, to see something entirely crafted that didn't exist in the city. So thank you to Mr. Thomas, Mr. Planbeck, Mr. Ramirez, staff, for putting this together. You took the time. And again, this is just the first step, and thank you for putting in that work. You should be proud of yourselves. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I can make the motion to move it forward.
All right.
I move to introduce an ordinance of the Burbank City Council amending Title III, Chapter IV of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish administrative business license requirements for firearms and ammunition businesses.
I would like to-
I'll second.
I would very much like to second that. Is that all right? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll let you have it.
Thank you.
We'll let you have it.
Can we add, as amended?
Oh, yes. As amended tonight.
The city clerk in me just came out, so sorry.
All good.
Sorry, Meadows City Clerk. Tried to help out.
Good catch. I appreciate that. As amended.
And the second as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing number two. This is the time and place for the hearing on the proposed increases to city fees and charges, water, refuse, sewer, and electric services. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing? Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have.
Thank you. And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
You do.
Has the city received any written communications on this matter? Have they been provided to all city council members?
We have, and they have.
Thank you. All right. During the hearing, please count the number of protests while we proceed with the hearing, and report back the protest tally to the council at the end. And will the representative of the Burbank Water and Power please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Myles Collins. I'm the Energy Services and Utility Rates Manager at Burbank Water and Power. I have a brief presentation for you on behalf of BWP and the Burbank Public Works Department. I will be summarizing the proposed utility rate increases for the next fiscal years. Increases to water, sewer, and refuse service rates are all subject to California Proposition 218. This is a state law that requires that we send mailed notice to all fee payers 45 days in advance of this public hearing, notifying them of the time and place of the hearing, as well as the proposed increases. Staff has met this requirement, and a copy of that notice is attached to the staff report as Attachment 2. I want to note that electric service is not subject to California Prop 218, and there are no special noticing requirements for electric service rate increases. Increases cannot be approved for water, sewer, and refuse services if a majority of fee payers submit written protest. As of 5:00 p.m. today, we had received 24 letters of protest and two letters of support. As detailed in the budget presentations, on May 9th and May 16th, staff is proposing for each of the next two fiscal years, 4% increases for sewer service, 6% increases for refuse service, 9% increases for water service, and for electric, an 8.5% increase in fiscal year 2324, and an 8% increase in 2425. The proposed budget includes a 4% rate increase for sewer service in both fiscal years 2324 and 2425. For single-family residential customers, this would mean a monthly increase of about $1.05 for fiscal year 2324, and $1.09 for 2425. There was a 2% increase for sewer service in fiscal year 2223, and there were no increases for sewer service in fiscal years 2021 and 2122. The proposed increases in sewer charges are needed to provide funding for cost increases from the city of Los Angeles for sewage treatment services, capital improvement projects, and labor, chemical, and electrical costs to operate the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant. The proposed budget includes a 6% rate increase for refuse service in both fiscal years 2324 and 2425. For the average residential customer, this would mean a monthly increase of $2.09 in fiscal year 2324, and $2.22 in 2425. The refuse fund only had one rate increase of 1% in the four fiscal years between 2017 and 2021, a 2% increase in 2122, and a 4% increase in 2223. The refuse collection fee increases are needed to meet rising operational costs, particularly those associated with state mandate SB 1383, related to organics diversion for greenhouse gas reductions, and to continue providing comprehensive refuse services that include household trash disposal, organics composting, recyclable collection and processing, and bulky item pickups. Now, let's take a look at BWP's rates. BWP's increases to water and electric rates are being driven by six key factors. The first factor is under collection, which occurs when our revenues are not high enough to cover the costs to provide service to our residents. On the electric side, we had a 0% rate increase in fiscal year 1718, 0% in 1819, 1% in 1920, and 0% in 2021, because we chose to use our cash reserves to soften the impact to residents instead of increasing rates during the pandemic. But now our reserves are low and need to be raised to acceptable levels to ensure a fiscally sustainable future, respond to emergencies, and maintain our excellent credit rating. The second factor is inflation. The increase in the cost of goods that BWP needs to operate has drastically increased. The cost of transformers and copper coils for water service lines have doubled, the cost of chlorine has tripled, and the cost of other items, such as fiber-optic cable, ductile iron pipe, and water meter boxes, is up between 20 and 79%. The third factor is the price of natural gas and energy. BWP uses natural gas to generate some of the electricity we provide, and the cost of natural gas increased from $3 per million BTU in 2020 to over $11- natural gas increased from $3 per million BTU in 2020 to over $11 per million BTU in 2023. BWP also purchases energy through contracts or on the open market when needed and market energy prices have increased from $48 per megawatt hour in 2020 to $88 per megawatt hour in 2023. The fourth factor is aging infrastructure. 176 miles of pipe out of 276 total miles of pipe on our water system are 100 years old or will turn 100 in the next 20 years. It is prudent to invest in our city's infrastructure to ensure that we continue providing the reliability that our customers expect and deserve. The fifth is regulatory requirements. By 2030, we have to have 60% of our electricity come from renewable sources. The cost of renewables is up two to three times compared to pre-pandemic levels. If we do not achieve the 60%, we risk being subject to $147 billion in fines, which would be equivalent to an 81% rate increase and we would still need to spend the money to get the renewables. The sixth key factor is climate change, which we are witnessing with recent patterns of extreme weather. We've seen a 1 in 100-year drought event followed by a 1 in 100-year heat event followed by a 1 in 100-year atmospheric river event. We now need to prepare for severe weather every single year. The combination of these six factors is driving the need for water and electric rate increases. BWP sets rates to ensure that we are collecting no more than the cost of providing electric and water service. In fact, state law requires that this be the case and that rates are collected equitably among types of customers such that all customers are paying their fair share and certain customers are not subsidizing others. It is best practice for utilities to perform cost of service studies about every five years to determine how much it costs to provide service to different types of customers and to design rates that reflect these costs. This year, BWP conducted cost of service studies for both water and electric. On the water side, the study found that peak demand for water in Burbank is driven by outdoor irrigation and by single-family homes in particular. Meeting peak demand means having larger pipes, water storage tanks and pumps. Larger pipes and tanks are more expensive to build, maintain and replace than smaller pipes and tanks. The proposed rates for the upcoming year reflect the need to account for peaking costs, both in the residential and non-residential rates. Certain rates for the amount of water that customers use will increase and certain monthly fixed charges will increase as well, mainly for larger non-residential customers. For fiscal year 2324, some customers will see their bills increase by more than 9% and some by less than 9%. On the electric side, residential customers account for 40 to 45% of our system's peak usage in the summer as people return to their homes in the late afternoon, turn on their air conditioners, cook, clean, watch TV and use their computers. Because the residential customer class is contributing to a significant portion of the peak, the rates need to reflect the cost of the system need to accommodate that demand and residential customers are not contributing to that cost as much as they should. Residential and small commercial customers will see rates that go up by more than the 8.5 and 8% system average and the larger commercial customers will see rates that go up by less than the system average. This slide shows four illustrative single-family homes using different amounts of water and the impacts to their bills. Customers who use the most amount of water will see their monthly bills increase by a higher percentage for the next fiscal year than those who use less. One note on this slide is that HCF stands for 100 cubic feet and is the unit of measure that customers see on their bills. 1 HCF is about 748 gallons. A small home with drought tolerant landscaping using about 5,200 gallons per month or 7 HCF would see a bill increase of only 48 cents or 1%. About 1/4 of customer bills are for this amount of water or less. A medium home with drought tolerant landscaping using 9,000 gallons a month or 12 HCF would see a bill increase of $6.44 or 10.2%. About half of customer bills in Burbank are above this amount and half are below. An average Burbank home with a lawn and more outdoor watering needs using 11,200 gallons per month or 15 HCF would see a bill increase of $10.86 or 14.6%. A customer with a larger lawn or a pool using 13,500 gallons per month or 18 HCF would see a bill increase of $14.20 or 16.4%. We're accounting for peaking costs for non-residential customers through both the rates for the amount customers use and the monthly fixed charges. We separated multifamily, commercial and irrigation into three separate rates because there are differences in peaking characteristics between these types of customers. This slide shows the bill for the same amount of water use for the three new customer classes. Under the existing rates, the bill for this amount of water is $110.81. A bill for a multifamily customer increases by 6.95 or 6.3%. Note, this is for the whole building and not each individual unit. A bill for a commercial customer increases by $8.47 or 7.6%. And a bill for an irrigation customer which has the most amount of peakiness increases by $21 or 19%. The other way we are recovering peaking costs is through the water availability charge, which is a monthly fixed charge that depends on the size of the meter connection or how big the pipe is that feeds the customer. Virtually all residential customers have, have connection pipes that are 1 inch or less. Commercial, multifamily and irrigation customers have connections of various sizes. The proposed rates are recovering more peaking costs for the larger connections reflecting the ability the customer has to use water at a higher rate through a larger connection. The water availability charge for a 1-inch connection would remain nearly the same. For a 2-inch connection, it would increase from $57 to $63 or 11.5%. For a 3-inch connection, the increase would be 40%. For a 4-inch connection, 52% and for a 6-inch connection, 59%. These updated values reflect the industry standard method for calculating costs for a system with our capacity. It's helpful to see how our water bills compare to those of our peer utilities. This slide shows one of the benchmarks that we use to track bills across our peers. The green bars show the bills of our peers using their current water rates. For a small home using 6,000 gallons, Burbank is the lowest in the region even with the proposed rate increase while maintaining the highest regional reliability. Note that this graph does not incorporate any upcoming rate changes of our peers that they would be proposing during the current year. This slide shows another of our benchmarks for comparing our rates to peers. It shows the bill for a medium home using 12,000 gallons. We showed you on an earlier slide that 12,000 gallons is a little bit above the average bill of 11,220 gallons. The orange bar here is larger. It represents an increase of a little over 15% as there is more water use from Tier 2. Even for this amount of water use, Burbank is still the lowest among our peers. This slide shows estimated electric bill impacts for residential customers for the upcoming fiscal year. If we start in the middle with a green background at the bottom, this shows the average across all residential customers, both multifamily dwellings and single-family homes. The average bill increase is a little under $13, increasing from $101 to $114 or 12.6%. Multifamily customers are represented on the left where apartments and condos use about 350 kilowatt hours per month on average. Their bills would increase by about $8 from $64 per month to $72. If we look on the right to, to a single-family home, the average usage is about 750 kilowatt hours. Under current rates, the bill is about $147 and the estimated increase would be $18.52. Again, one of the things that's helpful to do is to compare our bills and rates with those of our peers. This slide shows bills for average residential customers for both BWP and our peers. We see that Burbank's bill is third from the bottom. Without the proposed increase shown in orange, we would be second from the bottom. With the increase, we would still be below our peers in Los Angeles, Glendale and Pasadena and also below the three investor-owned utilities of SDG&E, SCE and PG&E. Our peers are feeling the same cost pressures we are. For example, from January 2022 through March 2023, SCE raised its rates by 24.2%. Pasadena had a rate increase that went into effect March 1st that represented a bill increase of $14 on an average residential bill compared to our $13. Anaheim had a recent increase in December. Other utilities such as Los Angeles and Riverside have either proposed or are planning to propose rate increases. The City of Colton, which is near Riverside and San Bernardino, in April implemented a rate increase that would raise average residential bills by 55% from $71 to $114. It's nice that our bills are relatively low in the region, but the increases are still difficult. It's important to BWP and to me as rates manager to make sure that our rates are based on sound analysis, but also that we take customer impacts into account as we design and implement them. We urge customers to make full use of our sustainability programs to reduce their usage, including our home improvement program, which offers thousands of dollars in upgrades at no cost to participants. The AC Replace It Before It Breaks program offers up to $3,000 to replace an operating but inefficient air conditioner with a new Energy Star model. We also have a menu of residential and commercial water saving and energy saving rebates that can be layered with the incentives from the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. For any customers in need of financial assistance, we encourage them to reach out to one of our representatives. Representatives are available in person in our lobby from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM and over the phone, they're actually available from 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM at 818-238-3700. Or customers can visit us online at burbankwaterandpower.com/financial-help. This concludes my presentation. Staff from both BWP and the Public Works Department are available to answer any questions you may have upon completion of the public comment section. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. We'll now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. You can fill out a yellow salmon comment card. We are a public hearing still, so you can call in as well. That number is 818-238-3335. My first caller is Anita Katsuni, followed by Martin Macarian. Oh, in person. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, this isn't in person. That's weird. Uh, yes, in person. Anita Katsuni, followed by Martin Macarian. Is Anita still here? Did Anita go home? Says wish to speak. I don't have a support or oppose on this card either, so. All right. Martin Macarian? Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Martin Macarian, representing the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, AGLA, which represents thousands of independent mom and pop rental housing providers across Los Angeles County, including many in the City of Burbank. Honorable Members of the City Council, AGLA opposes the adoption of Agenda Item K8, which will impose increased fees for water, refuse, sewer and electric services. Rental housing owners have lost hundreds of thousands of dollars in lost rents due to statewide and countywide moratoriums that were in place for nearly three years. As these restrictions have only recently been lifted, many of our struggling members are just now starting the recovery process that will take years to complete. Our members provide much-needed affordable rental housing in Burbank and this increase will only make it more difficult for them to continue to stay in business rather than selling out to developers. For the council to come forward with this increase now shows a disregard for the extreme financial suffering that both mom and pop rental housing providers and renters have experienced. Further, such an increase, such an immediate and drastic increase will only result in rents increasing to cover those services that are utilized by renters. Furthermore, Burbank already has the highest trash hauling rate specifically among comparable nearby cities, including Glendale, Pasadena, San Marino and Sierra Madre. While we acknowledge that the inflationary pressures have an impact on utility charges, we urge the City Council to recognize the severe hardships currently being experienced and either delay these increases entirely for at least two years or substantially reduce these increases and face the increases in over, over a period of several years so that independent mom and pop owners and their renters can adjust for these increases in cost. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have Mr. Schlossman and that's my last card.
You know, I wish you'd table this item. I understand costs rise, that's not what this is about, that's not what I'm talking about. The, the Water and Power Department needs to have their house in order and I've attended a number of those meetings over there. Nobody goes. I've never seen any of you there. We had Ms. Kaiser here talking about what a wonderful person she is. I'm talking about Ms. Lindell. Never seen her at a meeting. In my opinion, before you raise our rates, you need to make sure that Ms. Lindell's running a tight, a tight ship over there and I guarantee you, she's not. Her house needs to be in order and it is not in order over there. She's the first one to eat the free food over at the buffet line, the tables she's got set up over there. And all of us, the rate payers are paying for it. That's what they call us, rate payers, not taxpayers, rate payers. She had, Ms. Lindell has out of control overtime over there and we've got employees making over $500,000 a year. Are you hearing me, Mr. Mayor? That's why our rates are so high, because we have out of control overtime and Ms. Lindell refuses to even consider outsourcing to save money. If you look at the highest, if you take 50 employees, the highest paid employees in Burbank, 2/3 of them are in her department. That's why our rates are so high. It's been reported to me that Ms. Lindell was told about an employee of hers that took a tractor home and did work on his house and was not fired. That's the kind of mismanagement we have over there and I'd like her to answer if that claim is true or false. I don't know, I wasn't there, but that's what was reported to me. That employee should be fired. When you attend these meetings, you'll come out with a feeling of entitlement that they have over there. If you do any research into what's going on, I use the open records to look at their credit cards, Ms. Lindell and her top employees or all of her assistants, and looked at what they're doing on, with the company credit card, with the city credit cards. This is why our rates are so high. You have to consider all of these things before you raise our rates. And you're jamming up the apartment owners and you're jamming up the renters. Did you see that? Did you study that chart? Homeowners go down a penny in the cost of their water hookup, which are less than 1 inch. Any apartment building is going to have a water pipe that's greater than 1 inch and they're, some of their connections are doubling. What do you think that's going to do? It's going to pass, they're going to have to pass that on and in the form of rent increases. You can't have it both ways. When you increase the rates, okay, very quickly, when you jammed up, when you approved $160 million in bonds, you guaranteed that our rates are going to go up 50%. That should be factored in. And it's a clear conflict, conflict of interest for you folks to make these kinds of decisions because you're reaching over there and taking money, a percentage of their gross and transferring it to the city. So that's a conflict of interest. Thank you. Drive safe. Thank you.
Uh, that's my last in-person card. We'll now go to the phones. 818-238-3335.
We have one caller on the line, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
The first caller is Jenny Barnett.
Hello, this is Jenny Barnett and thank you Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council and staff. I just have a question. I've been watching most of the meeting tonight and this one just came up. I live at Park Avenue Seniors and my electric bill is, actually, my bill is fairly good because I'm a good user of my electricity, but my electricity is half of my bill. And so I looked at it and I said, okay, I understand electricity, I understand sewer. However, there's a line item called solid waste and I'm paying just about $11 for solid waste. But what I understand at the moment is that our solid waste is not picked up by the City of Burbank anymore, it's picked up by Athens. So I'm just wondering why I'm paying $11 or maybe I don't know what that solid waste explanation or description is. But I was just wondering why I'm paying that when Athens picks it up. And I have to say that I got a great bump in my social security in January and my rent increase totally wiped it out. So I know that the owners of the property have to be paying some of this. I was just wondering about that. Thank you so much for listening, I appreciate your support. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
That was our last caller.
Okay, no more callers. I'll close the public comment section. And will there be a response from staff? Representative Burbank Water and Power? Any further comments?
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Burbank City Council, John Molinar from Public Works regarding the solid waste question. That is regarding the miscellaneous user fee. That was a fee instituted a long time ago and it is basically to cover all of the costs that all residents of the City of Burbank are able to, all of the solid waste services that City of Burbank residents can take all of the solid waste services that City of Burbank residents can take advantage of, such as the recycle center, oil drop-off. Our street sweeping services are also a part of that. And that's pretty much it. It's just all of the other services, all the illegal dumps around the multifamily. They're also a part of that. I did a really great email the other day, and I just can't remember everything that's in it. But anyhow, that's what it covers.
Okay.
Follow-up question. Is that a flat fee, or is it based on the size of the unit? Or is it just every resident gets the same fee?
It is, it is for people, it is for each unit that is in a multifamily complex that has private hauler service.
Okay. Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. No further comments, or?
I can respond to the comment about the multifamily connection sizes. We have about 3,500 multifamily accounts. About two-thirds of them have a one-inch or less. So they would fall in that small green with a one-cent decrease for the next fiscal year. About the other third are between one and a half inches and two inches. And there are about two dozen that are between three inches and six inches.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, just quickly, I pulled up the presentation.
I'm sorry, who are you, sir?
Ken Berkman, Public Works Director. Thank you. A little late. So from the presentation that we did for you a few weeks ago, I pulled up a slide regarding the comparison of our rates for 2023-24. And we are from Pasadena at about $26.50 for monthly single-family residential services, Glendale at $34.70. Then we are next with this increase coming up for 2023-24 at $36.93. And for a comparison to our neighbor, Los Angeles, is at $193.85. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is a public hearing again, so let's start with questions. Is there any questions of staff from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yep.
Can I actually get Ms. Lindell up here? She's still here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Ah, perfect. So, oh, sorry. I should let her do the introduction, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good evening. Don Roth Lindell, Burbank Water and Power.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lindell. So my question was, earlier this year, in anticipation of our budget process, one of the things that I asked for was for Water and Power to do a workup of additional cost savings measures with, at least from my perspective, the hope of reducing the rate increase that would be passing along to ratepayers. Could you speak a little bit to the work that was performed and the findings, and how, if at all, that is going to impact the rates that we are proposing tonight?
Certainly. So we did do a write-up, a white paper, on all of the revenues that come in. And in the course of reviewing that, we did find two additional sources of revenue. So we're grateful that you gave us that assignment. The first is, we will actually be addressed in item nine, eight? Nine tonight, maybe? Ten? Item 10! The winner is item 10 in item 10 tonight, where we have reviewed our fee structure for capacity charges. And that's for anything from 200 amps up to 5 megawatts. And we used to do that and had in place for, I guess, probably decades, a process by which we did that, depending on the square footage of a facility. But what we've discovered is square footage has very little to do with electric usage. For instance, an EV charging station that takes up maybe a foot, a square foot, when it's in use, uses the same amount of electricity as three homes. So it just doesn't relate. So instead, what we needed to do was base it on the actual capacity required to serve that entity. And so we've restructured fees to do that. Had we had that in place five years ago, we would have collected an additional $6 million in revenue over that.
I'm sorry, how much?
Six million, had we had that in place five years ago. So that will be in place going forward, and that offsets. We also discovered in our plan check fees, we were not adequately accounting for and collecting those. And so we will be making a change that we will bring forward in a few months. We have some details to work out. That will also result in about $500,000 additional fees to cover the cost for plan check for development. And so we'll be adding those as well. So those two together would count for about 1%. Would have been an additional 1% that we would have needed to charge if we weren't making those changes.
Okay. The only other question I had, Mr. Mayor, was we often talk about the state-mandated renewable energy targets that we need to meet. We've talked about it before, but it's always a shocking number. If we fail to meet those targets by, what is it, 2040, what is the financial consequence to the city, at least theoretically?
Yeah, actually, even by 2030, if we don't meet the 60% by 2030, which I will gently remind us is only six and a half years away.
And where are we at right now? About 40?
We are at, we were at 38.75 as of the end of December. So we've got a lot of work to do in meeting those renewable targets. And if we fail to hit that, we risk fines of up to $147 million. That would be about an 82% rate increase. And we would also still have to meet the renewable requirement. So we would still be paying the same amount we're requesting and have an 82% rate increase to cover those fines.
Thank you.
Sure.
While you're up there.
Yeah.
Have we received or are we anticipating to receive any funding from the state or federal to help us meet those requirements?
Yes, thanks. Great question. I'm happy to report that, you know, that some of the travel we do, for instance, to Washington, D.C. and to Sacramento, is to help educate legislators on what our needs are and what we intend to do with funds that we would receive. And this year, so far, we've received a little over $1.7 million in grant funding to date. And then we have another $78 million in grant fund requests that we have already submitted. So, you know, whether we get those or not, we don't know. But we are out there, and we are making our case, and we are actively pursuing as much as we can to offset these necessary expenses. So we are hot on that trail.
So would that be in addition to the rate increase that we're going through right now? Or if we, example, you mentioned $78 million. Let's hope that the stars are aligned and they would give us the funding. Would that reduce, actually, maybe next fiscal year, you come back to us and say, hey, we got the funding, and we don't need to increase for our rates?
It would certainly reduce what we would need to ask for over our five-year adjustment. So we are still trying to make up for the reserves that we have, that we are in the hole for. And we've really done a firm budget out over the next two years, so we would probably hold to that. But we could look at that third, fourth, and fifth year. In the third, fourth, and fifth year, we have not included all of the costs yet because we haven't finished our integrated resources plan. So we don't have our firm plan for how we're going to pursue the rest of the renewables between now and 2040. And so, and we're also hopeful, cautiously optimistic, that we will see the rate of inflation in the utility space start to level off and perhaps come back down. You know, folks have mentioned the Consumer Price Index, which has ranged, you know, in that 7% to 9% of inflation. For us, it's been 76% in the utility electric space. So it's been significantly higher than the rate of inflation on other consumer goods. And so we're looking to see if that will level off a bit. And we didn't want to overinflate our outer years. But that, whatever we get, will help to offset and help us to build our reserves back sooner. And we've got to get those reserves back to the recommended ranges. And right now, we will end this year between $16 and $17 million below where our reserves need to be under collected.
And if you can just remind us, please, in regards to the bond that we approved a couple of months ago, with that bond, if we hadn't approved that bond, which part of it is reducing the rates from what they would have been to the 8% that we're looking at, if you can just remind us, please, what would have happened if we didn't approve that bond?
Yeah, so if we didn't approve that bond, we would not be able to take care of the capital program that we had laid out. And that capital program includes modernizing the grid. It includes, and that is something we must do because, as I mentioned, the use of a charging station for an electric vehicle pulls the same load as three homes when it's charging, just the middle size of a charging station, not the fast charger, which is even more. And so we've got to set up the grid so that it can handle that load and handle the building electrification. We also had a fire in Golden State Substation in 2019. We are rebuilding that substation. We are putting in an additional substation called Willow Substation, which again helps with that modernization. We are building four acres of solar plus storage on top of the ritzy. We are partnering with the Burbank Unified School District to look at additional solar plus storage projects. We are partnering with multiple businesses here in Burbank in a beautiful public-private partnership to add solar plus storage on additional rooftops, among other projects. And so we need to do that slate of work, or we risk that $147 million fine. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. And if we didn't take out the bond and tried to do that all, you know, do that same slate of work, you know, spread over maybe three years, it would be $40 million a year, which would be, I probably should do this with a calculator, but it would be, you know, somewhere around a 30% rate increase instead of what we're requesting each year to do that. So it makes much more sense to us to take out essentially a bond, which works just like a mortgage. Instead of buying, you know, spending all the money to buy the house up front, you take out a mortgage, and you pay for it a little bit over the 30 years you're going to use it. Same thing for us with this electric grid capital program. That is going to last us for the next probably 50 years. And so it makes sense to spread it out over that time. And future ratepayers will also be paying their fair share of those projects by taking out this mortgage and paying it off over time.
Thank you. So looking at other cities, and I know you're very involved in speaking with other cities, where do we fall in the advancement of what we're trying to accomplish by 2030 and 2040? Where does Burbank fall in between, like Glendale, Pasadena, Beverly Hills, or cities surrounding us?
Many cities surrounding us, including Glendale and Pasadena, are ahead of us. And they got out ahead of us early in those years where we took 0% rate increases. They were, in fact, making investments in renewables at that point at a much lower cost than we will be making those investments in renewables. Because unfortunately, with the pandemic, we have seen prices skyrocket all the way back to 2010 levels, whereas they had been on a nice downward slope. That is over, and the price of renewables has doubled to tripled in the last three years. So they are ahead of us, and we are meeting the state guidelines and state requirements for annual renewables, but we are just meeting it. And they, you know, they're moving along at a faster clip, and, you know, we need to do our part.
I promise I have one more question.
That's fine.
I want to switch to water. Recycle water. We talked a lot in previous meetings about the use of recycling water. And I know it's not accessible for residential homes right now. Is there any way, and I believe it has something to do with safety because the fear of misuse of the recycling water for other things in the household. Is there any talk about changing those regulations and providing educations, even on the state level, to take those, lift those regulations off so it would allow residential homes to use recycling water? Because I know we're going to use them for new construction. But what about just normal, single-family homes? And I think that would be welcome by lots of residents here in the community that maybe help.
Yeah, I think we probably need to do some additional study around that. The risk is cross-contamination. And so if someone just accidentally connected their recycled water line to their regular water line, it would contaminate the city's supply of water. And we would have to go under a full boil order. And it would take weeks, maybe even months, Mr. Wilson can probably talk to that better than I can, for us to clean, re-clean the whole system because it would impact not just that homeowner's water, it would impact everybody's. And that's the risk. So that's why it takes someone with special training certifications to understand and manage that. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be done. It just would mean we'd need to set up a program requiring that in some way. And I think as we evolve in water, we are going to want to continue to expand that use and make full use of every drop. And I don't know, Mr. Wilson, would you like to comment further?
Good evening. Richard Wilson, Assistant General Manager for Water Systems. Essentially, what Ms. Lindell said is correct. The issue of cross-contamination is the major concern. If we had an incident where we had recycled water get in the potable system, that could present a loss of confidence with our customers that would be hard to overcome. Right now, the use of recycled water is done so by trained personnel who are certified to use recycled water. There's specialized equipment that we use to make sure that there isn't backflow of recycled water into the system. And people who use recycled water and are responsible for the use of recycled water have to be familiar with the use of that equipment and the maintenance of that equipment. And if we're talking about this citywide, the other thing to think about is we have 286 miles of potable water pipe in the city. So you'd be essentially doubling that amount. And do we really want to have 600 miles of pipe throughout the city? It's hard enough to maintain the 286 miles of pipe that we have now. So right now, we have five vacancies in the Maintenance and Construction Division. And that's affecting our ability to do some of our maintenance. So if we just doubled the amount of pipe over time, that would just put more burden on staffing. We'd have to have more equipment. I think money is better well-spent by taking the recycled water that we have and doing indirect potable reuse, where we take that recycled water, and we can put it into the ground, and we can draw that out later for treatment and deliver that as potable water. I think that gives us the biggest bang for the buck.
Thank you both.
Any other questions? Yeah? Councilor Dr. Hodge.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few more questions, too. Thank you for the report. This has been a discussion we've been having for a number of times now, and it's coming to fruition. So my first question is about Slide 6. That said, the purpose of the water-electric cost of service increases is is to ensure that rates are aligned with costs and each customer class pays its fair share. And I remember the last presentation, there was a slot, a couple of slides actually, that showed how much each category pays versus how much it uses. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that and to kind of just review with us a little bit about where we're sitting with that.
Yes, absolutely. Is there the option to use the backup slides? There should be one with them. It's one of the hidden slides. There's a bar chart if you go down.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the question. So this slide here shows an overview of the cost of service study results for electric. So the colors of the bar charts here represent the different customer classes. The top bar shows the portion of the revenue requirement, the budget collected from each class under the current set of rates. We see the residential is there in the dark blue on the left. The second bar from the top shows the portion that would be collected by rates that aligned with the cost to serve each class according to the study in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So the second bar labeled cost of service shows two things. First, it's larger, reflecting the need to increase rates overall over the next two fiscal years. And second, it shows a change in the portions of the customer classes, particularly residential. So as we get to the bottom two bars, it's important to note that one, a key objective in rate design is to avoid rate shock or large sudden bill increases. Fortunately, the laws governing electric rates, which is Prop 26, provide more flexibility than Prop 218, which governs water rates, and allowing us to mitigate the rate shocks while moving more gradually toward the actual cost to serve for each customer class. So instead of going there right in two fiscal years, we have a glide path that allows us to charge, to increase rates by no more than one and a half times the average rate increases of eight and a half and eight percent. So that this plan puts bounds on how fast we would increase the residential and small commercial rates. So under this plan, as I mentioned, the red text indicates the average rate increases. So residential and small commercial customers would see average rate increases of twelve point seven five and twelve percent for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. So medium commercial initially has the increase of ten point two percent. But apart from that, the commercial classes have smaller than the system average increases. So this allows us to comply with Prop 26 by moving towards the cost to serve while not doing it all in one or even two years. We will undertake additional efforts over the next couple of years that could help mitigate the bill impacts for our residential customers. First would be to reanalyze our smart meter data to see if businesses reopening and people returning to work after COVID have changed usage patterns substantially in Burbank. If it turns out that the cost to serve residential customers decreases, then we could adjust our rate plan after the first two fiscal years. We would also plan to introduce time-of-use rates in 2024, which could better align costs with rates. So it would enable customers to shift their usage to save money. So instead of using major appliances at peak times, they could use them in off-peak times and be able to mitigate bill impacts in that sense as well.
Thank you. So to kind of reiterate, currently speaking, can we keep this slide back up just for a second? Thanks. Currently, we're, right now, the residents are, it looks like we're paying about two-thirds of what we actually use. So we, as residents, are being subsidized by some other source to pay for our usage for our electricity, right? And this effort is to move up towards our actual, paying for what we actually use. Because right now, we pay less than what we actually use. Is that correct?
Yes. That cost of service study analyzes usage patterns, both in terms of demand and energy use, and attributes certain costs to that usage. And that is correct.
Okay. I just want to make it really clear to the community that we, we right now pay a really, we pay much lower than we actually use when it comes to residents. So what we're doing with the residence increase is we're not increasing our rates. We are going up to what we actually use rather than increasing rates. Does that make sense? So we're like, our rates that we pay are going up, but we are going more and more towards matching the cost of what we're actually using. Is that, is that accurate description, would you say?
Yes, the cost to serve the residential class is greater than the cost that we, or greater than the revenue that we collect from the residential class.
Okay. So if we, as residents, kept, did not do this increase and we kept it where it is, where would the money come from to pay for our, for our service if we don't do these increases?
The other customer classes it would come from.
Okay. So we're spreading out the increases to be more equitable between the different classes and to match closer to what we actually use. And so that one category is not subsidized in the other category throughout. Does that make, is that right?
That's correct. And we reanalyze the data, general cost of service studies, every five years to see if the patterns have shifted and what adjustments would need to be made.
Great, thank you.
Counsel, if I could.
Ms. Mayor, I move to extend the meeting past eleven PM.
One second.
One favor.
Great. I really, thank you for that clarification because I think that got a little bit confused in some of the understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so, yes, there are definitely cost increases, right, to the entire system. But there is also the fact that residents have been paying a very, very low amount and other sources have subsidized us. And so it's time for us to kind of slowly move back up to that. Legally, not just like ethically, but legally we have to, right? Yeah. So I did some back-of-the-napkin math. And it looks to me like the average residence increase is about seventeen to twenty-three dollars for all the things, all the increases, the water, the electricity, and the trash. Seventeen to twenty-three dollars a month, average, for a resident, which turns to be about two hundred to two hundred seventy-six dollars a year. Would you say that's back-of-the-napkin math? Does that sound about right?
That sounds like a reasonable estimate.
Okay. So seven, we're looking at a seventeen to twenty-three dollars a month increase, average. The lower energy you use and the lower water you use, it'll be less. An average of two hundred dollars to two hundred seventy-six dollars a year. Okay. And we received several emails. This actually may be a Ms. Lindell question. We received several emails from seniors on fixed income and others who said that this seventeen dollars a month or this twenty-three dollars a month increase would be a hardship for them. And there is a slide here for financial assistance, but for folks who were two hundred to two hundred fifty dollars a year is a hardship. What, why do we have to help those folks with that two hundred fifty dollars a year average?
Good evening. I'm Drew Johnstone, Acting Assistant General Manager for Sustainability Marketing and Strategy. Thank you for your question about the assistance programs. Our motto is always there for you, and that's exemplified with some of our financial assistance programs. For seniors or those with a disabled person in their household that meet the income requirements, a family of four, I think the income requirement's about fifty-nine thousand dollars for the household, they qualify for a lifeline rate. That's a forty percent discount on the bill. So that could be either from like two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty dollars per year. So that would kind of offset some of those rate increases. We also have the BUS program, which stands for Burbank Utility Service Subsidy. And that's a twelve percent discount on customers' bills. That is for moderate income. I think a household of four is about ninety-six thousand dollars a year income threshold. We also have our life support rate for customers with in-home life support equipment. That's a seven percent discount on the utility users' tax. And then we also have programs for customers with any income threshold if they want to take advantage of our rebate programs for energy efficiency. We also have payment arrangement programs for customers with all income levels. So those are just a sample of our programs. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And for folks who may not qualify for those income levels, isn't there a program where BWP will come in and do an inspection to see where there are potential areas to reduce resource use?
Sure is. It's called our Home Improvement Program. So it's no cost to customers. A professional will come and do an energy audit to identify efficiency opportunities. And they'll install measures at no cost, including LED light bulbs, ceiling fans, even attic insulation, as well as Energy Star window AC units for apartment dwellers. And we have a similar program for small businesses called Business Bucks. Similar program for energy audit and upgrades up to five thousand dollars per business.
Great. I'm glad you brought up businesses because my next question was going to be, the couple of small businesses are concerned about the increase. Do we have any other programs for small businesses to help out, similar to like the BUS program? Anything like that? Or?
We don't have a BUS program for businesses, but businesses can take advantage of our payment arrangement program.
Okay.
And landlords of multifamily units can take advantage of our Home Improvement Program to upgrade their tenants' units or the common area.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up that because that's going to be my next question about if a tenant is having challenges with the, with the increase, but they don't meet the income level, can they request an audit for the building? Or does it have to be the landlord to do it? Or, because if they, because they're the ones who are directly impacted by the?
Yeah, the tenant can request it, but needs the landlord's permission to make any upgrades.
Okay. All right. That's a little complicated because unfortunately they're.
I have a follow-up question to that. As a tenant, what could I do? Or do we have any resources on how I can have that conversation with my landlord?
That's a great question.
I don't think we have anything published right now, but that's certainly something that we could look into is an introductory letter or an email that you could send to your landlord introducing Burbank Water Empower's programs to them.
That would be really great because I feel like the assumption, and even in talking to my landlord, is that a lot of these programs are for homeowners, right? So it'd be great to have some mechanism to introduce this that is centered at both, you know, building owners saying, hey, this program's available to you. And also tenants, if you want to introduce this to your building owner, this is how, here's how you make the connection. So, thank you.
That's something we can definitely do, council member.
And there are some internal changes that a tenant could do, like changing their light bulbs and changing the faucet, the faucet.
The shower head.
Yeah.
Big change.
Baby change, yeah. But there are some minor, at least some minor changes that can make a difference, right?
Absolutely. Those are, yeah. Why would a landlord say no to that? I mean, it's easy things you can do like light bulbs, aerators, exactly. But for things like ceiling fans or ACs, that's where landlord would come in.
But like the refrigerator program.
Refrigerator exchange program is available.
Okay. So there are some things that the tenant could do on their own.
The refrigerator exchange does need landlord permission. They just need to sign something that's saying that they'll keep the fridge for at least three years.
Okay. Got it. Okay. So one of the callers.
Actually, can I follow up on that? What about landlords that don't provide the fridge? There's a lot of apartments where you bring your own fridge.
Okay. Our refrigerator exchange, you have to be exchanging an old, inefficient refrigerator that's ten years old.
Sure.
Or older. So if there is no refrigerator to exchange, it wouldn't qualify for a program.
Oh, no, I'm saying, if you're an apartment owner and you have an old fridge and it's your fridge that you brought with you, would that count?
Yeah, if it's in, is it in the unit?
Yeah, it's in the unit, yeah. Okay. So, all right. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just clear.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Yeah. Yeah. And then one of the callers said that her entire bill for all the things that we're talking about was four hundred fifty dollars last month. I was wondering, this is an example where she could probably call into BWP and find out how she can reduce her, reduce her bills on this. Because it seems like, that seems pretty high, looking at the numbers that we've got here. So I'm wondering if there's like a lawn or a pool or something like that going on.
I noticed that she mentioned it was for all her utilities.
Okay.
That's probably including gas.
Ah, right. Okay.
So.
Right, which is out of our hands. Yeah. Okay.
So I would say that. But yes, she could certainly call in and we would be happy to do the Home Improvement Program with her.
Awesome. And can a customer call in and say, hey, this is my bill. Could you take a look and let me know like what my increase might be? You know, I don't know about the budget and, or can they get that one-on-one attention to be able to, they're worried about what it's going to be in the future or how it's going to change? And I ask this kind of rhetorically because I know the answer, but.
They can definitely call in. And for those who would prefer to have a non-human-to-human interaction and just figure it out, we have a new tool that I believe, that I believe is in place either today or tomorrow.
Oh, that's cool.
Oh, that will be launched tomorrow that is a calculator. So people can just go onto our website and they can plug in their usage and it'll tell them what their bill will now be.
No, no back-of-the-napkin. Is that what you're doing?
No, we don't have to use backs-of-the-napkins anymore. We can say paper, too.
Great. Oh, well, this is great. All right. One final question. I'm sorry. That was a whole, like, it was actually one large question in small, small information. So, you know, whenever I look at our comparisons to other cities and I see how low, this has been this way for years, how low our electric is, how low our water is and other things, how is it that we are able to keep our rates so low compared? Even now, with these increases, it's still so much lower than the other cities. I mean, what are we doing right to be able to keep them that low?
Sure. So I think the revenue offsets. When we have, we hedge on our energy so that, or we hedge to ninety percent before we enter the fiscal year. And that enables us to buy, you know, just like you do investing with dollar-cost averaging and kind of keep on buying through the year or investing through the year. We do the same thing with buying gas and buying megawatts of energy that we can use so that when we hit a peak, we have some in reserve that we can pull in. Now, it may not be enough to cover the whole peak and we may have to buy. But, but we also have that when other parts of the region need energy and we don't. You know, we may have a cooler day here and it may be hotter farther south. And they may be having a peak and they need to buy energy. We can sell into that market. And so we do that. So we have revenue offsets for those. We have our One Burbank program, which takes advantage of the fiber that we had to lay in order to manage our system. And that allows businesses to have high-speed internet at a very reasonable price. And it allows us to offset electric costs for that. We manage water very creatively. Mr. Wilson mentioned, you know, we buy water, again, as early as we can because we know that's the lowest price we're ever going to see on water because those prices just keep going up. And we spread that water and then we're able to pull it in and use it at a lower cost. The, you know, the plume that is a superfund site that's below the city is, you know, a curse and a blessing for us because Lockheed Martin pays to clean that water. And because they pay to clean that water and we blend the clean water back in, that also allows for lower water rates. And we manage expenses very, very closely. I realize not all citizens agree with that. We were able to identify twenty-seven million dollars in revenue offsets and additional savings this year. And I commend the staff because they look for savings, big and small, consistently. And they deliver on that consistently. They take that mission to serve very, very seriously.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. Great. Any other questions of staff? Yeah?
I just want to say, I think we're on like the same wavelength because I've been crossing out my questions that you've been asking.
We should take turns going first.
Thank you for that. No, thank you, by all means. Of the ones that Councilmember Takahashi didn't mention, I have a question and it gets a little in the weeds here. On page four of the staff report, it mentions that BWP chose a rate design strategy in working with, I think it's Raftelis? Raftelis is my?
Raftelis, yep.
Yeah. That aligns costs with rates and lowers the residential, single-family tier threshold, blah, 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 all of that, right? What would it look like if we hadn't chosen that strategy?
Well, we would not be in compliance with Prop 26 and Prop 218. So each of those laws requires that each rate class cover the costs that it makes the utility incur. And so we have to do that five-year assessment. We have to rearrange how we do our rates in order to meet the law. And so, you know, we, we would not be in compliance. And, you know, I personally couldn't live working for. I personally couldn't live working for a utility that's not going to meet the law because I'm just not made that way. We want to be transparent and we want to meet all the regulations.
Thank you for that. I think it's really important to highlight that we, you know, not only is this fair, as council member Takahashi pointed out, it's also in compliance with the law. And then on page five, the staff report mentions that commercial multifamily units will no longer have seasonality in the rates. I'm sorry if I missed this, but do the single-family homes still have the seasonality in the rates?
I'll let Mr. Collins address that.
Thank you for the question. The single-family homes did not have seasonality in the rates before and they will continue to not have seasonality. So the seasonality was only in the commercial multifamily, this is the non-residential rates and that's what we removed.
Great, thank you. So it's making it even better, right?
It simplifies bills and it doesn't change by season. That's right.
Great, thank you. And I am going to now answer, and I think this will go towards Ms. Lindell, the question that was in the same email that we got from a constituent who asked that we go through all of them. The last question they had was, please share any salary increases given to executives? And I'll further with that question. Would not increasing any salaries make a dent or any difference in the need to increase rates?
The executives at this point have not received increases this year. And even if we did, it wouldn't be anywhere near the amount that would change the rate increases. You know, interestingly enough, in this business, unlike many businesses, in fact, unlike most other parts of the city, we, if we include our capital program, salaries count for 12% of our total budget. If we add benefits in, again, looking at our capital program, salaries plus benefits account for 18%. In most organizations, salaries are 70 or 80%, but that's not the case for us. We have 18% invested in the people who make the other 82% happen. And so it's just salaries in total just aren't a huge part of the cost of a utility. It's the pipes, it's the wires, it's the substations, it's the gas, the cost of the natural gas and fuel sources that those things are what drive those costs.
Thank you for that, all my questions.
And let's not forget the state regulations that just put on us.
Yes, those drive us by more of that stuff, yes, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I got two very quick ones and then we can go into discussion. Ms. Lindell, I don't think I have any for you actually, so we're good. Can I get Mr. Mollinar up here? I wanted to ask very quickly about sewer and refuse rate increases. Do you want him to reintroduce himself, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, John Mollinar from Public Works.
Mr. Mollinar, I just wanted to ask you. Earlier this year, you heard me mention that I asked Water Empower to look at cost savings measures and maybe new opportunities for revenue generation. Is that something that your department has done? And if not, is it something you would be amenable to if given direction by the council?
I would say we are always looking for efficiencies and we're always looking for new creative ways to generate revenue that doesn't affect our ratepayers.
I think I see Mr. Berkman lurking there.
No, it's a good answer and Ken Berkman, Public Works Director. You know, I would start to point out the fact that I've been here three years and it's been about the past five years that both the refuse fund under Mr. Mollinar's leadership and the sewer fund under Mr. Walker's leadership, another assistant director who's in the back, we've had minimal increases and we're talking about three years of zero and a year of 1%, a year of 2%. And that in itself really speaks to the sharp focus that everybody has to make sure we're maximizing our efficiencies, to make sure all of our materials and suppliers and capital projects are done to the best of our abilities in a cost-effective manner through our purchasing department and working with other departments. And it would not respectfully be needed to have a direction because it's something we do all the time. And I think that's why we're in the situation we're in here today and to follow up the comments that have been expressed tonight, design and construction, operation, maintenance of a landfill and a recycle center, a solid waste collection company. You know, it's a great benefit to the city of Burbank to have control of that as opposed to pay for fees to have others do that and send things for processing elsewhere. And from the refuse, from the sewer standpoint, we have our own water reclamation plant. Those are all reg, highly regulated, highly permits that have a multitude of regulatory requirements we have to deal with. And for the sewer, for example, we also have to pay our share with about 19 other cities in the amalgamated contract that send our sewers to the city of LA for Hyperion. So we work with them as well and are very, very strongly, strong defenders of our sewage flows and strengths that they use to basically give us our bill every year. So I hope that gives a little overview for assistance to council.
It does. Thank you both, gentlemen. You answered my question. My last question is for Mr. John Stone. I think he's still here. I think it'll be a quick and easy one. I would like to know if you have the data available, that'd be great. If not, maybe we could get it after tonight's meeting. But I'm curious how many Water Empower ratepayers come to the utility seeking financial assistance and don't qualify for any assistance programs and are turned away? It may be a large number, it may be a small number, but I think that's really critical.
I don't think we have that data for how many get turned away. We have data on participation for our programs, but...
Is it tracked in any manner that you're aware of? If somebody says, I would love to take advantage of the Lifeline program, oops, I don't qualify, is that noted, tracked in somewhere?
Sean Kino, our Assistant General Manager of Customer Services, yes, we can start tracking that data or get it.
It's probably beyond the scope of tonight's agenda item, but I would like that data because I think that could be a very fruitful discussion. So if we could get that tomorrow or this week, just in due course, that'd be great. Thank you for the Water Empower team.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, I only have one question. I'm going to put Mr. Collins on the spot here. What is a written protest under Prop 218 and how many do we need?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. The written protest would be an email or a written letter protesting or opposing the rate increases. So for water service, we have about 27,000 customers and so for, to meet the threshold, it would be about 13,501. I think on the refuse and sewer side, there are more customers. There's about 53,000 and so it would be in the 26,501.
All right, and would a pink salmon card for the public hearing be considered a written protest if they write a pose on it?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, thank you very much. So before we close the public hearing, Madam City Clerk, have you been counting all of the written protests that we've gotten? Email, letters, salmon cards?
Yes, and my number differs slightly from staff.
Hold on, real quick, I had a bird in my ear. Do ecomments also considered through our website? Yes?
But we need to verify that they're actual customers, residents, addresses? What's the criteria? It's not just any, it's not just any salmon card.
Well, sure.
Or ecomment.
Okay, but ecomments, emails, written letters, salmon cards, all sent in and verified that they are ratepayers or refuse users, that's what we were considering, yes?
Correct.
Okay.
A statement of opposition to the rate increase.
Great, perfect. Thank you so much. How many have we counted up total?
So including the two speakers who submitted salmon cards today, we had 27 opposing, two supporting and five who just weighed in on the matter and gave their opinion.
All right, and that is more or less than the 12,000 that we needed?
Quite a bit less.
Okay, thank you. And seeing, no, hey, man, I need the city clerk to weigh in. All right. Last call for salmon cards. Anybody here? Okay. Seeing no one coming forward, I now declare the public hearing closed and the council will deliberate. So obviously, we would need a majority of the ratepayers storming the castle to prevent us from moving this forward at all. I do want to say, I find it very interesting that AGLA was here, the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, asking for the government to have a price cap. Weird, because the last time they were here, they told me the free market works and we shouldn't cap any prices. So that was odd. But does anybody want to start the discussion on the rates and the increases? Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'm going to be very brief. Really want to hear what my new colleagues have to say, but I'll just say, we're here year after year, it seems. I am going to support the proposed increases. However, I understand it is more equitable. I think that's a very good observation. But it's never lost on me that it's still a hardship for a lot of people. And I think back to being a kid raised by a single mom and like when we saw that increase in the gas bill. Look, my family can stomach these increases and we're going to be taking the increases just like all of you here and watching tonight, but it still is going to hurt some people more than others. So I'm going to support it and I will bring it up at the end of the meeting, but I am going to say it now because I do think it's germane to my thought process and why I'm supporting it. We're approving two-year increase, I believe. So, you know, projected for the next two years, so we won't revisit this until 2025. Because it's a little bit less work on staff next year, I was a little surprised that Water Empower wasn't a little bit more on the ball with the initiative to look at the cost savings measures before I brought it up. So my expectation of staff is in next year's budget process when we get those white paper memos. I would really like to see over the course of the next year, every department that's related to this rate increase tonight, is there something that we could do to generate revenue or save costs that could bring these rates down or ease the next proposed rate increase? And if the answer is no, we're doing everything possible to Mr. Berkman's point, I can accept that. But I think we can definitely take the next year and look at that. And separately, I will also vote contingent on the fact that I do think the million-dollar question that I can't answer tonight is, are our relief programs for ratepayers, while very good, are they really capturing everybody who needs assistance? I'm going to guess that they don't. There might be some work there. But rather than speculate tonight, I'm going to wait for that data. So I saw Mr. Kino over there. I'm going to be waiting for it tomorrow, hopefully, but certainly this week because, anyway. With that, I've said enough.
Very well put, Mr. Vice Mayor. And I just want to say, I know rate hikes are something that's hard to swallow for all of us. Don't want to dwell on history, but as Ms. Lindell said a little earlier, this is also the consequence of not continuously doing this as some of our neighboring cities have and now we're paying the brunt. And I think we have a Water Empower Department that can learn from the past and can move forward in a much more equitable and efficient way. But I know, you know, each one of us sitting here on the dais is a BWP customer that will be impacted in different ways and at different tiers, but impacted nonetheless. So we're being very thoughtful in what's going to affect us as well. And I know we wouldn't do it unless it was absolutely necessary. And from what we've seen in the reports, a move that is fiscally responsible and legally compliant with the tier system. I just agree in hoping that we do this while also thinking about our next cost of impact study now, because I know the last one took a little longer, and also factoring in the pandemic, that our next cost of impact study is going to be different. The numbers, hopefully, I hope, will be different. And that we want to prevent further financial issues for our locally-owned utility. You know, at the end of the day, we are also, and I know I didn't ask today, but we have some of the best reliability in the area. We have an amazing utility and we all benefit from that. Not to rag on our neighbors to the left, but, or to the right, but a loss of power here for three minutes is news. If you lose your power here in the city of Burbank for more than three minutes, it is news. You are reaching out, it's on Twitter, while some of our neighbors experience hours, if not days, of power outages. And I think we are right now sitting at making a very difficult decision that's going to impact all of us living here, but we're doing it to keep the lights on at the end of the day. And this is going to keep the lights on. So it's a hard decision, but one that I think will keep the lights on, keep the water flowing for our residents and that is our responsibility to take care of our current residents, our future residents and the reliability of our city, so.
Not in my house. After this, I'm turning all the lights off all the time, so.
And to be clear, you're ragging on city of LA, right?
Well, when it comes to reliability, I'm ragging on everybody else.
Any other discussion?
No, just echo what everyone said and I do agree with Councilmember Perez. This is something that I am very pleased with, obviously, Water Empower and their delivery of service, their response time. We are very fortunate in Burbank and the price obviously has to be paid to keep our infrastructure. This is what we're trying to do, is to continue that service that we expect from our Water Empower and then also provide the future service that's being demanded on us. It's never an easy solution to sit up here and say, yes, let's go ahead and increase the rates. It is difficult. We've seen a lot of emails, we've heard from a lot of people who will be impacted, our seniors, our low-income housing individuals. Even if you don't qualify in this category, it's just in general, it's not fun having to pay additional costs for service. We all went through it with the gas company. Not that we're even going to be nearly close to what the gas company charged, but I think we all felt the pain. And we, none of us here really are doing this feeling comfortable or happy to do it. I think we're all painfully having to do it, but we know we must do this in order for us to continue providing service in the future and to continue building our infrastructure and to be the Burbank Water Empower that we are today to continue that in the future. So I just urge people to contact, if they're in need of financial assistance, to contact Water Empower. I also urge staff to keep sending the word out there, post it on social media. Let them know if they need any assistance to contact you. And with the Vice Mayor's comment early, I know there is other categories that are not included in the financial assistance and that's something we need to explore in the future. I think it's definitely something worthwhile of discussion if we need to include other categories that may be not included, you know, in our current plans. And that is something we can visit in the near future once we find out how many people actually been turned down and they cannot qualify for our assistance. Of course, you know, with that, I do have to support the recommendation, but regretfully, I have to say that we really don't have a choice. So thank you.
Any further?
Thank you. Yep, thank you for all your comments. I appreciate what you've been saying. I think they're all really important points. And I want to also just kind of reiterate the importance of doing our part. Doing our part is individuals in our city, doing our part as a city to make sure that we are complying with the state law but also reducing our resource use by moving more towards sustainability. I have to admit that when I saw that data to see that we are, that I as a homeowner am paying 75% or less even, I think, than what I use, I have to, I felt that was like, that was just wrong. Like, we should be paying what we use. Because the first thought I had was, who's paying for the rest of it? Who's going to, who's going to put that money in for my power? Somebody has to, right? So I think that what's really important for me, anyway, is that we have equitable cost analysis and equitable spread through the city that we make sure that everybody's impacted in the way that they are using the services while at the same time being cognizant and very much supportive of folks who, this is a very negative impact on their, just being able to put food on their table. So this is super important. That's why I was so asking about the different programs. It's so important to me that we have these programs, that they are out there, that their people know about them, that we don't wait until somebody can't pay their bill before we start to outreach them. And then actually, on the, to be piggyback a little bit on what the Vice Mayor said about the potential g... the potential gap between the programs we have and the needs, I'm wondering if we might be able to look at extending the bus program to be a little bit higher income level after we look at the data. Maybe that might be a useful thing to consider, to use our programs we already have, but make them a little bit more accessible. We also, as a city, I mean, we enjoy very, very low rates compared to other cities. And I, you know, I think we forget that sometimes, how much we enjoy that, as well as our efficiency and not having power go out. But like Councilmember Mullins says, if you have any needs, please, please reach out. I have to say, when we did our tour of the BWP Customer Service Center, I mean, it is very much one-on-one attention, so if you need anything, they are there for you. And lastly, I think this is not only important to be equitable, but I think it's really a sign and a signal that we all have to do our part in reducing our use, and that if this is the motivation that we have individually to reduce our water use, to reduce our electrical use, to reduce our waste, then that I think that's a good side effect. And the people who are going to be impacted the most are the ones who have the highest use. So if folks are using a lot of extra water or a lot of extra energy, then they will be impacted the most, and so hopefully that will be some sort of an incentive to reduce our use. So I'm hoping that might come out of the wash as a side effect. But I'm still concerned about the renters because they don't have control over their space, and that makes me concerned that they're kind of forced into an increase that maybe they can't, some of them can't have an impact on, so I'm definitely still interested in that direction. But overall, I definitely support this increase and keeping a close eye on it to make sure that we're moving more and more towards equity, but also protecting our residents. Thank you.
All right. I will take a motion.
I'll be the bad guy.
All right. I move to adopt a resolution of the Burbank City Council approving increases to city fees and charges for water, refuse, sewer, and electric services.
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Schultz, second by Tagashi. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Regrettably, yes.
Councilmember Tagashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Regrettably, yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two reports to council. Let's see how fast we can get through them. All right. First report. Adoption of a resolution amending permit parking hours on South Reese Place. Mr. Chris Bonomo, Senior Transportation Planner, Community Development Department. Please present the report. Okay. Away we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is, my name is Chris Bonomo. I am a Senior Transportation Planner in the Community Development Department, and tonight I will speak on the adoption of a resolution to amend the parking enforcement hours on South Reese Place. On August 23rd, 2022, council approved Phase 1 of the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Plan, which was three measures. One, temporary closure of South Orchard Drive. Two, speed humps on South Reese Place. And finally, permit parking restrictions on both of those streets. Enforcement started in mid-October for permit parking, and businesses along Olive, near each of those streets, received parking permits, so that they would be able to park a limited number of employees on the neighborhood streets. Looking at the data from Parking Council over the last year, you can compare from before and after parking enforcement began. There's been a decrease in on-street parking utilization after the implementation of the parking program. Specifically looking at Reese, parking utilization is below what was observed in August, when Raising Canes was open, but before any of those measures were in place. Now, parking utilization is similar to what it was before Raising Canes was open. Yet, there are some concerns that remain. Tallyrand management has communicated their difficulty in accommodating spaces for both their employees and their customers along the commercial spaces at the north end of Reese and Olive, as well as in their lots. Also, management has communicated that the number of permits they received is not sufficient to accommodate their employees. The neighbors as well have continued to voice concerns about parking in the area, even if fewer cars are observed there. Currently, neighbors have observed that the patrons who do still park there on the streets tend to loiter and oftentimes leave litter. And this especially happens in the evening hours. One of the most consistent concerns that staff has heard is that there's not enough enforcement for those non-permitted vehicles that are stopped or parked along those streets. In conversations with Tallyrand management, there was a solution proposed to amend the hours of parking enforcement, starting at 2:00 p.m. instead of 8:00 a.m. Enforcement would still end at 10:00 p.m. This allows employees and patrons for Tallyrand's morning shift from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. More parking flexibility, especially during weekday breakfast and weekend brunch hours. Evening shift employees would still utilize parking permits that had already been distributed, and patrons would utilize the lot and the two-hour parking spaces at the north end of the block. Staff met with neighbors in Tallyrand, reviewed the parking data, and recommends that this change be made. And this change is made possible due to the recently approved contract for parking enforcement. The program can now more effectively enforce permit parking and do so later into the evening than was able to be done before. And the evening hours, as communicated by the neighbors, are the main hours of concern. And average hourly sales data provided from Raising Canes show that the 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. window accounts for 71% of daily business, both on the weekends and during weekdays. As mentioned previously, most of the concern revolves around the evening rush, dinner rush hours, and all of those hours will be within the window of the amended permit hours. In conclusion, staff recommends adopting the change in parking enforcement hours, as it balances the needs communicated by neighbors and Tallyrand, and it aligns the enhanced enforcement that is in the process of ramping up. With that, I thank you for your patience and welcome your questions or comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bonomo. Madam City Clerk, any public comment cards?
No speak, no.
Okay. No public comment. Mr. Bonomo, I wanted to ask you a question. Karen Ross was here earlier. She mentioned that by 2:00 o'clock, most of her business is done. What are the hours of Tallyrand?
The hours, so there are two shifts. There is 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., then a two-hour break, and then they reopen at 4:00 p.m. for dinner, and I believe it's 4:00 p.m. to either 9:00 or 10:00 p.m.
Okay. And they're much busier during the day?
Yes. That's been what's been communicated to us from Karen.
Okay. All right. Great. Any other questions?
I'm completely fine with this report. Obviously, the owner came in today, expressed, and we also heard by emails that this is something that staff and the community agreed on, and she's happy with the hours. We do need to support her, and I know probably all in agreement on that. So I think it's a good thing that you worked out with the residents on that street and with the business, so trying to help them out. And happy to make a motion to move it forward. Yes, okay. Let's do that. I make a motion to adopt a resolution of the Council of the City of Burbank amending permit parking hours on South Reese Place.
I'll second.
There we go.
All right. Moved by Mullins, second by Perez?
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was a record. What are you doing here, Mr. Chris? Thank you, Mr. Bonomo. I appreciate it. All right. Next is the adoption of a resolution, adopting the updated rules and regulations governing utility service. Mr. Riyad Sleeman, Assistant General Manager of the Electric Services Division in Burbank Water &amp; Power, please present the report. I'm sorry, everybody else from your team got to go home. You're here late.
All good. All good. Good evening, councilmembers. Riyad Sleeman, Assistant General Manager of Electric Services. Can we get the slides, please? And so typically, we, when we update the rules and regs, we usually have them as a consent item. However, this year we have a major change, and so we thought it would warrant a quick presentation. And so, not to oversimplify what a electrical distribution system is, but that's a station there, and you got a couple of houses, maybe a business. And so, you know, they're happily getting energized and being fed power from that, and we're all happy. However, you have new businesses coming in, new small housing and multi-unit developments, they also need power, so we need to extend distribution out to them. And so obviously, enough power is needed that that station is overloaded. And so when it is, then you need to build a new station. So the question is, who's going to pay for that station? Well, currently, and has been for decades, that new stations being paid for by new development. And so the existing residents that already have the power and have paid for it for years don't really get to get charged that new cost. And so how we've collected that money is through a square foot charge. Doesn't really equate, really. It's an older method of doing that, but it's 48 cents per square foot. And so when you look at that as a big pie chart, the 48 cents really covers maybe 5% to 10% of your actual cost, even though the usage is far more than that. And so the rest is really paid for by the ratepayers. And so recently, we've had large developments above 5 megawatts start paying into these as opposed to having their own station and having a maintenance required for that. That's its own cost. We've had large developments have the option to pay into these and pay their fair share of that station. And so that's worked out well, but again, we need to fix that off-site charge, which is the point of this change that we're proposing today. And so in practice, what that means is you have several different kinds of projects, tenant improvements, meaning someone moves into a unit and they demo what's inside, and they rebuild it for a different use or upgrade it. And so the last five years, 2017 to 2022, we've had about 762 KVA demand increase based on tenant improvement projects, and they weren't really charging anything, zero. Why? Because they're not really increasing their square foot. We can't really charge them what they've already paid for, you know, assumingly years ago. And so they pay zero. Under the new capacity charge that we're proposing today, they would have paid $381,000. Another kind of project is EV charging developments. In the last five years, we've had about 5.6 megawatts of demand increase, and they've paid zero. Why? Because, well, their parking spot, it's not a leaseable square foot, so they, we can't really impose that on them. And so if this was in place in the last five years, we would have collected $2.8 million. The third type of project would be medium and small developments. That's anything below 5 megawatts. They have added about 5.6 megawatts to the demand, and they've only paid $287,000. Why? Because, well, 48 cents per square foot is relatively small and hasn't been updated in years. And so if that charge was in place, we would have collected $2.8 million. So in total, all this development added 12 megawatts of demand on our grid. We had to build that station years ago to do that. They've only paid $287,000 in total. We could have collected $6 million. And so really what we're going from is the existing system, which is a per-square-foot charge, which is not a good representation of what the demand is. It doesn't really, it depends on the technology that's in there, which isn't really covered by square feet, and only captures about 5% to 10% of the actual cost of the capacity. There's no difference between residential, commercial, which isn't true. That's, commercial is much higher capacity, and it doesn't address EV services. Whereas a proposed capacity charge is great representation because it's your meter panel. That's really what tells you what your demand is. Capture full cost of the capacity, again, based on residential, commercial, and it applies to all new and upgraded panels. And what that means is if you're adding, you're needing more capacity, you're going to pay for it. Whereas you're existing, if you're upgrading and you already have a panel, we would subtract that demand from you, so you're not paying twice for that demand. You're getting credit for what you already have or have paid for in the past. And this, there is an exclusion for single-family residential upgrades up to 200 amps, because 200 amps is really, as a single-family home, is what you need for building an actification, EVs, anything a typical home would have. And so this is what the charge would look like on panels. I won't read all of those. Those are, those have been in the packets. It's relatively modest. This is for residential and multi-units. And again, this is for upgrades above 200 amps. 200 amp panel is your typical panel that you would have. And this is what it would look like for commercial. And these, some of the other updates that were done as part of the rules and regs is requirements around clearance and objective standards, which impact SB 35 and SB 9 projects. Want to make sure that we're able to apply those across them, and they would pay for their fair share as well. We clarified the property owner's responsibility for vegetation management on their property, as well as clearing up substation requirements for developments above 5 megawatts. And that concludes my presentation. Ready for any questions?
All right. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment cards?
No, we do not.
Okay. I have a question. We've been doing square foot for a long time. Is that because before, everybody owned a smart device and everything was electronic? Lighting a space, heating a space, cooling a space was usually easily judged by square footage, and that was just the standard?
Quite frankly, it's, I've been in the department for 18 years. I've never been able to get an answer to that. It's been that complicated. You know, it's something that was probably put in the 80s, and nobody's really revisited it.
Okay. All right. Okay, then, I mean, I'm okay going to this new version.
It makes sense, because we lost, looks like $5 million. We could have put that and would have helped us. $6 million, thank you. 5.89.
I'm kind of upset that you put that in there, because now I'm just mad we don't have it.
That doesn't make me feel really happy that we could have had that money, and we don't, so.
Your being upset echoes a lot of internal staff's feelings as well.
So there's, it's really no-brainer for me. Thank you.
My quick question is about, you mentioned that single-family residential upgrade up to 200 amps is exempt. So I don't know what 200 amps is. Is that a lot for residential, single family?
It's, yes, it's a decent amount. Most of the homes that we've, that I've come across in Burbank has been 100 amps usually, like in the 1970s, 80s, you get 100 amp panels. Recently, if you're going to have an EV, if you have a washer and dryer and an AC, which is typical, right? You'll need a 200 amp panel.
And a pool? Like with the pool pump?
Oh, definitely, because of the pool pump, yeah.
I mean, 100 amps, if you have the air conditioning running, you plug in a hairdryer, you're going to blow a fuse.
Yeah. But going above 200 is rare, though, for...
Yeah, it's not. Unless you're going to go in and have, you know, the latest kind of Level 2 charging for your F-150 or your Tesla Model, you know, S or X, that's probably where you need a 300.
Oh, yeah. You know me so well.
And what about ADUs? Are they separate, considered part of that, single-family?
No, the exemption, no, they aren't. The exemption, if the ADU comes off of the main house panel, which is 200 amps, then yeah, they wouldn't have to. But if you have to upgrade your panel or add a brand-new panel, that's above 200 amps, or a brand-new panel, regardless of what size it is, then that would pay. Because essentially, you're going up above the amount of density in that lot.
Got it. Okay. Great. Okay, great, thanks. That was my quick question.
So only upgrading a 100 to a 200, that's the only exception?
Anything to, up to 200 would be free.
Okay, okay, great. Ready?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the Council of the City of Burbank, adopting the updated rules and regulations governing utility service.
Second.
All right. Moved by Perez.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Hmm, yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
You did say yes.
I was hoping for seven.
All right. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Report on committee assignments. I was not able to make it to Infrastructure Oversight Board, but I did go to the Southern California Association of Governments Transportation Committee, followed by the Regional Council meeting, some good updates, moving through SCAG. I also attended CalCity's Division General Membership and the second meeting of the CalCity's LA County Division Working Group on the County Jail Depopulation Program. Anyone else? Committees?
The only thing I'd say, Mr. Mayor, is not once, but twice, I went to a special meeting of the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments. Weren't able to meet because we couldn't get a quorum.
Ah, man.
Thanks to the City of Los Angeles.
Oh, gosh. Anyone else? Committee assignments? Nope? Okay, moving on? Oh, sorry, oh, yes. Committee assignments, just committee assignments.
Yes, I attended on the first, which is Thursday last week, I attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee meeting, talked a lot about EV chargers and how that was going to roll out, and lots and lots of questions from other cities, so I thought it was an interesting discussion, and we are way ahead just by, based on other, other cities' comments, so just saying.
You may be interested in this. We talked on my SCAG Transportation Committee, we talked about looking at hydrogen as a resource, because sometimes in the heat, it's tough. Oh, sorry, okay. Moving on, we are, we'll now hear council comments, including reporting on attendance to conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Who wants to go first?
Sure.
Councilmember Perez, I saw you press a button.
Along with my colleagues, Councilmember Mullins, Vice Mayor Schultz, and Mayor Anthony, we attended the Memorial Day Ceremony. It was very lovely, and we all were able to place a rose in memoriam of the veterans we lost, and I think that was really special. And thank you to the committee for, for putting that together and our wonderful Parks and Rec staff. Along with that, it is graduation season, and I was very fortunate to, along with our mayor, attend the Burbank Adult School graduation, and then on Wednesday, May 24th, and then the following day, I attended the JBA CHS graduation. Congratulations to all the graduates from Burrows and my alma mater, Go Bears!
I will follow that up. The Burbank Adult School graduation was very moving. The next day, I did not attend Burrows or Burbank High, but I did go to the Monterey High School graduation, and I will tell you, those kids loved the ceremony. It was very moving for them. These are the kids that struggled in, you know, the other schools and had a hard time, and I think it was important for, for me to be there to, that was, that was the kids I hung out with when I was in high school. I attended a, a wonderful program, Acing Autism, at the Burbank Tennis Center. It was, they had kids on the spectrum show up, and they played with tennis professionals, and they raised money. It was really great. Memorial Day was fantastic. And then on Tuesday, May 30th, I attended a dinner with LA City Mayor Karen Bass, County Supervisor Catherine Barger, and six other mayors in the area, Pasadena, Palmdale, Glendale. And we talked about just all the things that are going on countywide that cities are dealing with. It was very informative, robust discussion, pass some information back and forth. It was really great. I'd never, I mean, this was Karen Bass's initiative to do this, and she's doing it with a bunch of different mayors. I think it's amazing what she's trying to accomplish, and I wish her all the best, and we're trying to support her in that.
Just echo Councilmember Perez, Memorial Day Ceremony was excellent. Thanks to the committee, they did a great job as usual. Great turnout, that was my event.
On the 24th, I went to the Spring Fling at the library, which is basically the Friends of the Burbank Library get together with the library staff, and they talk about all the different programs that the Friends of the Burbank Library fund. That's always fun. And I was able to bring one of my kids with me because they're home from, from college for the summer. And then a couple days later, I contracted COVID, and I was sick with COVID for a week, because that was lovely. I'm better now, but that was not fun. So it was actually really good timing that we had no council meeting last week. And then on Zoom, I also met with Stephanie Shaw at the YMCA. She's a new social worker there, starting a new mentor program, which I think is really interesting. I don't have a chance to talk to her, great. If you haven't had a chance to talk to her yet, I recommend it. It's, the YMCA is doing some really innovative programs there, and she's, she's starting one, so that was a great, great meeting.
Well, for the sake of time, my life is basically one big meeting these days. But there are two things the public should know. Thursday, May 25th, I had a meeting with the developer and their representative for the proposed project at 4100 Riverside Drive. It was just a site walk, no discussions about the merits of the project, but it was an opportunity for me to put, to see what the project would in theory look like if and when it does come before the council. And then additionally today, and thank you to city manager for setting it up, had a very productive conversation with Dr. Agakani on the school board about a potential entrepreneurial center partnership, which I won't go into further detail, because I think we'll be talking about it at our joint meeting.
And I forgot to mention one thing, and just to close this out, the mayor and I also attended Pride Prom at the Social Impact Center. We had a great time chaperoning. They made us feel very old when they played songs from my high school years, like the kids like just left the dance floor, so that was great to see. But yeah, that was a great opportunity. I'm really grateful to our Social Impact Center for having the opportunities for LGBTQ youth I wish I would have had when I was in high school, and really grateful for their efforts and to making sure that we know that all of our LGBTQ youth and members of our community are welcome here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That was my son's first prom. All right. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped something. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce?
I do. I'm not going to ask for the first item, I want to see the data, but Mr. City Manager, you're on warning for next week, depending on what the data shows. But I did want to put in, I think, a record-breaking request for next year's budget, a white paper from Water and Power and Public Works, like I said, on record in the public hearing, just identifying any new untapped revenue streams or cost savings measures, and that will be for fiscal year, what, 2023, 2024? No, it'll be 24, 25. Thank you. So, that's all.
All right.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to request an agenda item to include in our 2023-24 state legislative platform to support state legislation that would require bicycle and pedestrian safety to be taught and included in the California Driver's Handbook, the California Commercial Driver's Handbook, driver's license knowledge test, instruction permits, et cetera, to supplement enacted legislation like AB 2147 and AB 1909 that provides more protections for bicycles and pedestrians, and creates, and this, this legislative position would support mandated education for vehicle drivers to be more safe around bicycle and pedestrian. And I got this idea from LA City. This is their resolution, so I did provide this to the city manager, so he's seen the exact languages to, to add that to our legislative, legislative platform.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, for a joint meeting in the council chamber. Have a good night.